All right, everybody. My computer says 2:00 P.M. And so I am going to call this regular meeting of the Washington County School District Board of Trustees to order. And as usual, we're going to begin with our roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. President Angela Taylor.
I'm here.
Trustee Jaclyn Calvert.
Here.
Trustee Jeff Church.
Here by video.
I am here. Trustee Diane Nicolet.
Here.
Trustee Joe Rodriguez.
Here.
Trustee Beth Smith.
Here.
Student trustee or representative Victoria Gomez.
Here.
We have a quorum. Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a full house again. Yay. And this is the first meeting of the new school year. So welcome, everybody. And to welcome back to our student trustee, our student representative, Victoria. So why don't we have you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
All right. Thank you very much. And welcome back, student trustee Victoria. Hope you had a great summer. You see a couple of new faces. And I don't know if you introduced you to trustee Rodriguez on the break, but I know you had a chance to meet trustee Smith. So great additions to our team. All right, let's jump into our agenda. Our first agenda item, Board of Trustees, election of officers. What we will do is before we even go into this period, why don't we have public comments first? I think we do have some public comment on this agenda item.
For 2.01.
Yes, 2.01. Why don't we have public comment first?
Yes. John Appolito. The board received an email from Blair Speth.
Thank you, JJ. Welcome, Mr. Appolito.
Thank you. My name is John Appolito. I'm with Protect Nevada Children. You can find us on our new website, protectnevadachildren.org. And you can find 13 or 1,400 of us on our private Facebook page, Protect Nevada Children. I was curious as to how this was going to go. I thought you guys were going to talk first. Otherwise, I probably would have had planned comments. Here's what I do know. What I know is you guys have just picked two board members. You replaced a conservative Republican with a Democrat for the North Valleys. And I know that you supposedly requested the -- oh, I forget the exact title -- diversity and inclusion global program manager for IGT to be on the board, and that was successful. The reason I'm bringing all this up is because you can't keep ignoring over 50 percent of us like you do, Angie and Kristen. Jeff is my representative, Colonel Church, that is. You guys have silenced him. The superintendent won't meet with him. You've kept him out of the diversity and inclusion training. And now you're probably going to keep him out of being a leader on this board. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe you'll put him in there. If you do, then disregard the rest of what I say. Heck, I don't even know what I'm going to say. I guess that's pretty much it. You cannot ignore over half of the community. Kristen, I understand the teachers. A majority of the teachers are with you. But you know what? A majority of the parents and community are not with you. You're making a big mistake if you don't appoint trustee Church. Thank you.
Okay, everyone. Once again, and most of you already know, we're going to ask to keep the applause to really a minimum. We don't want to get too on either side of any issue or any comment. Please do that. We don't want to get to where it's a disruption to the meeting. This is just a reminder. Thank you very much. JJ?
Valerie Fianaca.
I'm sorry, lost a shoe.
No, take your time. Take your time. Get your shoe straight before you.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah. Welcome, Ms. Fianaca.
I'll forget about it in trip and fall. Thank you. My name is Valerie Fianaca, for the record. I do believe that Jeff Church should be nominated as the vice president of this board. This would signal a sincere desire to work with the community members who are in the minority representation on this board. The position and the people who elected Jeff to this position have been effectively silenced, and this has caused great animosity, from my point of view. If you want to heal this divide, and I think there's a great desire for that, at least from my point of view, you need to elect Jeff as the vice president. If not elected as vice president, then he must be elected as clerk.
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca.
Darla Lee.
Welcome, Ms. Lee.
Darla Lee, for the record. Yes, I would just echo the last two speakers because the balance on this board is not sufficient. It has not been balanced at all. It has been, in my view, very biased. And I would just like to express my support for Jeff Church as vice president. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Bruce Foster.
Is Mr. Foster here? Oh, there you are. Okay. Mr. Foster, you can speak right there if you want, if it's closer. Either one. You can speak there if you like, either one.
Okay. I choose this one.
Okay.
Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. And I'm just here as a concerned parent, thankfully, for children that all graduated from the Washington County School District a couple of decades ago, thankfully, before the district and the administration has become woke. They're all very successful, RN, electrical engineer, finance, and though my youngest one through McQueen High School is special needs but thriving. But I'm here primarily with the election issue, wish to make sure that Jeff Church is a part of this process, as he will create a balance in regards to creating an agenda for each meeting. And then, too, I would certainly, a part of the agenda meetings, would like to be able to see the venues, to be able to be in a more of expanded facility, so as more people are able to attend and be able to be a part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
James Bentham.
Welcome, Mr. Bentham. Let's get your microphone on, sir, before you begin. Thank you. Go right ahead. It's on. You got you.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, board. I'm here. I'm supporting Jeff Church for vice president. I believe the board needs new input for the meeting agendas. Trustee Church has been supporting new changes to make the Washington County School District more responsive to students and parents and families. With Jeff as vice president, he'd be able to add his input to agendas and, I think, be able to speak for more people and be more effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bentham.
Roger Edwards.
Good afternoon. Roger Edwards, for the record, 48-year resident of Washington County. And I'm very much a conservative, and I'm very much happy with my man, Jeff Church. And I'm hoping that the two new members are going to bring more of a balance with some conservatism with them. You know, I've seen lots and lots of superintendents, presidents, so forth, go through this. My kids grew up and graduated in Washington County schools, went off on their own, and we have problems, I think, with the curriculum. We have problems with losing our focus. You know, I'm the focus guy. We have problems losing our focus on traditional education. Traditional education created what we're working with today. What you guys are doing now is creating the people that we're going to work with down the road. Well, you need to have a balance. Balance is everything in life and in their school, in their education. And balance can't be achieved when we force this newest curriculum down at a young age. So we need to get back to some traditional education. And I'm hoping that you two new members will bring that with you. I'm definitely in favor of my man, Jeff Church, as vice president, and he's got my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. And again, thank you for your service to our country.
Cindy Sassanraf.
Sassanraf? Did we get that right?
Yes, Sassanraf.
Sassanraf. Thank you very much, and welcome.
Thank you. Yes, I've been at several school board meetings before you put it into this really small venue where I haven't been able to get in until today. It's the first meeting I've actually been able to get into for a while. I'm hoping that you will show that you're listening to us, these parents who are coming out, and you're calling us belligerent, when we're calling ourselves passionate. Okay? We are passionate about bringing our education back to focus on the three Rs, and we think that Jeff Church will help do that. Show us that you're listening to us and elect him to be vice president, preferably, or clerk if not. If you don't do that, then we know you're not listening, and we have to continue to come and speak our minds until you hear us. If you're hearing us, we just want a simple thing, a good education for our children. We don't want to be the last in the country in education. We want our children to be the first. And that's going to take a while, but let's make some progress, and let's focus on that instead of all the other baloney. You know, let's not teach our kids that they're oppressed or they're oppressors. Let's teach them what Martin Luther King said, "Judge people by the content of their character, not the color of their skin." And it's just, we think Jeff Church will help bring that balance to the board, and we're asking you to show us that you're listening to us, that you hear us, and that we're not nuts, we're just passionate.
If you can pull that mask up a little bit over. Thank you very much. I know it's hard, these slides now. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And by the way, I've seen a lot of meetings after our public comment when we were scolded for clapping, where there was a lot of clapping going on, and I just don't appreciate the disparity there. If we can't clap when we like something that our people say, then nobody should be able to clap. Thank you.
Again, everyone, if you would keep the clap down. That's, you can, everybody, you can watch all the videos you want to. I'm very consistent in that. So if you can keep the clapping down to a minimum, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Sassanraf, for your comments.
Janet Butcher.
Thank you. I'm hopeful that you will be voting for Jeff Church. And the reason why I doubt that you will be, but there needs to be, he's replacing someone who had a different viewpoint than probably most of you do. And in the fact that, obviously, we are no longer teaching the important things in school. I had a bid given to me, well, it wasn't a bid, it was a receipt that was given to me, and the person that wrote on the receipt wrote $400, $500, and $200. And at the bottom of this receipt, he wrote $1,177. We're obviously not providing people in the community with a good education. I think that with Jeff, he would be replacing Andrew Codelle, and I believe that it would be a good balance. It's time to right the ship. We're sinking, or we've sunk, especially when we are last in all the states. It's a shame. I love Nevada, but I am ashamed of telling people I am from Nevada. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butcher.
Lori Agnew.
I'm sorry, last name again?
Agnew.
Agman?
Agdu.
Agdu. I'm sorry.
Conspiral T., if you remember your history.
I got Agnew. Welcome, Ms. Agnew.
I'm asking you to consider Jeff Church for the position of VP, but if not that, for the clerk position. His background as a career military officer and law enforcement officer speaks to not only the expertise that he brings to the table, but the quality of character in this most amazing man. As it stands now, the board is heavily influenced by a majority of members whose ideology contrasts with his. It would be in the best interest of the children in this district to benefit from the voice of a member with such an impeccable moral compass. We need different ideas. Not everybody can swing by the same thoughts. When you do that, you do a great disservice to our children. Our children should hear all sides of everything without political influence. This board is heavily politically influenced, and it's a shame. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I'm going to ask you guys, please, one more time. I'm going to have to start asking people to leave. Please keep the clapping to a minimum. I work really hard to try to be equal with this. I don't always get it right, but I work really hard because I know people are really watching if I'm not. So I try to. So if you would, I'd really appreciate that.
Deb Steinjim.
Ms. Steinjim?
I'm here to give my support to Jeff Church for vice president on this board. Jeff has an amazing service record to this country, and he deserves our utmost respect. He has 26 years in the Air Force. He served in Desert Storm. He has 23 years as a Reno police officer. That's a lot of service to this city and to this community. And Jeff speaks for so many of us. We'd like him to have more of a voice. We'd like him to be able to help set our agenda when you do get together. I do want to thank Beth Smith for her recent response to my email. Ellen Minneto, thank you very much for responding to me. Many of you do not respond to me. Trustee Rodriguez, I know you're new, but Jaclyn Calvert never responds to me. I wonder if you even get my emails. Are you listening to any of the community? I think Diane has responded to me. I appreciate that. Angie, and I believe you've responded. I do appreciate that. But what's very frustrating to us is that there's one way communication. We get to, we come up here and we talk, but we never get to hear what you're thinking or any responses to what we're bringing up, to the topics we're trying to talk about. And it's a very frustrating process. I don't know how or why this process got started, but it doesn't seem to be very efficient. And I know trustee Rodriguez had mentioned that he would like to see some community forums where we can have dialogue back and forth. But as it is now, we come up here and we talk to you guys, and we don't really get to hear what you're thinking or if you agree with us. And what we are left to think and worry about is that the board is leading us towards an anti-American agenda, and we think that you are leading us towards socialism. We are so worried about that. And so my question to you, the board, is would you please let us know? Are you all for socialism? Are you all for socialist philosophies? Is that where this is all heading? Because that's what we are really afraid of. We're afraid of losing our American way of life that we cherish, that has been so good to all of us, you included. Do you want your kids growing up in a socialist environment? Is that what this is about? So we'd like to have a dialogue back and forth with you to find out, what are you thinking? What are your goals? But we're here to support Jeff Church. We'd like him to be on the agenda, the board, to set the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Steinjim.
Victoria Meyer.
You said Meyer? Oh, yeah. Either way. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for the forum, Victoria Meyer. And ditto everything she said, folks. You know, the curriculums that are coming up are nothing but anti-American, anti-American everything we stand for, divisive, racist, and seemingly looks like it's designed to split us all apart and have our children deal with issues that they're far too young to have thrown at them, and we don't want them divided in the classroom, and we don't want them divided by racial lines, and we don't want them taught these ideas. We don't want them taught about anti-American ideals that we, the vast majority of Americans, don't hold. We value our liberty.
Ms. Meyer, if I can point you to the agenda item?
Oh, yes.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Jeff Church is a very experienced board member here, a longtime contributor to our community. He has been a voice for many of us who feel like we're not being heard, who feel like we're being silenced and pushed down on the agenda items, shall we say? Public comment at the end. Many people can't stay to the end to comment. Jeff Church has been someone that we all support and would like to see him have more say so that we have more say, and perhaps he can help facilitate, as well as all of you, more communication between the board and American people. We do not want anti-American ideas in our children's heads. And I vote for Jeff Church for, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
That's all I have for this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for all of you who came to give your public comment. You may be here for public comment for others, but thank you. So now we'll bring it here to the Board of Trustees. We'll bring it here to the Board of Trustees, and this is when we consider nominations and elections of vice president of the Board of Trustees from among the following, Jaclyn Calvert, trustee Church, I mean, sorry, Jeff Church, trustee Jaclyn Calvert, that's what I should have said, trustee Jeff Church, trustee Ellen Minneto, trustee Diane Nicolet, trustee Joe Rodriguez, and trustee Beth Smith. This is for possible action. And just as from a presenter's standpoint, as myself and legal counsel, I guess I'll go to you first, Legal. Do you have comments on this? I mean, basically, it's really taken nominations from, we take a nomination from the table. There's a second to the nomination, and then we can take another nomination until we get to however many names may be nominated, and then we take a vote from there. Did I miss anything, counsel?
I believe there's nominations, and then there would be a second if there's a motion to.
So no second for nominations?
I don't believe so. I think it's a call for nominations.
Okay, just a call for nominations, no second required, then just a second if there's a motion to go forward with one of the names. So, Dr. Nicolet?
Thank you, Kristen. At what point may we have discussion?
Probably.
After a second on a motion.
After a second, yes. As we always did, after a second on the motion. Would you like to, we can have, you want to have discussion before a motion? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely, I would, if it's appropriate and legal.
I think we can, we can do that, can't we?
Yeah, that's just your rules of order, if you want to.
Yeah, if people have a conversation before we have nominations, I think that's okay. Okay? Is there a comment or question you have on that, since you mentioned it? Trustee Nicolet?
Absolutely.
Go right ahead.
I'm thinking because I want to be very careful with my words, because it's very important to me that I show dignity and respect for everyone who's come out to voice their thoughts, the emails that have been sent, the public comments, and the colleagues that I have listened to over the past several weeks in person. The first thing I want to say is the school board is a nonpartisan board. So.
Decalm, please. Please, everyone, decalm. Everyone, this is a business meeting. If you, we will not take shouting out, we will not take outbursts. This is a business meeting, if you would. It's okay if you disagree, and that's quite the right, but this is a business meeting, and we need to act.
And I did not laugh at you.
Don't lie to me.
And it's not a lie, and I do not call you a liar. I say nonpartisan, and I stick to it, and I would like you to understand why I say that. We all have political leanings, every single one of us, and that should not matter to our students. Apparently, though, it does matter to our educational system. We've had this system for a very long time, and many people are tired of some of the things that are going on. This board is nonpartisan. That is the only reason you can find out our political affiliation is if someone tells you, or if you go to the voter registrar, or you go to the state. Because even on the ballot, it's nonpartisan, and I'm very proud of that as an independent. I've been a Democrat-Republican. I dissed both of them to be an independent. That's a personal statement, almost not relative. I've been involved with schools for a very, very, very long time in school boards, here and in other states and cities. I have never known there to be a campaign by a Board of Trustee member and by radio station hosts that has been so divisive and so cruel, and it's just not okay from us as adults and human beings. I understand that you want to support my colleague, Jeff Church. He has many admirable qualities. That is not the point. I want you to know that I've talked to many people who think that's a terrible idea. So what are we to do?
Vote on it.
Absolutely. We vote with integrity. We vote with knowledge and understanding. We also vote with a view for the future, not the right now and who's going to have the loudest and strongest vote on an agenda. We all have an opportunity to put items on the agenda. I personally have been able to put two on there. You just need another board member, look it up in board policy. I almost want to not vote for anyone because this is so cruel.
That won't do any good.
I agree. Thank you. That's exactly where I am. That will not help our students. That will not help our teachers, our administrators, our bus drivers, our nutrition cafeteria specialists. It doesn't help our community. But I am so disappointed in us. All right, I'm 69 years old. I guess I'm destined to lecture occasionally. But I'm so sad by this. Thank you for listening and for coming.
Thank you, trustee Nicolet. Trustee Church, I see your hand up.
Thank you very much. Couple things I'd like to cover. Number one, I believe my decorum, my behavior at all the meetings has been 100% professional. I have not received any feedback, to the contrary. Have not been on any radio shows in a long, long time, so it wasn't me on radio shows. You know, I don't know who it was. I don't, haven't listened to most of those shows in ages. I do respect the seniority of certain people on the board, so one of my questions or concerns is how do we know if the person wants it? Yes, I would be honored to serve in that capacity. I serve on two other boards, HOA boards. In terms of seniority, I have more than the two new members, but less than this Minneto, trustee Minneto and trustee Calvert. But I don't know if they're even interested in the position. Seniority kind of matters, I think. I think it is important because the leadership team does set the agenda, and we have had many concerns in the community about the length of the agenda, going till 1:00 in the morning. Last time, we got out, I think, at 10:00 P.M. Almost an improvement, as well as the content of the agenda, what goes on the consent agenda. We had 48 items last time. So I would be honored to serve on the board, but I just wanted to bring those issues up and clarify any misconceptions. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Church. Other comments?
I do not want to serve as vice president or clerk.
Thank you, trustee Calvert. Thank you, Trustee Calvert. One thing that I will say to move some things along as well, I do think that I have, you know, this has been a year, we can actually say a whole school year, that's been really unprecedented in so many ways. I mean, who can even, who can anticipate pandemic and all the decisions that we've had to make around the pandemic? Tough ones, easy ones, ones people like, same ones people like, the same ones people don't like. I mean, it's just, we've lived through that in a very different way than I've seen in my time here on the board, and that's just the way that it is. As the person who's during the second half of this, this challenging pandemic period, I guess I should say, you know, I would say that former Trustee Caudill and Trustee Minneto and I have served as the board leadership team. Different thoughts, both of them are conservatives. I'm actually more of a moderate, but certainly, they're both Republicans. I'm a Democrat, you can go that way and define it any way you want to, and I think that that has, I think that's worked well. I could say it's not balanced, or whatever the case may be, but I think really with the students being the objective, the what's, making the best decisions that we could for a student, for these students, or for the staff, or for the community, with that in mind, I think it's been one of, was one of the things that really helped us come together and make decisions. And we didn't always agree, we certainly didn't always agree, and by the way, that's okay. That's how we land in the best place, quite honestly, in that. And because we've made so many difficult decisions related to the pandemic and otherwise, I would be honored to continue to have Ellen serve and Trustee Minneto serve, and ask my colleagues to consider as Vice President, in terms of moving up, continuing the work that we've done. A lot of hard work, a lot of decisions, a lot of institutional knowledge behind those decisions. I think we keep a consistent flow, a clear flow, in terms of how we move forward. So I'd certainly like to put that forward to my colleagues, and I see you, Trustee Rodriguez.
Kind of going off of, you know, as Jeff, Trustee Tricia said, seniority and things like that, do, does the current Vice President clerk wish to retain their seats? And kind of bouncing back, you do need two trustees to put something on an agenda item. So I mean, it's not, it's not left up to one or two or three people, it's, so I guess that'd be my question.
Well, I will say this, I can certainly, there's no Vice President, Trustee Caudill serves as Vice President, and we know he's no longer there, that's why we're filling the position. If that position is not filled by Clerk Minneto, then that, then that, I don't, she remains as Clerk, because that's already happened. It was placed on the agenda in the event that, because everybody's name is out there in that way, so it's covered, because we can't add things to the agenda once it's already posted. So certainly, I will leave that to Trustee Minneto and to that. And to answer the other piece, certainly, two trustees can have any item placed on the agenda. That's in policy, that's always been the case. And one trustee, the only trustee that has, that has more influence in that, so to speak, is the President, because the President is ultimately the maker of the agenda, but we've been doing it as a board leadership team. I think that, because then you have more than one voice, and I think that's the fairest way to do it. But even if the board leadership team says no, and two other trustees say yeah, it ends up on the agenda. So that, I hope that answers that question. That remains been like that for a long time, and certainly, to make that clear to the public, two trustees can put any item on the agenda, and hopefully, that's clear for the trustees, as well as for the public that may not, may not be aware of that. Trustee Church, I see, is your hand still up for, on purpose, sir, or? Nope, no, okay. All right, I'm making sure I get in the habit of looking up to see it, so I don't ignore you if it is there, so. Dr. Nicolet?
Yes, we can move on to discussion. I move that the Board of Trustees elects Ellen Minneto to serve as the Vice President for the remainder of the term.
Okay, there's one nomination on the floor. Are there any other nominations? We'll come back and just need a second. Was that?
Was that a motion?
That, do we take? Oh, so...
We need to take nominations first.
Well, hold that, I was going to say, we need nominations first, right? Let's take, see if there are other nominations first.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, that's why I'm like, wait, nominations, right? Okay? Any other nominations?
There I go. I nominate Ellen Minneto...
So we changed it, okay?
For Vice President as, for the Board of Trustees.
Okay, then that, the first motion, then it died for lack of a second, so now we have a nomination. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Okay, seeing none, the nominations are closed, and so now we look for a motion.
I move that Ellen Minneto be our next Vice President of the Board of Trustees.
Okay, serving for the remainder of the...
Serving for the remainder of the year.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Smith, motion by Trustee Calvert. Any other discussion further? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor, please? Oh, did you have a discussion? Yes. Yes, I'm sorry. Clerk Minneto.
I would be honored to be the Vice President.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to give you a chance to say that, that's the other part of, Trustee Rodriguez has questions, so, okay? That being said, there's a motion on the floor, a motion and second it, no further discussion, all those in favor? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
I got you, Trustee Church.
Next.
Yeah, no, I was going to say, where we did public comment for this item, okay? Yes, okay. Thank you, okay. All those in favor, say aye, one more time, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, see your thumbs up? Okay, thank you, Trustee Church. Any opposition? Okay, the motion is carried, congratulations. Now Vice President Minneto, and thank you for agreeing to serve. Lots going on over these next few months. And now we go to the, we'll go to the Agenda Item 2.02. This is possible board nomination, is an election of Clerk of the Board of Trustees, that's if the Clerk is selected for an attorney of office, which has happened, from among the following: Trustee Jaclyn Calvert, Trustee Jeff Church, Trustee Diane Nicolet, Trustee Joe Rodriguez, and Trustee Beth Smith. Once again, we're going to hear a public comment on this item.
John Appolito.
Okay, looks like he stepped away, let's go on to the next, next name.
Lori Agnew.
Ms. Agnew, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. And I would go on again about Jeff and Mr. Church, and what I believe are his qualifications to step into the Clerk position, but I think everybody's already talked about why we believe he's important to us, to be moved up into this position. So I would just ask that you keep an open mind, and I understand, Ms. Nicolet, that there's been rhetoric, things that have been unkind, things that haven't been nice, and people do get heated over all this stuff that's going on. We all have a vested interest in this, whether we have children in school, or grandchildren in school, or just we're a member of society that want to see our children learn, and really learn, not just, it's nice to know about all the social events that are going on, and that's important in its place, but it doesn't substitute for what they really need to learn, so that they become independent, productive adults. We don't want leeches on society, we don't want to create another welfare generation. So what we're asking is, this is important, to put the right people up, so that there's more of a voice, for some of us, that might be thinking differently than what the board is thinking. So I just request that you consider Jeff Church, and I'd like to see more than one person nominated for it, and actually see a vote. The fact that only one person was nominated for VP is kind of like, why did you even bother, then? If you're not going to actually take a vote, if you're not going to put forward more than one person, what is the point? So please reconsider, when you're looking at this Clerk position, to have more than one candidate for it, and really take an honest vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Janet Butcher.
Thank you. Well, you didn't surprise us. Why keep the team together? Isn't it obvious that it isn't working? If we have parents out there who are upset, and obviously, a lot of them can't come to the meetings because of the timing, and also, too, they can't maybe even carve out lunchtime, maybe to come at 2:00, because of how you've chosen to oppress us. So you can put any letter behind your name, you can put a D, an R, and an I, but one's actions speak louder than one's words. If you talk like a socialist and set forth socialist agendas, chances are, you are a socialist, thus making the curriculum socialist. So, again, I think we need to take a look at a good balance. You know, we know, we understand what you're doing, we're not dumb, we're not children. I've played the games, I've raised two teenage daughters, I know the games, I've worked in businesses for 50 years, worked with international people, all kinds of different entities, so I know different games that can be played, and it's obvious what's happening here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butcher. Once again? No, no, you're good, thank you.
No, I was, oh, can I, did I use up all my three minutes?
I didn't see it, but the public comment piece, I'm not sure we have left that. You only get one comment per item, ma'am, I'm sorry, in your public comment.
Oh, well, I'm just kind of like, why can't we clap?
I can't...
I don't understand that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I mean, I want to sit down, so why can't they...
JJ, who's next?
Bev Stenjum.
It's about a disruption, that's, and I've said that before, so we stay there. Ms. Stenjum, welcome, thank you.
It's Bev Stenjum.
Oh, Stenjum.
But anyway, I'm here to support Jeff Church for the Clerk position. As Jeff stated, and as you all know, Jeff has always been a very professional member of the board. From what I understand, he's never had any outbursts, or been unprofessional, or too outspoken. He disagrees with a lot of you on the board, but that is why I think it is so important that we have his voice on the board, setting the agenda. He's usually the lone person voting in opposition to what you're voting for, so I think it's crucial that we have another opinion on the board, and not just everyone else saying yes to something. We need a balanced board, and I believe it's very important that we have him. And again, I want to say that the reason why it sounds that we're cruel or unkind is because we don't feel that we're being heard. Again, we just speak to you here, and we never hear anything back from you.
Ms. Stenjum, if I can keep you on the agenda item, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
But I hear you, I think we hear that.
Okay. So, back to Jeff, I think he would be a very valuable member as the Clerk, and again, when you just voted for Trustee Minneto, I think Trustee Minneto would do a fine job in the VP role. However, she was the only one that was brought up, nominated, and that does sound, seems kind of strange, that there wasn't a choice to vote for anyone. Not one person was in support of Trustee Church, and I find that very curious, why? Has he done anything wrong on this board? Not that I am aware of. So if he has done something wrong, we'd like to know about it. Why isn't he considered a viable candidate for one of those positions? So, again, we don't hear anything back from you, and that's a lot of our frustration, and we'd like to hear. When we send you an email, it would be helpful if you respond, so we know what you're thinking. And, again, I'm just here to support Trustee Church. He speaks for many of us in the community, and we want our voices to be heard, and we want to make sure that things get on the agenda that are important to us, too.
Thank you, Ms. Stenjum. Did I get it right that time? Did I get it right, Stenjum?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm going to work on that.
Darla Lee.
Welcome back, Ms. Lee.
Hi. Yes, first of all, Trustee Minneto, congratulations, and I will continue praying for you.
Ms. Lee, if you maybe drop that mic a little bit, so that people, yeah, there may be people in the back can hear you.
Ellen, I will continue praying for you on your new position, but I would also like to say that if you have been listening, I have not heard one person come to this podium to offer support for any other trustee, for either of these positions, except for Jeff Church. And if you all, Ms. Nicolet, have been receiving a lot of emails in a negative tone about Jeff Church, I would like to know why they are not here to oppose him, or to offer their insight into who they think should be in this position. But I don't see them. I do see a lot of people who are very interested in having a balanced board, and with Trustee Church, I think as a Clerk, at least in that position, that might be a possibility. So I would urge you to have the courage, for at least one of you, to nominate Trustee Church. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
James Benton.
Welcome back, Ms. Benton. Mr. Benton, I'm sorry.
Thank you. James M. Benton, for the record, I'm here to support Jeff Church for the Clerk position. I believe that Jeff Church will be a valuable person in the Clerk position, helping formulate and institute agendas. This will be an opportunity for Trustee Church to add his ideas and input to the agenda items, and also to be a more important representative for parents and students. I believe that there's many agenda items that could possibly have been put on the agenda in the past, but this hasn't happened. One of the requirements is that two trustees have to agree on some of these ideas. Trustee Church has not been supported. I do believe that Jeff's support for a quality education committee would be very helpful for the school district, also a research and financial committee. I think that Jeff in these positions could help influence these committees and improve education in Washoe County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benton.
Roger Edwards.
Welcome back, Mr. Edwards.
Good afternoon again, Roger Edwards, for the record. You know, I spent eight years on the Washoe County Planning Commission, many years as the chairman, two years on the Regional Planning Commission, and one year as chairman of that group, and I got some procedural concerns about what we're doing here today. You know, when we elect someone from our group, the first thing we did at the Planning Commission was ask, who wants the job? You need to get names of who's going to do what, and who wants it, and then you present them to these folks, and then if we have a chance, the public comment has to come after you make the presentation, so that if we have a problem with someone, or a concern, or whatever, we'll know what we have to talk about. Right now, we don't know who is even interested in the job. We're talking about getting Trustee Church in there, we don't know if he even wants the job. So procedurally, you need to get some volunteers first, present that to us, then we can comment. Okay? I'm in favor of Jeff in there, because I think you need the balanced voice, like I said before, and, but I don't know if he even wants to be there. I don't know exactly what her job is, it can be taking minutes, that's all pre-recorded, you know, it's not like the old days, where she had to write down everything, or the Clerk, you know, but anyway, you need to get those procedures better laid out, so these folks know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Casey D. Lander.
Mr. D. Lander, welcome, sir. Just wait, just get your mic on.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I just would like to offer my voice on behalf of Jeff Church to be nominated for this position, just to try to maybe bring another generation to the plate that's backing him. As I'm sure all of you know, I'm a very active member in our school district, and talk to many, many parents. to many, many parents. And he has a lot, a lot of support across this community, like, a lot. I think that he definitely brings different values and different ideas to the plate, definitely for our school district, for sure, considering of his past in law enforcement. So, you know, just bringing that aspect to it is, I think he just offers a lot. I really do. And in speaking with him, and speaking with the community, I really think that you guys should really give him a chance. But then going back to, and I'm gonna speak out, you know, out of context here, that there's no politics here, you know, but it's bipartisan. But the problem is, is you all play politics between yourselves. You guys play office politics. And you guys all talk amongst each other, and it's like, well, I like this guy, I don't like this guy, and you guys do the buddy game, and then you gang up on someone. It's, if it happens here, it happens at every office, every office setting. There's always politics in the office. We all know this, that have worked in office settings. So it's not theoretical, you know, politics. It's like Democrats, Republicans. It's just that what we're trying to say is you guys play politics amongst each other. You guys take your ideas, and we like him, we like her, we don't like him, and then you guys gang up, and you make your decisions based upon that, is what I would like to bring to the table. You know, nothing Republican, independent, or Democrat, but just your office politics. So, but, like I said, Jeff Church, huge following in the community, definitely of parents of my generation, you know, anywhere from mid-20s to late 30s. I can all tell you, he has a ton of support, ton of support. So, and I know they're not here today, but a lot of them are, feel left out, and feel like they don't have a voice, so they don't come. But I want everyone to know that when you don't come here and you don't say your voice is the day that you think we don't care no more. So every parent needs to come here and voice your opinion, just like voting. You need to vote, no matter what, no matter whether your vote counts or not, because you're still telling everybody you care. So whether it's negative or positive.
Does he feel me agenda a little bit? I mean, not that what you're saying isn't important, I get it.
All right, so I just want to say, just, parents need to come here.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. D. Lander.
John Epelito.
Mr. Epelito, welcome back.
Thank you very much. My name is John Epelito, and I'm with Protect Nevada Children. There's two trustees that I think would probably be pretty good at this job. One is Dr. Nicolet, and one is Colonel Church. I agree with a lot of what trustee Nicolet has to say. What she said a few minutes ago to respond, people are frustrated. I've been coming here for 12 years, and now there's a little bit, there's a lot more people listening now because of other things that are happening, but this board has not been protecting Nevada children for 12 years, Diane. That's the problem.
Mr. Epelito, if we can keep you on the agenda item?
I thought I was on the agenda.
On the agenda item, in terms of the election of the?
Okay. So that was Diane Nicolet. Are you gonna add my time back for interrupting me? As far as trustee Church goes, again, trustee Church, several board members up there have been ignoring over half of the community for years, and Kristin McNeil is probably the worst. She could solve all of this. She sits there quietly, she lets you do the bidding for her, President Taylor, and it's wrong. Trustee Church is one that it would show you guys are listening to over half of the parents in the community. I think it's a huge mistake if you don't appoint trustee Church to this position. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Epelito.
You're welcome. That's all I have for this item.
Thank you, JJ. And once again, thank you all for your comments. We'll bring it now back here to the table for first discussion or nominations. I can say this now, Vice President Manetto?
Oh, my. I would agree with Mr. Epelito in that I believe that Diane Nicolet has done an amazing job, especially this last week, when you and I were both gone. She picked up, and she went on, and I was very impressed. I think she'd be a fine candidate for this.
Is that a nomination?
That's a nomination.
That's a nomination. Thank you very much. Vice President Manetto, trustee Church, I see your hand, sir.
Thank you. Number one, I just wanted to point out to the folks watching, I'm doing this from home, got a cold. I was playing hooky all week, hot August nights with my classic car, and came down with a standard run-of-the-mill cold, so I didn't want to affect everybody. On this agenda item, I just want to point out that there were very few emails, one way or the other. There were a few emails in support of me, but I saw zero emails written to the board or public comment in opposition to me. So there may have been discussion, or somebody may have called, but there's nothing on the public record like that. Obviously, I'd be honored to serve as the clerk. I've served on two other boards. I've served as the vice president currently on an HOA board. And I also want to thank all the people, and point out that everybody was polite. Those people that say that they're angry, or that they're rude, unless I'm watching a different meeting, I didn't see it today. I thought everybody was very well spoken. So thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Church. Dr. Nicolet?
Harkening Mr. Edwards' suggestion, I absolutely agree. Let me just preface that, I believed from the get-go that trustee Manetto is the right person for vice president, given everything that trustee Church mentioned. So I guess I would ask of my colleagues sitting here at the table, who is interested in serving as clerk? I think that's an important question. Who wants to do it? And I guess, you know, when you think about someone for any position, president, vice president, clerk, you know, you do so, almost all of us do so, not even really knowing what the job entails. And so I apologize, Vice President Manetto. Vice president is, of course, the backup for the president, and does a lot of work behind the scenes, a lot of work, a lot of additional leadership meetings. And as far as the clerk, if you don't mind, former clerk Manetto, tell us what the clerk does.
Clerk, Vice President Manetto?
Thank you. Oh, my. It was, it's a lot of work. I, as a clerk, you have to okay all of the minutes from previous meetings, which takes a while. Like yesterday, I okayed minutes from March, I can't remember which meeting. And you don't just okay them, you gotta read through them and make sure they're right. And then, before, after the agenda is out, you have to, twice, in two different venues, you look over it and make sure everything's matching up as to the agenda and what's gonna be sent out to the people. And it takes a lot of time.
The newsletter? Not the newsletter, the announcement that?
Oh, yes, yes, the newsletter, mhm. And, you know, reading this is a lot, but it's almost like reading this about three more times. And so it's time-consuming. And then we have extra leadership meetings here and there, and it just takes a lot more time than I realized it was going to. However, I have enjoyed doing it.
Thank you. Did I answer a question? Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Trustee Church, your hand is still up? Is that intentional? Nope? Okay, no problem. I just want, again, just want to make sure I'm not ignoring you. Any other discussion? Any other nominations? Trustee Calvert?
I would nominate Beth Smith.
Thank you, trustee Calvert. Other nominations? Okay, trustee Rodriguez?
Well, I guess I'll make this a little interesting. One, I would like to see what the board thinks of nominating Jeff Church.
Okay, third nomination? Okay. Everyone, if you would, thank you, thank you. That's good, that's good. Okay, third nomination. Any other nominations? Okay, so our steps, so now our process from here, if we can go, we can go, yeah, I think we're good with discussion. And then we just, okay, I want to make sure I didn't skip a step. There is none. So we have three nominations, just as a review, we have three nominations on the floor. And I'm gonna do these in alphabetical order. We have one nomination is trustee Church, one nomination is trustee Nicolet, and one nomination is trustee Smith. Okay, so three nominations on the floor. Okay? So now, what we look for, look to entertain a motion, if someone has a motion, we'll entertain the motion, then the motion, at this point, then it would have to be seconded, and then we take a vote, and if there's not a majority, we'll continue through the names, but we take the names in order of the nominations. We do, we take the names in the order of the nominations. The first nomination we received, I believe, was Dr. Nicolet? Right? That was the first, okay, so is there a motion on the floor to appoint Dr. Nicolet as the clerk for the remainder of the calendar year?
Still moved.
Okay, there's a motion from trustee, from Vice President Manetto. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Calvert. Any discussion on this particular issue? Nope. So now we're voting on trustee Nicolet becoming the clerk for the remainder of the calendar year. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. Any opposition?
Nay.
Okay, why don't we do a roll call, just to be safe on this, JJ? I did hear you, trustee Church, but just want to do a roll call, just to be safe.
Trustee Calvert?
Yes.
Trustee Church?
Nay.
Trustee Manetto?
Aye.
Trustee Nicolet?
Can I abstain?
No.
No, no, you have to, you gotta vote. And turn your, okay, turn your, turn your mic on, okay. Did you see it in the mic, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Aye.
President Taylor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay, the motion passes six to one. Dr. Nicolet, congratulations, you are now the clerk for the remainder of the year. Okay? Well, thank you for all who nominated, people. Thank you for all who agreed to be nominated.
May I ask a question? I know I'm interrupting. How rude of me, but I'm confused. So we had three people we could vote on. We started with me, but none of the other two have any votes to them. How does that work?
Because the, okay, once a motion is made and seconded, then the motion passed. That means, that means we have a clerk, the motion passed four to zero. Or actually, it needed four votes, but it went, it was six to one, I believe it was. So the motion was passed, that's why. So if the motion didn't pass, we go to the next person nominated. If not, then we go to the next person nominated.
Okay.
Okay, that's the way that process goes.
Now we all know.
And I just took them, and it's the process we follow for years and years, and I just took them in order of the nominations, which is also the process has always been the case, okay? Okay, well, thank you very much, everyone. We're gonna take a brief, a brief break, because we resituated a little bit, because there's certain positions that clerks and vice presidents should sit in and so on. So why don't we just take a?
Picture.
No, because trustee Church is in here. So we won't take, we won't take the picture. We're gonna take a new picture. We won't until trustee Church is here in person. I mean, we can airbrush him in, but it's better to have him here in person, okay, for that. So we'll take a 10-minute break, and then come on back, everybody. All right, I think we've had a bit of a break, and everybody's in position. Thank you, everybody. See, trustee Church is back, all right? All right, so let's go on to the agenda. We're on to agenda item three, consent agenda items. These are items that are typically usually routine. We're looking at agenda items, three-point consent agenda items, 3.02 through 3.10. This is for possible action, and this is an opportunity, if any trustee would like, has an item they would like to pull, typically you tell me in advance, but in case I miss something, please let me know. Yes, trustee Church, I see your hand.
Yes, having received some emails from the public, and I agree with them, I'd like to at least have some brief explanation of 3.03 and 3.04, therefore I move to remove those from the consent agenda. 3.03, 3.04.
Yeah, there's not a motion that's necessary. It's actually the discretion of the manager of the meeting, which is me. But you'd like to pull those, so we can pull those, too. Any other items? Any other trustee would like to pull something? Trustee Smith?
Yes, I'd like to pull item 3.10.
3.10. Okay, we have 3.03, 3.04, 3.10. Okay, that, trustee Church, unless you're done, unless you have something else, you can take your hand down, just as a reminder. Thank you, sir. So we'll just ask staff for those items, if you would get into position. Otherwise, looking for, oh, yeah, before, for the rest of the agenda items? We have agenda items, we have comments on some of the others?
Mhm.
Yes. Okay, so we'll take any, any comments on any agenda item other than 3.03, 3.04, and 3.10. We take those comments together.
John Epelito.
Mr. Epelito? Looks like you stepped out?
Yeah.
Okay. Looks like you stepped out, okay. Thank you, Ms. Cole. Welcome back, Ms. Butcher. And if you happen to know it, if you can tell us which agenda item you're coming on, so we can kind of track it a little bit?
Yeah, and I need clarification on which ones, all of a sudden, aren't?
No, that's okay. We'll help, we'll help you through it. What kind of clarification? Before we start here, don't start a question. What kind of clarification do you need?
I want to talk on 3.02 and 3.05.
Okay, 3.02 and 3.05. You don't, you don't need any clarification of all this. It's one motion on here, so you have three minutes to talk about both of them, but you go right ahead.
Okay. I was just curious if there were other bids other than Truckee Meadows, and I'm sure that you will address that. But my biggest thing that I want to talk about is from 3.5, and it talks about any students disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. I would actually say that there is not one student that probably has not been impacted by COVID-19. I'd like you to think about how masks affect children with speech issues. I'm gonna talk a little bit about myself. I had a speech issue. I spent two years in special speech classes. I said, oh my God, look at the cor, food, funeral. If I had to wear a mask and try to speak to people when I was speaking like that, I can't even imagine how I would have been able to overcome that speech defect. And I'd like to just point out that there will be a rally against masking children in Carson City at the Capitol at 6:00 p.m., Wednesday, August 2021, promoted by Power2Parent Org. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butcher.
Valerie Fianaca on agenda item 3.07.
Welcome back, Ms. Fianaca.
Thank you. 3.07, I just have a question on, and I don't know if you can answer it for me, but Special Sick Leave Bank for COVID-related issues. My only question is, do the taxpayers spend more money for this, or do teachers donate to each other for that bank? Is that a donation back to each other? Are they donating into a bank for each employee? I know I've worked at places where you could donate your sick time back to other employees, or is this something that's gonna cost the school district money, this bank?
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca.
John Epelito on agenda item 3.09.
Welcome back, Mr. Epelito.
Thanks for having me. JohnEpelito@protectnevadachildren.org, prevention intervention specialist. I read through all the minute, the stuff posted on the, what do you call, the meeting, all the blah, 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 online. It never defined prevention intervention specialist. So I have no idea what that is. Hopefully, you guys know before you vote on it. We noticed last time, with those 48 items on the consent agenda, we noticed there were some items that you guys didn't know what you were voting on, and the staff couldn't answer the questions, but you voted anyway, so hopefully that's not the case this time. On the open meeting law, you know?
Is this on agenda item 3.09, sir?
It's on the open meeting law violation that you guys are going every week by not having the initial public comments. If you don't want me to say it, I won't say it.
This public comment has to be on 3.09.
I'll just turn in the complaint.
This public comment is, it has to be on 3.09, if you would.
Angie, thank you very much.
Okay.
We already have a dozen open meeting law complaints in that we know of.
Next, next item, please. Mr. Eppelito, we're finished here, sir, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all for this.
Okay, thank you very much.
I do have a comment on 3.10.
Say what now?
I do have comment on 3.10 when we get to that point.
Uh, oh, yeah, when we, 3.1, yeah, when we get down to that, okay, thank you. All right, then our public comment period is, is going to be close. And we're going to look now, uh, if it is the pleasure of the board for approval of consent, agenda item 3.02, and then 3.05 through 3.09.
Still moved.
Motion by vice president Minneto, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Rodriguez. Any discussion from the board? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the motion carries. Let the record show it is unanimous. We'll go to 3.03. Uh, this is a consent agenda, uh, question from you trustee Church. So trustee Church, as staff is moving into position, I'll ask you to, uh, to share or ask whatever questions of staff that you have.
Yes, essentially, an explanation. I read through it, and I'm not a accounting whiz, but we're spending almost $400,000 to affirm the manage our money. If I read it right, and this is what confused me, the more money they have to manage, the more they charge us, the more money we have sitting in the bank or in investments, the more they charge. So I, I think for the sake of the board, as well as the community, a little, uh, explanation would be in order.
Mr. Mathers?
Uh, good afternoon, Mark Mathers, chief financial officer. These are for, uh, professional investment management services. And yes, the company here is paid based on a sliding scale of fees, but they are paid based on assets under management. So if the assets under management that they, um, invest fall, they are paid less. If the assets they manage rise, they are paid more. It's a workload issue. The more assets we have, the more securities they're purchasing and selling and managing. So. Is that?
Any further questions, trustee Church?
I guess my question would be, number one, did we go to bid? And number two, so that's why the term estimate is on there, because it depends on how they perform. I guess a third question, if we decide to bank a lot of money, because we're going to hold back something with the economy, with the price of building, so then they charge more because we're not spending that money?
So again, Mark Mathers, chief financial officer. We went and did a request for proposal back in 2018. And so the contract with Buckhead Capital Management is based on that RFP. They were one of two firms at the time selected to provide professional investment management services. Um, so their contract is being extended, and they're now managing all of our assets. So in terms of, I mean, we don't normally bank money for the purposes of banking money. We issue bonds when we have new construction projects and intend to use those bond to, bonds to, uh, pay construction contractors to build new schools. So there's never an intent really to bank money, per se. Um, there's always an intent to spend money. But it, again, as, as the total assets under management rise and fall, their fee is based on that, like virtually any asset manager. Just to, I guess, go into it a little bit more, they are registered investment advisors, so they're fiduciary to the district, they're not a broker. And I guess just to explain a little bit more, prior to 2018, um, the district actually did, used, invested very little of its money using a professional money manager. And so by virtue of contracting for a professional registered investment advisor to help us manage our monies, we've actually seen total interest earnings climb from under $1 million in 2014, 15, and 16 each, to more than $7 million um, in 2019, and 2020, and nearly $7 million in '21. So we've seen a, a definite return of investment, a tenfold return of investment on our monies by using a professional money manager. And so that's what this proposal is, you know, the proposal here is to extend their contract one year.
Thank you, Mr. Mathers. Trustee Church?
Uh, my, it's a two-year contract. Do we have, what's the rule on bidding? And do you think we'll go out to bid in two more years?
Andrea Sullivan, uh, for the record, director of procurement and contracts. This is, as I recall, the last renewal that we have available on this. Um, and so we renew it for one more year, which is this one. And then we'll determine if we want to do it again, and if so, we would issue a new RFP.
Are you, are you finished with your questions, trustee Church? Okay, thank you. Public comment?
Janet Butcher?
Welcome back, Ms. Butcher.
Thank you. Um, I was just kind of curious why a management company from Atlanta, Georgia, uh, was chosen, and are there no investment firms in Washoe County area that could handle institu, institution investments? Just curious, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butcher. Are there any other public comments, JJ?
That's all for this item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing other comments, it brings back to the, uh, bring the, uh, item 3.03 back to the board. If it's the pleasure of the board, I'm looking for a motion for approval. People are looking at, okay.
I make a motion that.
Clerk Nicolet?
Item 3.3 be approved.
3.03?
3.03, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion for that agenda item 3.03 be approved. Is there a second? Seconded by vice president Minneto. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion carries, let the record show it is unanimous. We'll go to agenda item 3.04. And Mr. Mathers, I know you're still going to be here for this. Uh, this is regarding class size reduction. Trustee Church, you have questions for the staff?
Yes, we had, uh, citizens call or email with concerns, and I voiced that. I, I think my question is probably best directed to the superintendent, but I'll leave that up to you, um, to kind of explain what this is, why it's on the consent agenda. And I think one of my big questions, school just started yesterday. How do we really know what our class sizes are? And when will we know?
Superintendent McNeil?
Thank you. So trustee Church, this is a standing item on a consent agenda, and it actually is a report that's turned in to the State Department of Nevada Department of Education. And this year, we actually don't even have to bring it to the board. However, we felt that it was, um, the right thing to do in order to bring the CSR report. So it's actually a reporting requirement, uh, to the Nevada Department of Education as far as class sizes in grades one, two, and three.
So I, I read through it briefly, but how, how are we doing? Or when will we know, say, for next month, or next reporting period?
So I think what you're speaking to is actually allocations, teacher allocations. Um, and we meet on a weekly basis to talk about teacher allocations and where those are staffed at, to make sure that they are in the teacher ratios. So we will not be making any determinations as far as class sizes until count. Um, and we do a count, um, every Friday for the next four weeks. And then we'll be making those decisions.
Great, great. Excellent answer. I think the public and myself are satisfied with that, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion on that, looking for a motion for the approval of consent agenda item 3.04?
Still moved.
Thank you, vice president Minneto, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Calvert. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposition? The motion carries, let the record show it is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll go now to a, to consent agenda item 3.10. 3.10, and this is, uh, the zoning advisory committee, uh, pulling that forward. And I think trustee Smith pulled this for consideration, trustee Smith?
Yes, I did.
You have, you have questions for staff or statements or?
It's a statement, so there's, there's no questions for staff. I have also personally met with Brooke Snyder and Tyler Rogers. And, um, as being appointed members of the committees, we do allow them the opportunity to accept their appointment. And Tyler Rogers was not able to be with us today, so he did share a statement that he would like me to read for the board.
I, I think that would be appropriate, because typically, we'll give a committee members an opportunity to be here and share a statement if they'd like. Since he isn't here in person, then please go right ahead.
Absolutely. And then I would also like to say that, um, Tyler Rogers is really fantastic, and it was a pleasure getting to know him through the appointment process. And I was incredibly pleased and grateful that he accepted my invitation to join the zoning advisory committee on behalf of District D. And so, um, this message is in his voice. "Howdy, boy, of board trustees. First, my apologies for not being able to attend today's meeting in person. We had a death in the family, which had to take priority. Second, I wanted to express my excitement to join the zoning advisory committee. As part of the recent interview process, trustee Nicolet offered all of us applicants a call to action to channel our energy into other areas of the district. I am grateful and honored to have trustee Smith's support to answer that call by joining this committee. I stressed community engagement in recent discussions, and I cannot think of a more critical activity in my future work to ensure collective support for zoning outcomes onward."
Thank you, trustee Smith. Before I ask if there's anything else, if you'd like to make a motion, I think there is public comment on this item.
Maureen Vigara?
Ms., Ms. Vigara? I don't see Ms. Vigara here.
Roger Edwards?
Mr., Mr. Edwards, you withdraw, sir? Okay, he said, yes, he withdraws. Okay, I think that's it, okay, well, thank you, everybody. Okay, then we'll bring it back here to the table, looking for, I see your light on trustee Smith. So I'll go right to you.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Brooke Snyder and Tyler Rogers to the zoning advisory committee as noted in the consent agenda item 3.10.
Thank you, trustee Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Rodriguez. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries, let the record show it is three to zero. Thank, thank you, Ms. Lauren. Just in case. Okay, we'll go on to agenda item 4.01. 4.01, oh, this, are we ready for it? Oh, we can't do it before four, oh, yeah, that's right. Not her before four, so, all right, so we're going, we're going to go ahead. We'll skip agenda items four completely, because that's all a part of the, that's all a part of the presentation. Oh, we can get down, can we do 4.04?
We can do 4.03.
Or 4.03, even better. Okay, yes, one, one, you, um, yeah, let's do the, we can do the task force. Let's do the task force, do the report on that. Okay, so we're going to, we're going to hold, uh, agenda items 4.01 and 4.02, because they involve presentations, and those folks are still in school or making their way from school, one way, one way or another. So we'll continue on the agenda. Uh, this is regarding, this is agenda item 4.03, Presentation Regarding the Superintendent's Task Force for Supplementary Materials Including the Current Application Process and Outreach to Families and Community. This is for presentation and discussion only, just for a little bit of background, since we have a couple of new trustees. Uh, this actually happened right before you, right before you joined us. Uh, the, um, either, uh, the conversation around, um, meeting the Nevada academic content standards, and there are three themes in that for social studies, and one of those themes includes social justice. Uh, there was a consideration of some supplementary materials uh, to assist teachers in teaching that topic. Um, after getting a lot of, uh, uh, community feedback, feedback from teachers, even feedback from board members, the superintendent's recommendation was to not go with the supplementary materials. You may hit, you may see it in emails and so on called benchmark, um, to not go with those supplementary materials. But in order to meet the academic, the requirements of the Nevada academic content standards, to develop our own, um, additional, uh, support materials for teachers and whatnot. And then, so there's a task force the superintendent's put together around it. You may have seen, I actually just sent the, uh, I just sent a response email to someone who emailed us on the board. And by the way, when, when you email all the board members, typically the president will, will respond on behalf of everyone. And that's why you may not get a response from everyone. Uh, we get a lot of emails, and then that's the way that we kind of manage that flow. Um, however, um, so you'll see that, you'll see that motion in there. And then part of that motion included the task force, adding parents to the task force, uh, not using the benchmark materials, not having materials that would be divisive in nature, because we know that's been a concern, and I don't think any of us want that on the board, anyway. Um, and also to make sure that there's a balanced approach to it. That word came up a lot today, balance, balance, balance. And if you take a look, that was actually in the motion, um, in the directive from the board to the superintendent, uh, because we all share that concern as well, especially on this really important topic. And that was a couple of months ago. Then we got into replacing trustees and had to have a little bit of a summer break, and that's the only time people get. And so now the superintendent's coming back to kind of give us a report on how the selection of that task force is, uh, is being done, uh, how you can apply and all of those things. So that being said, I wanted to fill in my colleagues, that being said, Superintendent McNeil.
Thank you very much, President Taylor. So you pretty much did the background slide. Thank you very much.
That's why it was so fresh in my head, because I just read it, sorry.
So, um, just to reiterate, um, back on June 8th, uh, for our two new trustees, back on June 8th, the Board of Trustees provided direction to myself in an alignment, uh, with our action plan, with our Equity and Diversity Action Plan uh, that the board has adopted. Um, and so in meeting the needs of our schools and our staff and students, I suggested that we move forward with the establishment of a superintendent's task force um, for supplementary curriculum materials. And that is around, strictly around the Nevada academic content standards, uh, which, as you know, are the adopted standards for the state of Nevada. Uh, we really wanted to make this a broad-based task force. And so, um, we are going to be, uh, going through what those, um, spots are. Um, and then Deputy Superintendent Byersdorf, and then Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer Michelle Anderson will be walking through what the communication protocols are. Um, but you see what the actual background and what the motion was up there on the screen. So for the composition of the task force, it is a large task force, but, um, I believe, and our leadership team believes, um, that this is, uh, in order to help, uh, provide a balanced and broad-based approach. Uh, the trustees actually directed that there would be five elementary school parents or guardians from each of the regular trustee districts. So not at our at-large districts, uh, but five elementary parents will be on the task force. There will be four community members, two elementary school teachers. Um, and those elementary school teachers will be selected by, uh, the Washoe Education Association, one middle school teacher, one high school teacher, also, um, selected by the WEA, which is, um, a past practice that we have done for years on the establishment of committees and task force. We've worked very closely with their associations, as well as for the Washoe Schools Principals Association on the principal representative. There will also be two central services representatives, uh, to help guide, um, the actual knowledge base for the task force members. There's going to have to be a lot of, um, deep dive into curriculum and how you actually review curriculum. So it's important that you have, um, the, you know, educators there. And then two students, two students will be elected from our student advisory council. So that's a really good thing. So with that, um, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Byersdorf, who's going to walk through, uh, the application process. And then, like I said, Ms. Anderson will walk, uh, through the communication protocols.
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. President Taylor, vice president Minneto, and trustees, thank you very much. Again, Deborah Byersdorf. Um, so I wanted to talk a bit about where we're at in the application process, um, provide you information, provide you updates. Um, and then I will turn it over to Michelle for, um, communications updates as well. So the application period actually started or opened on July 26th, and it's scheduled to close at 5:00 PM on August 27th. That's a total of five weeks. We wanted to make sure we had ample time for folks to, um, be able to apply. The parent guardian and the community member positions will be filled via or through an application process. And that application, again, is live on our website, Washoeschools.net backslash taskforce, right? Um, and, uh, just to give you a bit of an update, And just to give you a bit of an update, we've had a little over 90 applicants for all total. It hasn't been broken down by community member or parent guardian, but a little bit over 90, so we're thrilled that we're getting a lot of interest in this. As Dr. McNeil stated, other positions will be filled through partnerships with our associations and our Student Voice Department. And then as far as the parent guardian applications go, as Dr. McNeil mentioned, they're from the five regular trustee districts, A, B, C, D, and E. We need to make sure, and we will ensure, that the parents reside in one of those districts. And then we also will ensure that our parent guardian representatives do have students, have a child or children in WCSD Elementary School. So a little bit more about the application process. Once we close those applications, the process, a little later this month, we are going to convene a small committee that will review each application using a blind review process. So that means that identifying information such as somebody's name will be redacted, will not be seen by this committee. And then we will also use a rubric-based process as well, and we're developing that rubric right now. And in using a rubric, that will ensure that each review of, each application is objective by this committee. The committee will consist of one parent guardian who is not a district employee, one community member, one teacher, and a representative from our Office of Accountability. And I wanted to chat just with you a little bit today about the reason behind that. Our Office of Accountability, that's led by Chief Accountability Officer Joe Ernst, they will lead the actual review process. This is work that this particular office has done quite extensively, actually, in the past when it's come to votes around student uniforms or perhaps having to run lotteries when we have a large interest in one of our signature academies, but we don't have enough spots for everybody. So the Accountability Office will be leading the charge in reviewing each of the applications. Besides identifying information, you know, where somebody resides, or if they have a child in the school district, for example, for the parent guardian application, there are also two questions that we're asking all applicants, both community member and parent and guardian, to answer. And the first one you can see there, goal one of Washoe County School District's new strategic plan, response to recovery states. Instruction will be designed to meet the needs of every child in our diverse student population. In three to four sentences, please share what this statement means to you. And then the second question is, please share the skills and experiences you may have in reviewing elementary and/or secondary, middle and high school curriculum, and we're asking for 250 words or less there. And then we will be contacting all applicants in early September to let them know the status of their application. And then once that work has been finished, we'll move forward with actually having the task force meet. So this is the timeline of those meetings. We're anticipating that the first meeting will happen sometime in September. And we're also anticipating that the task force will schedule monthly meetings. At their first meeting, we are going to be encouraging them to select a chair or a leader of the task force. We're also going to be encouraging them to establish meeting norms. And we're also going to be encouraging them to establish meeting dates and times. And likely the meetings will be a little later in the day to allow our two students to finish their school day before they would come to these meetings. And as you know, we will be bringing you regular updates on the work of the task force. And as was also discussed at the earlier meeting in June that Dr. McNeil talked about, meeting agendas and notes will be posted on the district website under the same address that I shared before. Michelle's going to talk a little bit more about that. And then wanted to take an opportunity here just to remind everyone or inform everyone of the scope of the superintendent's task force. It's to make and share recommendations to the superintendent regarding supplementary curriculum materials that best serve the needs of our students and our community, to not consider divisive or political materials, to provide input on the selection of supplementary curriculum materials based on our content standards, and VACs, as we call them. And then just a reminder too, that supplementary materials go above and beyond the adopted curriculum. So supplementary materials are meant to expand and enhance the content curriculum, and they do not replace the content standards that we are required to teach. And then Dr. McNeil, in the future, will share those recommendations with all of you.
Good afternoon, trustees. Dr. McNeil, Michelle Anderson, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer for the record. And so how are we getting the word out to make sure that we are providing the community the opportunity to apply for those that are interested? We have it in two locations on our website where it's easy to find. One, you can go to the front page of our website, washoeschools.net. You will see the slider picture up there, so you can click on that link there. We also did a shortcut, and that link on that front page will stay that way. But we also have, we made a convenient URL, washoeschools.net-taskforce, so that people can easily find the information. As we're doing that call for people that are interested to apply, we sent out a Connect Ed email message to all families and staff so that anybody who wanted and was interested could apply. As we start nearing the end of the month and we need to send out that reminder, we will be doing so as well. We've also included it in the family newsletter, so there may be some families who have decided that they didn't want to be subscribed to our Connect Ed email messages. Hopefully that is not the case, but we do know that there are families that have done that, and so we have that other opportunity. The superintendent has also, and will continue to mention it in the Monday message, so that we can get the word out that way, as you guys all know, she sends out during the school year, updates to the entire district, so information there, sharing it on social media. And then we have, as I've mentioned before, we have great local community media partners, and they have been publicizing that for as well. So we will continue sharing that through our media briefings that we have on Fridays and sending that pertinent information.
And that concludes our update.
Thank you, Superintendent McNeil. You want to share anything on that? And then certainly afterwards, any questions, comments from the board at this time would be appropriate as well.
No, I'm just really proud that we're getting this off the ground and getting it started, and I'm looking forward to getting the task force going and having some discussions around curriculum. Just so the board knows and everyone knows, I will not be attending these meetings, so the only one that I'll attend is obviously the first one, as I typically do, and I'll introduce them and we'll walk through what, you know, norms are and those types of things and welcome them and thank them for their work. And then obviously, when we do bring updates to the board, as is typical practice, we will most likely have the chair come of the task force and do the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Trustee Church, I see your hand up.
I hate going first, but I guess I will.
Your only hand up, sir.
I know. Now, hopefully we'll have more. A few questions and comments. Number one, I did vote no initially for different reasons, one of them being the public perception, not saying it's fact, that it wouldn't be a fair board because it's appointed by the superintendent. I'm very happy to hear that it's actually going to be appointed in some kind of a neutral fashion, names not covered by a committee. So my first question is, is the meeting going to be open to the public? May the public attend or speak, or are there going to be opportunities for public input? I have a few more, but I'll stop, I'll do that one first.
So as with other task force meetings, it would not be a public meeting, and that was the reason why the board asked to have the meeting agendas as well as the meeting notes posted on the website.
Do you think there'll be some opportunity? You know, it may not be every meeting, like public comment for three minutes, but do you think we'll have an opportunity for the public to comment?
That would most likely happen at the board meeting when we bring up the updates.
Okay. The other concern I have, when one reads the announcement, it almost sounds like we're discussing phonics or spelling or English in general. And as you said at the beginning, and I hope I didn't misquote, but you said that it's dealing with the, probably going to misquote it, but the Equity and Diversity Plan, which of course, anybody that was at that meeting knows, we did a deep dive into that issue. So, am I correct, they're going to be discussing, at least in part, the Equity and Diversity Plan?
So their first topic is going to be the ELA supplemental curriculum for K through 5. All of this is relegated around the Equity and Diversity Plan that the board voted to support. But the first task of this task force, Trustee Church, is actually the ELA curriculum supplementary materials for K-5, because at this point in time, we do not have those materials for our teachers.
Alrighty. I guess that's a good time for the next question. So what do we do in the meantime? What's being taught or not taught, or how have we developed the curriculum for this year?
So again, Deborah Byersdorf, so Trustee Church, so we are in our third year of adoption for Benchmark Advanced, that's our K-5 kindergarten through 5th grade, English Language Arts curriculum. So our teachers are teaching that curriculum, teaching state standards through that, but are wanting supplementary materials to help with sentence stems, reading materials, research projects, other things that students can be involved in as well. So they are anxiously awaiting this task force to start their work. But we are continuing with teaching the content standards for each of the grades.
My next question then is, are those standards available to the Board of Trustees or to the public? May we see them?
Yes, so all of Nevada Academic Content Standards are housed in the Nevada Department of Education website. And you can easily go there and you can find them for English Language Arts, kindergarten through 12th grade, science, social studies, health, library sciences, all content standards are housed there.
But that's the standard.
And we have, excuse me, I'm just being reminded, and we also have links from our school district website as well.
So once we have those standards or that guidance, I guess we could call it, what we actually teach, the books, the lesson plan, the curriculum, is that available to the trustees?
Yes, so that information is also on our website, school district website. So what school districts do is they analyze, they bring in those Nevada Academic Content Standards, they line them up to the adopted materials that the district has. And then what we do is we plan out what is called a scope and sequence or a pacing guide, and that tells our teachers what, in what order, what needs to be taught to be sure that we're covering the academic content standards. And you can find those on our website under the departments tab, and I think if you go to the Office of Academics, that's where they can be found.
Okay, the actual books, the actual lesson plan would be found there.
Lesson plans are held at the school level. Our teachers develop their lesson plans. And the reason why lesson plans are more individualized than perhaps a scope and sequence is that our teachers need to take into account the needs of the students that are in their classroom. So a 3rd grade class at Collin Ranch may have different needs than a 3rd grade class at Huntsburg or Elementary School. So lesson plans our teachers develop.
Okay, and I had to ask so many questions, but this is so, so important. Can we see them as trustees, those lesson plans?
So, Trustee Church, a lesson plan is actually a guide for where a teacher would show what their objectives are, what their student learning goals would be, when we had student learning goals, they're on a pause at this point in time. And that's really what the teacher and the administrator work towards, so it's a daily plan. It's for every single classroom. Every single day, a teacher must have a lesson plan. So those are the property of the teacher, and they work to make sure that they are covering the academic standards, the content standards.
And if I could maybe ask, lesson plans also...
Let's, I'm sorry, this is a business meeting, let's please not shout out. If we can do that, that'd be great. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Dr. Taylor. So lesson plans also delineate specific supports for students that are in a teacher's classroom as well. I think perhaps the most, the more valuable tool would be the scope and sequence or the pacing guides, and those you can find on the district website. So those will plan out all of the Nevada academic standards, so in this case, kindergarten, English Language Arts for a school year, and what teachers are expected to teach.
So I guess... I'm sorry, Trustee Church, if I, I think what you're asking is, how can someone, how can a parent, for an example, know what a teacher is teaching their child? Is that what, is that what you're getting at, Trustee Church?
Not exactly. I think it's, this is a very hot topic, and we're getting, I'm getting emails saying we're teaching it now. I'm getting phone calls saying we're teaching it now. To go back, some of the things we've reviewed used the term white privilege, systemic racism, systemic oppression, implied that minority voting rights were being denied. So I'm wondering if we're teaching that now. I think as a trustee, we have a right to know that.
So, Trustee Church, at any time, if a parent wants to make a conference with the teacher to ask what materials they're being presented with their child, they're obviously able to do that, and we've communicated that. Our principals and our teachers know that. As far as the topics that you had discussed, that was one of the reasons why the board took my recommendation for this superintendent's task force and not to approve the benchmark supplemental materials. So those specific terms, it's going to depend if a teacher is teaching history versus social studies versus ELA versus math. It's going to depend on the actual content and the subject matter.
I think the important thing is that a teacher, a parent can sit down with the teacher and say, hey, show me what you're teaching. And I think, I mean, I think, I certainly don't want to tie the hands of a teacher to teach, you know, based upon who the children are in their class. However, I also think if a parent wants to say, hey, I'd like to see what you're teaching, I don't think that's a bad thing per se and the parent, and it's well-known according to the superintendent that parents can do that. And I do think it's important that parents are able to do that.
And if I may add, our teachers would be thrilled to be able to talk to parents about what students are learning. And when I think of a kindergartner explaining what they're learning, maybe versus a senior in high school explaining, right? But our teachers absolutely would work with our parents and our guardians about what's being taught in the classroom. But maybe I could add another kind of layer to this as well, so in just a little while, you're going to be meeting our new principals in the school district, and one of the most important responsibilities our principals have is to serve as the instructional leader of their school. And it's incumbent on them, and it is required by them, and it is in their job description that they're ensuring that our teachers are teaching Nevada Academic Content Standards. And that comes through the evaluation, the supervision part of what our principals do and working alongside their teachers.
So once again, I'm sorry to ask so many questions, but this is so important. I think what I'm hearing, I'm not talking about the parent doing it right. As a trustee, I'm getting emails, and I want to be able to answer them accurately. And from what I think I'm hearing, if a teacher in history or in this ELA, K-5, wants to use white privilege, systemic racism, systemic oppression, suppression of voter rights, they could and will and maybe are doing that right now.
Well, yeah, why don't we do this? I'll ask Deputy Byersdorf to answer this, but if you can make sure your questions are related to the task force itself as opposed to curriculum, just because we got to stay on the agenda item? Not that they aren't important questions, because I think they are, right, and I have an answer, but it's, we want to make sure we don't leave too much off of this, Trustee Church. Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Deputy Byersdorf.
So again, Deborah Byersdorf, so it would have to be part of Nevada Academic Content Standards. So part of the scope of that particular class or course or subject or part of the approved supplementary materials. If it's not in there and it's not part of Nevada Academic Content Standards, no.
All right, let me move on then. If I'm correct, I'm sorry.
Trustee Church, I think there are a couple of the lights on, I think people want to kind of stay where you are to the point, just make sure everyone that we say is related to the task force, right? So, yes, please go ahead. And then we can get back to your questions, okay? I'm not leaving you, but I think they want to jump in at where we are. So we go to Trustee Smith and then Clerk Nicolette.
Thank you very much, President Taylor. I just had a few clarifying questions, also based on some feedback that I've heard from people in the community. What are the ideal ages of the students that are going to be on the task force?
We actually have identified those students, and they are both high school age students.
Very good. That brings me to my second question, was I assume we got the consent of those students' parents?
We are working on that. Yes.
Very good. And so that brings me to my next, so these all segue into kind of where I'm going in the end. I am definitely encouraging people to apply for this task force, and we have received many, many emails on it. And I would say to everyone that has an interest in this, absolutely apply. Now that I learned more about the blind review process, I think it's a phenomenal way to go about it. And I know that we're going to have that committee to select those members very thoughtfully chosen, so I encourage everyone. So I encourage everyone. One of the barriers, though, that I'm hearing, is my next question. And will the task force members be known to the public? There is, there's fear there.
I believe that was the intent, that yes, these task force members, their names will be posted on the website. As a matter of fact, in the application, it does state that, that, just so folks would know as they applied, that their names would, if they were selected, would be made public.
And then tying it back to my first one, and I'm almost done, thank you, is will the children's identities be kept private, however?
If they're not over 18, likely not.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, trustee Smith, President Taylor, I think that's really important as to why, at the first task force meeting, that group norms are going to be established. Whenever you develop a task force, and you know this from the zoning advisory council, it's always very important to establish those norms and those guide rails and boundaries, so that it is a very safe place to have these discussions, and that everyone, from students to teachers and principals and parents and community members, feel safe in that setting to have these discussions. Because it will be something that, we want very robust discussions, and that's the right thing to do. And so, respect, listening, all of those group norms, giving the floor to somebody, not overtaking the floor. All of those group norms need to be established.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm going to go, thank you trustee Smith. Dr. Nicolet, I want, I don't want to get too far away from trustee church, because are you in the same area where he was? If not, I want to let him continue before we go.
I'm going back to my colleague.
To where he was, okay, go right ahead.
Trustee church, you bring up some great points, Jeff. I've thought of those myself, and I will tell you what I've, what I have found works for me. When I do my school visits, and I do a lot of school visits, it's, it's one of the gifts of the position. And that is that I talk to the teachers, I talk to the principal, I look in the classrooms. I've asked to look at lesson plans, I respect the fact, and Deputy Superintendent Deborah's correct, when I ask to look at lesson plans, teachers are like, wow, yeah! And if there's an opportunity, then we can chat with, chat about them, and then I can see them enacted in the classroom. And so, I know where you're coming from, you want some assurances as a trustee, because we need to be trusted. And so, when you do those school visits, just ask, just be there and be present, and watch the students and the teachers, and ask questions. Just a heartfelt recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. We're going to go back to you, trustee church, I know you had several questions. And then I see you reach him back and forth, Vice President Minetta, we'll get to you as well. Go ahead, trustee church.
Just about winding up. Number one, I understand we have a brand-new equity department head, so I welcome him or her, them, and will they be part of the task force?
Trustee church, as was sent to all the trustees over the weekend in the superintendent's highlights, we do have a new equity and diversity director. Byer, Deputy Superintendent Byersdorf, would you like to announce who that is?
Oh, oh, I'm thrilled to be able to announce who it is. So our new director is Lenisha Battle, B-A-T-T-L-E. And she comes to us most recently from Booth Elementary School. She has many years of teaching, site administration. She, she's an amazing leader, and we're very, very excited. And I believe her first official day is tomorrow, so.
So it'll be up to her, trustee church, if she wants to, if she's going to be the one that sits on there. And we'll also have a representative from the curriculum and instruction, because as I was stating before, it's going to be really important that we have people that are able to dive deep into the Nevada academic content standards for the task force.
Well, thank you. And I apologize if I, so to speak, spilt the beans, I didn't mean to disclose anything that wasn't public knowledge. My next question, my understanding, we have a diversity and equity task force, so maybe you could expound on that if we do have one, and how that interacts with this task force? And do we get any feedback as trustees from that diversity and equity task force, if there is one?
What I would say, just to make sure we don't have too much bleed here, I think having a conversation between if the two task forces interact, but I think one of the big detail on the equity and diversity task force itself is, isn't it different agenda item, because it's a different task force? But I think certainly asking if there's some kind of interaction between the two would be appropriate. I'm just trying to keep us on the agenda item. But then that's certainly a question you can ask in your meetings with the superintendent, right? When you have that, say, hey, would, kind of help me get this a little bit more, okay? Okay. Is there interaction between the two task forces? I think that's the first part of this question.
The only, the only way that there would be interaction is if one of the members of the equity and diversity task force actually applied and was able to get on the task force. We don't have a set member for the equity and diversity task force.
So different, different task forces, it sounds like, just straight different task forces. Okay, go right ahead, sir.
I did have one final, one final question. If the parent guardian, would a grandparent serve that purpose if there are actual parents or guardians, or does it strictly have to be like the parent or guardian?
We've requested that it would be a parent and a guardian, because they're closest to the, to the child as far as knowing what's on the curriculum.
Thanks, and thank you for allowing me to ask so many questions. Thank you very much.
It's all right, thank you. If you're done, go ahead and throw that hand down, so I don't call on you again, unless you're coming back around. And then Vice President Minetta, also, you leaning in back and forth several times, so we'll go to you.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we need to remember that the motion that was made on June 8th did include that we do not want the task force to consider, do not want the task force to consider anything divisive or political materials. Divisive, what I say?
Yes, divisive.
Oh.
We don't want that either.
Divisive, right, or political materials. And I believe that we believe that wholeheartedly on this board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also think it's also, I also think it's, I also think it is, it's important to note that what, that the work of the task force will continue to happen, but at the end of the day, when the decisions are made as to what the supplemental materials will be, that still comes back to the Board of Trustees. And that, so that's still certainly for anyone who may not have been able to follow all the meetings and whatnot altogether, then certainly that, then they can certainly have an opportunity to review what the recommendation is from the task force before it comes to the Board, and then have public comment at the Board meetings and so on. So it's also important to note that it still comes back here, but it's developing it with our own people and our own community, and the own, the students and the families that are going to be involved and so on, make those recommendations, and then how it might best suit us in the school district, and then bring that back here before the Board.
And then just as a reminder, the meeting notes and the agendas are posted on the public, on the district website. So somebody that is interested in the progress of the task force is able to go to the website and see those.
Good, good.
Dr. Nicolet?
Yeah, and I will just say for myself that that spurs me on, thank you for that, President Taylor. It spurs me on to, I've reviewed the Nevada content standards for social studies, and I'm going to begin to do it again, because if I'm going to, if I'm going to understand those notes that I'm going to have access to, I want to be able to kind of have a look, see into what they're discussing and an understanding of it. So I might suggest that as Deputy Superintendent mentioned there, online, Nevada Department of Education, anybody, excuse me, just go, go look, they're right there, they're very easy to find, and just start looking at them.
Clerk Nicolet, if I may, we actually did a link directly from that, washeschools.net/taskforce, so that there is a direct link from that page as well. So those that are interested in applying can do a direct reference to those content standards.
Trustee Rodriguez, were you leaning in?
No, I was, I, Superintendent clarified that there's a task force working that is transparent, and that the parents and the public can see the work the task force is doing, so everyone can see that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that's really important. I think that, I think that it's a, that that was clearly something that the Board heard, that people want to see what it is that's going on. As a matter of fact, that was actually the request of a public commenter, as I recall. It said, at least, can we at least put these things, like, you know what, that's a really good idea, so that people can follow, people can see, they can read, they can follow, they can do all of that. And so I certainly think that that's appropriate. Okay?
One more question?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to clarify, and this is specifically for the task force, that those members and the trustees can see whatever textbooks are out there, not the lesson plan, we talked about that. But if there's any textbooks, that I as a trustee can see them, and I assume the task force, if they want them, will see them.
Most likely, the task force is going to have to see some of those, I'll just use the ELA curriculum, they're going to have to take a look and see what is being taught now, so that they can see what supplemental materials need to go above and beyond that. So they will be, have access to the curriculum as well.
And the trustees?
And as before, if a trustee wanted to see something, just as when we have a textbook adoption, trustees are able to go and see what those textbooks are at any time.
Anytime, meaning even though they've already been adopted?
Even though they've already been adopted, yes. So I would just ask that you would make an appointment, either with the deputy superintendent, so that that could be arranged at the site level.
Okay, this is typically on agenda items that are not action items. We do not take public comment, however, it's on the agenda, we know there's a high level of interest, so we will take public comment on this, on this item. JJ?
Hope Bachman. The Board received an email from Sierra Pagoda.
Can you repeat, repeat that name one more time?
Hope Bachman.
Hope, is it Bachman, Bachman? Okay, is there another?
Laurie Agnew.
Thank you for allowing me up here again.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So one of the interesting things to me is what you were saying up here, as far as not having materials that are divisive, or, I forget what else she said, political, whatever. So I'm rather surprised that we even need to address this social justice or critical race theory that's being planned for our students. This material does more harm than good. This curriculum is completely inconsistent with recorded American history. The concept of racial struggle that allegedly made America what it is today is inferred only by those who choose to focus on the critical race theory. When we start attaching importance to a person's race, ethnicity, or gender, as opposed to character, contributions, merit, and morality, we are telling our children that their worth is no more than the label society attaches. We do not offer them any hope of rising to the top, of achieving, of achieving any goal they set, or of striving to be the best they can possibly be. Instead, you label them and create even more racist feelings, as they are encouraged to blame and seek retribution for certain classes and ethnicities in our country today. As educators, you are supposed to teach, enlighten, encourage, and guide these developing souls into productive, independent adults. You're not teaching them this with CRT, you're teaching them to be divisive, instead of demonstrating and teaching them to come together, to get along, and live peacefully among people of all types. Passing this social justice curriculum does a disservice to our children and their future. In Reno High School yesterday, a student was told they would not be learning about the US Constitution, the Civil War, or any of that kind of history. But instead, this teacher told him that he would be taught about Black Lives Matter and LGBTQ. Black Lives Matter, that's not political, that's not divisive, seriously? Is this how you propose to educate our children? As the saying goes, those who do not learn from history are doomed to repeat it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Bev Stengem.
Welcome back, Ms. Stengem.
Thank you. So, as you know, 84% of the feedback on the critical race theory, social justice program was in opposition, 84-plus percent. And yet, you still are going forward with the task force. And many of us feel that this is a, just another tactic to push it through. So many of us are against this. So it sounds to me like the supplemental materials, that is such a vague topic, is really talking about the social justice program that you want to put through, which is really critical race theory. Subjects such as white male privilege, or systemic racism, you're born racist, the Constitution was made by a bunch of slave owners. This is not the kind of indoctrination we want for our kids. We do not want this task force even at all. You say that there are two high school students on this task force. Are both of those students in favor of critical race theory? There should only, there should be one student for and one student against, to be fair. And I believe that the task force should be evenly balanced as well. Most of the parents and most of the community do not want critical race theory taught to our kids. And you say that you don't want divisive or political information, yet we have a difference of opinion of what is divisive and what is political. We believe Black Lives Matters is a Marxist organization, they describe themselves that way, and that's very political and very divisive. We don't want that taught in our classrooms, yet that's what teachers are doing. And you say that you want to represent our community, yet a very small percentage of kids are into LGBTQ. I don't know what that exact number is, but it's got to be a very small number. It doesn't represent the majority of kids. So I totally believe in anti-bullying and respect for all people. I'd like to say, how about a class on how great America is? Even with our faults, America is still the greatest country in the world. We need a class on how wonderful our country is. And let's make it better.
Thank you, Ms. Stengem.
Casey Thelander.
Welcome back, Mr. Thelander.
Thank you. The only questions that I kind of really have are that I have concerns about, of course, to the CRT, but during the application process, that first question, I feel is a pretty loaded question. I feel like it's a way for the team that's going to be picking the task force to cherry pick who they want and who they don't want, considering that it says, Goal 1 of Oyster County School District Strategic Plan, Response to the Recovery States, Instruction will be designed to meet the needs of every child in our diverse student population. In three to four sentences, please share your statement and means to you. So people are going to give their personal opinions, right? So obviously, you want the public to be honest with that. So then that team can say, oh, well, this is what this person said about this, and start to cherry pick who they want for that task force. And I don't really feel, if it's supposed to be unbiased and, and nonpartisan, it's, that doesn't sound nonpartisan to me or unbiased, because people are going to give their honest opinion. And then that team is going to look through that, and then pick based upon what people are saying. I don't think that matters whatsoever for the parents. Like, as far as the parents go, you don't need to know nothing about the parents. Like, you apply, and they pick you. Obviously, if they're applying, they have the knowledge and want to be there. So that's just the one question that I feel is, is, is a hard one. I don't, I don't really feel like we should go with that. I think that we should pull that from the application process, even though it's already, you know, we've already had 90 applicants. But, or at least, when it gets to the, the team that's going to be making the decisions, that at least get pulled off of what everyone stated. I believe that the skills, you know, everyone can, everyone has skills that they can bring to the table, so I don't have a problem with that. But that first question, I definitely think is loaded, for sure, for, to cherry pick a team on behalf of the task force that's going to meet certain, certain Board members' agendas. So I would just ask the Board, please, remove that before it gets to the, the decision-making. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thelander. Shannon Coley. Welcome, Ms. Coley.
Hi. I have some handouts. I'm not sure that the new Board members are...
I'm not sure that the new board members are aware of the Nevada Academic Content Social Standards for Social Studies. So I printed them out, and I know we've been talking about it, and I printed them out, actually, for all the board members. And I beg each of you to go through these before you vote for a task force, because I don't even know why we're here today talking about a task force. Washto County Schools already has fulfilled Nevada Multicultural Standards Law and Nevada Department of Education's Social Justice Requirements with its Nevada Academic Content Standards for Social Studies, not ELA. It's already in here. We have social justice in social studies. Why are we doing more? These standards, these ones, were adopted by the Washto County School District in September of 2018. In Nevada DOE's own words, "The content of every grade level is more inclusive and representative of the diverse population of Nevada students. Significant efforts have been made to highlight the contributions and achievements of diverse cultures and individuals to our modern world, as well as the struggles that those groups have experienced throughout history and today. Our students come from a wide variety of social, racial, ethnic, cultural, and religious backgrounds. They deserve to see themselves in their history reflected in these standards. The additional of multicultural standards is the new requirement in Nevada law. Now, standards represent a broad range of diversity and show a more vibrant, thoughtful, and full picture of world's history." It's here. We already have it. Why are we doing? Teacher after teacher has said to me, "Why are we going adding this social justice supplement to ELA? We already have adopted social study standards with social justice in them. These social justice lessons already exist. You can find the entire K-12 curriculum, along with K-5 Scope and Sequence, and our adopted social study standards on our district website. The district spent a lot of time and effort intentionally creating these adopted documents. They were researched and written over an entire year, 2017 to 2018. A dedicated team of 100 educators have all vetted by our own teachers. It's been done. The social justice curriculum is grounded in Nevada academic standards, Nevada social study standards, the National Council for Social Studies, College Career Civic Life Framework for Social Studies, Northern Nevada Studies, Common Core Aligned Teaching Strategies." Why are we having this task force?
Thank you, Ms. Coley. Your time is up, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Victoria Meyer.
Ms. Meyer? Welcome back, Ms. Meyer.
Victoria Meyer here, thank you. I stand against your voting records. I stand against curriculum built on teaching racism. I stand against teaching our children that we are a racist nation. If this is true, why do so many people want to come here, and why don't you warn them not to? Your job is to implement materials that teach reading, writing, tech skills, et cetera, not to help form their views, to conform to progressive socialist Marxists and possibly out-and-out commies. Your job is to implement curriculum that ensures our Washto County students do not need remedial reading, math, writing skills after they graduate high school. That's about the majority of them. That's ridiculous. You're not here to shape their minds, especially to be anti-American, or to break down perceived racism, or to foment division among them, or to give them even emotional support. It's not your job. You're doing our children a disservice at best and contributing to the destruction of this great country at worst. Maybe that is your actual goal. Maybe you don't see what we see. Maybe you think America is not a good nation. You say you all have political viewpoints, and this is true of all of us, but the preponderance of evidence suggests by your board actions that you all lean in a distinct political direction that is diametrically opposed to most all of us here. You are not responsive to the parents, you're not listening to us. This is not the time for compromise. We're here to fight. My grandson was told in school, here, Billinghurst, not to tell his parents about what the teacher was going to teach him that day. Trustee Nicolette, I appreciate some of your comments you've made over the months. However, when you make statements that are self-evidentiary, self-evidently not true, you will be mocked, called names, and ridiculed, maybe even laughed at, which I believe happened here today. When you say things-
Will you get that mask over your nose, please, ma'am? I'm sorry, thank you.
When you, that happened earlier today, when you stated so sternly that this was, this board is nonpartisan. It may well call itself nonpartisan, but the self-evidence is in the voting record and historical materials voted into use, much of which is completely biased against our own fellow Americans of all colors and our country. Don't tell us you are all nonpartisan. We don't need a task force, and we don't need this kind of curriculum in our classrooms.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. John Appolito.
Welcome back, Mr. Appolito.
Yes, ma'am, thanks for having me. My name is John Appolito. I'm a former K-12 teacher, and I have two kids left in the district. I've been intimately involved with this board for 12 years, longer than anyone up there, except for Superintendent McNeil. This is the first time public comments have ever been removed from the beginning of the agenda in those 12 years that I know of. I'd like to summarize what President Taylor and Superintendent McNeil said in my own words and add a little information they left out. Washto County School District sent a survey to district parents about a year ago and posted the proposed social justice curriculum. I have it back there. Critical race theory for K-5 in English classes. This is not social studies. We're talking about doing this in English classes. We already have it in social studies. And the district attached the survey. The district's own survey showed 84% of parents were opposed to teaching social justice, critical race theory, and K-5 during English class. Please know, we already have the state standards that include social justice and critical race theory in grades K through 12. I was going to hold it up, but it's back there. It's kind of hard. On at least three times, February 9th, June 8th, July 27th, this issue was discussed. Most of the comments over all this time, I'd say about 90%, have been against teaching critical race theory slash social justice in K-5 English Language Arts. So it appears President Taylor and Superintendent McNeil decided the best way to continue down the social justice, critical race theory path for these young kids outside of social studies was the superintendent's task force. For clarification, the meetings of the task force are private, and I believe you guys didn't mention, doesn't Superintendent McNeil pick everybody on the task force? Maybe she only picks most of them. She might pick all of them. At the last meeting, the Benchmark Advanced, there was money for Benchmark Advanced. You know what? I'm going to skip that. I'd like to see the packets that you guys just paid between $100,000 and $200,000 for from Benchmark Advanced. I don't know if we can do that or not. I would really like to see this board spend less time on divisive issues and more time on things like improving education, possibly teaching kids how to communicate, read, write, speak, listen, bring back curses, bring back traditional math, bring back the good and bad of history, teach science, spend less time on all this garbage. I ran out of time, and I didn't even have that many words. I don't know what happened. You can find us at protectnevadachildren.org, and you can find us at Facebook, Protect Nevada Children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome.
Mindy Liligus. The board also received an email from Maria Skolnick.
Ma'am, help me with your name? Lillyquist, that's right, okay. That's all right, thank you. Let's get your microphone on before you start. Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to let you know that I appreciate the sacrifice of you guys in this very public seat, and I even more so want to thank your families for the sacrifices they're making for you to be here on our behalf. I also want to welcome the new trustees, Trustees Rodriguez and Trustee Smith. I'm sure you are just needing some coffee. I'm here again with some questions. I'm a parent of four kids in the district, all in elementary, middle school, and high school, and I'm confused, I'm dismayed, I'm dismayed because I'm forced to talk at you, and I want to talk with you. I think that a lot of the confusion could be dispelled, especially everyone in this room. If we could just have a conversation or a town meeting where it was a little more accessible, I'm sure inside you guys are ready to explode because you know the answers and you know how to dispel some of the rumors that are happening. That's just my thought on all this. I want to say, according to the task force, that I do have some questions about that task force, and I'll submit my questions to each of you. I'd love a response. First, is this task force, it's labeled supplemental curriculum task force, is it for all supplemental curriculums? Are we starting with just the social justice curriculum? The next question is, what length of service will be, will these seats be? Will the task force be run like the shared advisory committee with all the meetings being public and then public comment being offered? Who is going to proctor and lead the task force, and how do we ensure that they don't come to the table with conflicts of interest or bias? What will the selection process entail? I know there's a blind interview something, but does that also include the, an interview after the application process, which I have seen the email? Who is on the interview committee if there is an interview, and how do we ensure fair selection on the task force? Another public comment was made that it does feel like that's a litmus test question of, go ahead and open the kimono to us so that we can decide if we want to have you on the team or not. Lastly, I would say, how will Washto County School District audit this task force going forward to ensure that it's unbiased, that it's serving its purpose, and that it's useful? I don't know that as an applicant. I certainly don't know enough about what is happening to know if I apply, if I want to stay on it long-term. And I'm assuming you would want parents who will be on it long-term so that they can have real change. Those are my questions, and I'll submit them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lillyquist. That's all I have for this item.
Okay, thank you very much. There was a discussion item, so there's no action required from the board. So staff, thank you very much, and thank you to all of you who gave public comment. We do have presentations, but we're going to take a quick break. Why don't we take, why don't we take just a 15-minute break? Okay, and then we'll come on back, and then we'll jump back to agenda item. I think it's 4.01. We'll be on recess for 15 minutes. Order here. Thank you, there's a little bit of an extension on there, thank you for that. But we are, we are excited to have our presentations. First of all, presentation on, of agenda item 4.01. This is presentation from students attending various schools throughout the Washto County School District on their experiences from their first day of school. This was on yesterday, their first day of school, and this is for presentation only. So again, presentation only, there will be no public comment on these next two items. All right, but I will turn it over to Area Superintendent Ford.
Thank you, Madam President, Superintendent McNeil. For the record, Lauren Ford, Area Superintendent. It is my honor today to present what has become a board tradition. We have students here today to share about their first day of school. I would like to speak on behalf of my fellow area superintendents and all the principals and say thank you. Yesterday was amazing, having all of our children back at school. Thank you so much. We will be back at the next board meeting with our inclined students as they start on August 23rd. So at this time, I would like to introduce Principal of Vaughn Middle School, Mandy Lovkowitz, and Jimena Ramirez.
Hello, my name is Jimena Ramirez. I am a seventh grader at Vaughn Middle School.
All right, welcome, welcome.
My first day of school went good. All the teachers were understanding how complicated it was due to like all the grades coming in at once, and it was very kind of the teachers, letting students go in and out and letting them understand that, how the classes went and how they were. And Vaughn Middle School is really good school for me because all the teachers were caring. Some of my teachers taught me how to concentrate easily without like making a whole distraction. And Vaughn Middle School is just like a kind place where all the teachers and all the staff were just really kind of me with the new sixth graders coming in and with them and with the seventh and the eighth. They're really kind about that and understanding. Thank you.
Awesome.
For this year, I'm excited about being back because with the new leadership, they let seventh graders now, which is a good thing. And with all like the ideas of like the entertainment, the lunch, and just like knowing that it's going to be a better place with all the new things we have. So that's what I'm excited for.
Awesome. Well, we'll turn it here to the board. I have a question. What was your favorite part about your day yesterday or today?
My favorite part was probably going to the classes and meeting my new teachers.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic. We will always allow applause for our students. Absolutely.
Jimena's mother is here today, too.
Hello. Welcome. Thank you, thank you for such an amazing daughter.
So Jimena, what is your favorite subject in school?
Probably Spanish because they expose the culture more, and they, they taught me things I didn't know about my own culture. So very excited to learn more things about it.
I would love to hear about the first day of school from a principal's perspective.
We had a fabulous first day.
All right, just wait, let's get your mic on, let's get your mic on. JJ's trying to look to see what you got going on. Of course, she's going to help, that's right. Awesome.
Always need help from a student.
That's right.
Good afternoon, my name is Mandy Lovkowitz. I'm the principal of Vaughn Middle School. I transferred here last summer, so last year was a little bit of a different year, a different year to transfer because everybody was on Zoom. So it is very exciting for me to be in the building this year with the addition of sixth grade 100% capacity. We have the sixth grade in the building 100% capacity. Our enrollment is up. Last year, we had an entirely new admin team, and we have so many exciting things happening in the building, including the new students with the IB program. We have added a design class that's required by IB and includes robotics and coding for all students unless they are in the new Eagle News Network. It's a new TV productions class with video equipment that was donated by the GSR, who's our community partner. We expanded our Spanish program so that we now have Spanish for native speakers, Spanish literacy class. It's the first for a middle school in WCSD, and this is all part of the IB. And we have to keep going, so many happy things at Vaughn. With our modified bell schedule, we've included an SEL class, which is part of the IB evaluation, the IB authorization that we have support SEL.
Will you just talk about IB, just in case we'll have community members and we have a couple of new board members?
We are an international baccalaureate middle years program. So IB NYPD is grade six through 10, so we're a partner with Worcester. So for our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students, it's all-inclusive. It's the whole building. So we have students taking an SEL class, which is part of IB. We've also expanded our math and ELA instruction because it's important to be able to teach the grade level standards and to accelerate learning and provide enrichment for those who are already at grade level. So we have just amazing things, and I can't tell you how excited, you know, exciting it was to be in the building yesterday and today, and to see the lines of cars with parents dropping off the kids. So exciting. So thank you.
Awesome. Very good, very good. Awesome, very good, very good. Anything else for our amazing, amazing team from Vaughn Middle School? All right. Oh, please, go ahead.
What was it like to see your friends? I mean, what was, how was that?
It was nice, I haven't seen them in a while. It was very nice, even though with the distance, we're still doing that, but it's very nice and kind that they let us go back to school again.
Awesome, just as a reminder for those who may not recall, our middle schools were in the hybrid last year, they're every other. So to get back and say, get back in the building, right? That's why you see your teachers, 100% capacity. That's what all of that is the difference between that last year and this year. So certainly not a perfect year going in this year, but still better because at least everybody's in.
It is good stuff.
Great place to start.
Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. And you should be so proud of your daughter, she did great. Thank you. Have a great year.
And next is area two, we have TMCC High School, principal David Kitchen and student Katie Avery.
All right. Welcome, welcome to you both. Okay, let me, let me, let me, I'm sorry, just let me, let me create a record. I said it once before, I will say it again, we will make room for clapping for our students. Okay, please, go, go right ahead. Please, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Katie Avery. I'm the leadership president at TMCC High School.
Awesome.
So, yeah, my first day at school, we did leadership. Yesterday, first class, I was so excited because all the years that I've been in leadership, it's my third year now, I haven't seen like a whole lot of kids get involved in leadership. I don't feel like we can get out, but like this time I walked in and it was a full entire room and I was so excited because last year, especially because of hybrid, there was like four other kids and now it's like completely full. And I was so excited to see everyone's faces and then to get out of my class and just like be able to walk with my friends for like the first time to like go to lunch and like hang out and like talk was like just the best thing ever. So I had an amazing first day.
Fantastic. Now, what was your, other than that, what was your favorite part about yesterday or today?
I think my favorite one was going to lunch. I loved it. It was like sitting down with my friends and like eating like the past year, if I like sat down for lunch, I was like completely by myself and I was like, I know I have friends, but it feels like I don't because I'm completely alone. But this year, I just sit at like a full table and I have everybody and it's like, I get to connect with people for the first time in an entire year and I never thought I'd miss it, but I missed it so much, I was so excited.
Well, we can't tell that you're excited at all. That's fantastic though, fantastic. Let's get a principal's perspective.
All right. I feel like being a principal is an awesome job that I love, but it's not everyday fun. And the first day of school yesterday was a fun day. It was just teaching, seeing kids have fun, seeing teachers have fun, being able to go into classrooms and see, get to know you activities and seeing kids just with smiles, like their eyes, you can see them smiling. But it was a fun day and I think to steal an analogy from one of our teachers, it's kind of like you go on a hike and you know at the end, the water is going to be awesome. But then once you actually get there and you haven't had water for several hours and you have that like ice cold bottle of water and it's like, oh, this is the best water I've ever had. That's what yesterday felt like for me. It was just like, wow, I forgot how much I need to be able to interact with the students and it just felt so good. So it was a good day.
That's awesome, principal Kitchen, thank you very much. Any, any, any kind of superintendent?
So tell us a little bit, so TMCC High School is actually a very unique program, right? Because you're on a college community, you're on a community college campus, which is really kind of cool. So what would be your favorite subject in high school right now?
In high school right now, math. Because our math teachers are so awesome. So I have been going to the high school math, but I also have been integrating into the college math and that's just so scary for a high school student to walk in knowing that you're the youngest and like you feel like everyone's staring at you and then you're like staring at the teacher and you're like, oh my God, they're speaking gibberish, I have no idea what's going on. And it's so nice to be able to like go back into the high school and say like, hello, Scott, my math teacher, I need a lot of help, I have no idea what's going on. And they were so understanding that like last year I was in math, but I hadn't really integrated into math and like now they're just so understanding, all the teachers are, but like especially my math teachers, they're just so helpful, it makes math enjoyable.
Awesome, everybody hear that? She enjoys math. Yes, for the record, for the record. That's awesome, that's awesome. Anybody, anything, anything else? Yes, yes, trustee Smith.
Hello, I think Katie, that you have so much poise and grace. I know that this can be an intimidating environment and your enthusiasm is just filling up the whole room. And I know TMZ High School is a really unique school and so I was wondering if you could share a little bit about why you chose TMZ High School for you?
Oh, I chose TMCC High School for so many reasons. I only went to public school for one year. I went to McQueen and it was awesome. I loved McQueen, but I love smaller schools even more. I love being able to like feel like I'm heard and seen in TMCC and especially the college credits are awesome because I feel like I get to integrate into a college system on a college campus with a lot more support than I would going into my freshman year of college next year. It's like moving away from home and having everything be completely different, that's such an insane transition and I feel like I'm being eased into it so much easier with TMCC. It's just like I get to do it, but everyone's on my side. I don't feel like I'm completely left out in like the deep end in the middle of a college where no one knows me and I know nobody else. I'm like, I have everything and I'm going to be completely okay and I've excelled so far, so I think I'm good.
I think it's working out well for you.
I think I'll give president Hilderson of TMCC a call and let her know that she has a new advertisement out there. You're amazing, you're going to do great.
I have one question for you. I have a nephew in Southern California who, of course, they had their COVID year, so it was hybrid, but this year his sophomore year, he's going into their version, I think I, when I visited school last year, I told you, he's, he's starting their version of TMCC High School. And in fact, by the way, my niece, who's his mom, when she, when her family, when she and her husband, when they were deciding what, what, what program and what's it look like, they actually looked at our program here and said, oh, that's such a great program. And so they looked for one down there. But what advice would you give me to tell him? Because he's, he's a sophomore, remember last year, hybrid, he was in regular high school, if you would, now he's going into that. What advice will you give me that I can share with him?
Always ask your teachers literally everything, like even if it's like a really stupid question because you will walk into those schools and the first thing you think is like, everyone's smarter than me, everyone knows what's going on and I got on here like completely messed up, like someone accidentally put me in here and everyone else knows what they're doing and I'm completely screwed. But like if you ask around, I can guarantee you, like everyone's with you. I literally asked someone, I turned to someone, I was like, I don't know what's going on. They said, no, me neither. And so we went and we asked the teacher and we were like, okay, everything makes sense and they expect you to not know what's going on. You're not supposed to know what's going on just yet, you know? So now I do know what's going on. So first thing you do is literally ask everybody, everyone's in the same boat as you. So just like ask every, and they're so excited to help you because that's why teachers are teachers, is like they want to help kids and that is school like TMZ where it's like, we're a smaller school, they get to like really be direct with the kids and like get to know them, like they know all the students ever. And it's like walking into an assembly and just like seeing everybody that you know is like really unheard of. So just like ask everybody everything.
I wrote that down, I was taking notes because I wanted, I am really going to call and tell him, ask everybody everything. And look, now, I might get your number so I can have him give you a call later and get a little, but we'll talk offline about that. Okay, well, thank you, okay, vice president Mendel.
This is probably for our principal, how many kids are in your class or class?
In the graduating class.
In the graduating class?
Ooh, I should know that number, it's an 80 something. We actually, we had some lower enrollment last year because students were struggling with the fact that the college was fully online, so we had some students return to their zoned high school. So our senior class this year is a little smaller than it's been historically, but we are packed in our, in our sophomore class in particular with new students coming in. So yeah, it's going to be, the school is going to be back at, right at 2:50, I think, next year, so.
2:50 for the whole, so how many, when my son went through this, he, he couldn't start before his fresh, his junior year. And he had a class of 98 and they had like a 99.9999% graduation. So is that about the numbers for the?
Yes, so we bring in 50 students in grade 10 and then another 50 in grade 11, so we'll graduate typically in the high 90s. Absolutely, yeah.
Well, fantastic, absolutely, you're right. Ask everybody everything, that's exactly what I wrote down and I'm going to share that with him. Thank you for the advice, have a wonderful year, I can tell you're ready.
I've been ready.
Yes.
I wanted to do this forever, I'm ready.
You're absolutely ready, thanks to you both.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, principal Kitchen, thank you so much.
Next, from area two, we have from Esther Bennett Elementary School, principal Gladys Diaz and student Cameron Elizabeth Reyes.
Welcome Cameron and principal Diaz.
It's Carmen.
Carmen, I'm sorry, Carmen.
Chicago came out, sorry.
Carmen, I'm sorry. Pull that mic down a little bit, Carmen, so we can get, yeah, there we are. All right, thank you for being here. Let's get your microphone on, all right. Go right ahead, tell us, how, 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 how do you feel being back in the school?
It feels amazing.
Okay, that, that pretty much wraps it up. But tell us what's amazing about it, why so?
Um, I was so excited to see my friends when I came back to school. And it was just great being back and having everyone like close, not digital. It, it, I feel like that was just the best part about it.
Fantastic, did you miss seeing your friends before?
Yeah.
Very good, how about your teachers?
Uh, I miss seeing my teachers too.
Awesome, what was your favorite part about either yesterday or today, about being back? What's your favorite part, other than seeing your friends?
I would say.
What did you like the most?
Maybe learning the new rules for it. I'd say learning the new rules for the year.
Okay. Fantastic, it's important to know the rules, it's very good, very good. How about the principal's perspective, principal Diaz?
Yes, so yesterday was just amazing, just like Carmen was sharing with us. It was wonderful, it was wonderful to see so many students, so many of our families actually walk in the building and be able to share with us, just, it was really what we called it yesterday as a staff at the end of the day, was this day of celebration. And it was just celebrating each other, celebrating our students that had come back from distance learning and be able to walk our hallways and be able to just, you know, I walked every classroom yesterday, made up, met all our students and it was just wonderful to be able to see them engaged in discussions and just be able to talk to each other, that was wonderful. Our theme this year is Here We Grow. And it really, it was, it's a, it's a theme that takes us in education back to our core or what, you know, what is true to our students, what's going to help our students. We decided to do that not on our own, so I decided to engage our community and we asked our community, anyone who wanted to be involved in what we're doing, to donate a plant. And you would ask, why a plant, right? Well, because the plant, given the right environment, is going to thrive, is going to grow, is going to beautify, you know, just our community. And so that is our students, really that is all about our students. And so, oh my goodness, we had such an overwhelming, a number of community members that donated, we had so many plants arriving, we had people calling us from different parts of town, you know, I have a plant. And it wasn't a plant that they were trying to give us because they weren't really caring for it anymore, it was plants that came with messages. They were plants that came with, this is how this plant grows best. It's really what we shared with our staff, with our teachers, this is really caring about this plant, just like we care for our students. And so we are so thankful for them because we realized how many of our members were behind in what we're doing and just wanting to be a part of that. And so in return, they wanted, you know, pictures of what we're doing because they feel like they want to be a part of it. And so that was wonderful to see and so our commitment to them is that we were going to care for those plants and love them and care for them because we know that's also a very important piece to helping our students thrive, is to be able to show them that love and that commitment. And so for that, we are grateful and our mission statement at Bennett is, you know, really it's, it, students are the heart of everything that we do and it truly is. And so we thank you for allowing us that opportunity to be back because we know what helps our students and that is those discussions and just like Carmen said, just being together is really what it's about.
Well, thank you, thank you so much, go ahead, superintendent McNeil.
Well, principal Diaz, you've been now at Bennett almost 10 years, how many years?
Yeah, well, I'm homegrown, so right, at Bennett, so I was a teacher there for quite some time, so for about 10 years. And then I became AP and then here we are.
Here we are.
Yes.
Well, I, I know every time you walk into Bennett, you just immediately feel the climate and culture there and it is so compassionate and so kind. And so Carmen, tell me, what is your favorite thing about being a Buffalo?
I would just say all the teachers, they're really nice there.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome, well, thank you for coming to share with us, telling us about your first couple of days, are you excited about the new year?
Yes, I'm very, I'm very excited.
You can tell, you can, you can very much tell, thank you for coming tonight, are your parents here?
Yes.
Listen, where's, where's? Well, thank you very much.
My mom and sister.
Mom and sister, mom and sister, thank you very much for being here, you should be very proud, she did good, huh?
Yes.
Yes, she did good, thank you so much.
So next from area three, we have principal Jake Chappin from Natchez Elementary School and students Nora Harry and Annabelle Lee.
All right. Wait, wait, we're going to get, get your microphone on, okay, go ahead.
Am I on?
Yep, you're on.
All right, so there's a million great things about working at Natchez, two of the very best are these girls here. I like to travel around with them, we never miss a chance to share a little bit of culture from our community. Right now, Nora is actually going to homeschool for a little bit, we're getting hit pretty hard with COVID out on the Pyramid Lake Pai reservation, so their family made the decision to homeschool for a little bit, but she's still a super important part of our community and a part of our cultural ambassador, so we definitely want to get her here to share as well and I will let them now introduce themselves.
Okay, ladies, who's going to go first? Let's get your microphone, okay.
Hi, my name's Annabelle Lee, I am in fifth grade, I go to Natchez Elementary. Our teacher is Ms. Wood, I really love our teacher, she's really nice. What we did over in school, which was yesterday, our first day of school, we went over our schedule that we were going to go through the year. We did art and we just did a spelling quiz, it was pretty simple for yesterday. And yeah. Yeah, it's ish eh, Annabelle Annabelle Lee. Ashi hint, basa chant, basa chant, tova hint, dashanali. Hello, everyone, my name is Annabelle Lee, I am 10 years old. My clans's are the Salt People and By the Water's Edge. My tribes are Pasquayaki, Navajo and adopted by the Pyramid Lake Pai tribe. I would just like to say thank you for everyone for coming out today and have a great rest of your evening, thank you.
Oh, awesome. Now, Annabelle, tell us a little bit, you're, you're so beautifully dressed, both of you are. So tell us a little bit about your outfit.
So I'm wearing a fancy dancer shawl, which presents mostly a butterfly and I'm just really glad I'm Native American.
All right, yeah, be, be proud, you should be glad you're Native American, be very proud of it, you're beautiful, beautiful representation.
Thank you.
Right, all right, the press is on, it's your turn.
Yat eh, Nora Sha'keah Harry Yinchia, kinta chitni nishle, nuu denne eh basa chit, dolteyana dashe chit, vallagana dashe net. Nuu Nora Sha'keah Harry Minon. Hello, everybody, my name is Nora Sha'keah Harry, I am nine years old, I am in fourth grade, I go to Natchez Elementary School and I live in Wadsworth, Nevada and I can't wait to go back to school.
All right. Now, now, tell us about what Now, now tell us about what you're wearing, that's beautiful as well.
So I am wearing a ribbon skirt, my grandma made it and then my mom made my beadwork. And then these, I'm not sure where I got them, but someone gave them to me and then, yeah.
All right, okay. I know you love talking about your school.
Right.
Tell us about the year, what are you looking forward to?
Absolutely, uh, well, I'll tell you, um, Natchez, we're a really small school, a really small community, and so we're, we're all really close, I mean, it's so hot here, I'm actually sweating out of my eyeballs listening to these girls, just super proud of them. So our first day of school is just like bringing the family back together. So we hadn't seen each other for a while, except for I, all my parent conferences I hold in Walmart over the summer and then now we're, we're all back at the same school and so it was fantastic, but really our goal is to make every day at Natchez fantastic, if it's not fantastic, we got to switch up what's going on and make sure it's a fantastic day every day, got to give the students a reason to come to school each and every day, so that's our goal.
Awesome, great.
Just really quick, so Principal Chapin, you are also this year going to help out supervise over at Gerlach Elementary.
Correct.
Gerlach School.
Schools, yes.
Thank you very, very much for doing that and you two are absolutely stunning, you are stunning. Don't ever forget that, all right? You guys are going to just do wonderful things and you're going to help Mr. Chapin out.
Absolutely, there's the secret.
Don't tell anybody, Mr. Chapin needs some help. Don't tell anybody.
Just smart enough to know to bring these two along with me, so I look all right.
There you go, that's the best decision you made all day, huh?
For sure.
Well, we so appreciate your being here, all of us, I see a trustee conference has a comment.
Thanks for being here, you guys are beautiful, those outfits, but I just wanted to know, I noticed you were speaking your language, at what age did you start, when you started your like, learning language?
I started speaking my Navajo language about a year or two ago, because it was really hard to speak, but I started learning my Paiute language a few years ago because I was with my mom more and my mom's mom is Navajo and my mom is Paiute.
Okay, awesome.
So you have learned two different languages, oh, that's pretty awesome.
That's very impressive, yeah, that's very impressive.
I'm working on one.
Right. How about you, Annabelle, what'd you, what'd you learn?
I knew a couple words when I was littler, but it was kind of hard to speak Navajo, because it's, they're long words and you have to like say it, you have to pronounce it kind of right and everything. But I learned probably like a year ago maybe.
Awesome, well, you're both doing very well, especially for, and the Navajo, just learning for a year, oh my, the other languages are really hard to learn and you're, you're showing the rest of us up. And it's, and it's really important for your culture to keep that, so that's fantastic, so proud of you for that, I bet your families are excited that you're learning the language, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. Okay, I think we're good, everybody, thank you so much, I know what to drive in from Natchez, I know that.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, we really appreciate it.
No, thank you, and, and thank you for coming, I know that you guys have, you're dealing with, with COVID the best way you can and I know you're staying home, so thanks to your parents for allowing you to come. Okay? Yes, thank you so much, all right, come on, one more time, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Awesome. Awesome.
So next from area four, from Billingshurst Middle School, we have Principal Jason Matic and student Mackenzie Nelson.
Mackenzie, you first, Jason, you first.
President, Superintendent, take it away.
All right.
You're the honored guest.
Yes, you are.
There we go.
Good afternoon, my name is Mackenzie Nelson, I am an eighth grader and I'm going to be talking about Billingshurst Middle School. Billingshurst has been so great these past two days, stuff has been so nice, student, staff has been so nice helping students and teachers are already making great connections with our students. Everyone is being so helpful and kind, things are running super smoothly and everyone is glad to be back full time, thank you.
Very, very good, Mackenzie, I had to ask you, what, what is your favorite part about being back at school?
Um, mine is probably about seeing all the friends, all the friends I haven't seen in forever, like, all the friends that were on a different day than me last year, I'm super excited to be back and see, and then seeing all my new teachers, I've been really excited to be back.
Very cool, very cool, let's get a principal perspective, Principal Jason, Principal Matic, sorry.
That's okay, President, Superintendent, thanks for having us. First-year Principal Jason Matic, Billingshurst Middle School, Big Horn Country. Super proud of the last two days and the teachers' effort that they've demonstrated and carrying on our mission statement, we're rolling out a new mission statement this year and we felt that the board was a very important stakeholder to our mission statement, so you all have, you're all part of us now, we are BDB. And President, you have one of our new mission statement T-shirts that says specifically that we are bold, dedicated big horns and our first part of our mission statement speaks to providing a welcoming, safe and respectful environment and so we parallel Dr. McNeil's message to the entire staff on Monday, which is, the academics will be there shortly, but we're coming out of a pandemic and we want everybody to feel welcome. And so what we've really focused on in Big Horn Country is that, so it has been smooth, thank you for recognizing that, I was very nervous over the weekend as a first-year principal going into Monday, but the staff from Kitchen to Custodians, to the teachers and of course the students have made it an absolute stunning start to a new year and the excitement and the vibe in our halls doesn't come from loud Mr. Matic, you all know can be loud, it's absolutely a direct sign from the students and they're just super excited to be in the building, all nine-hundred-and-eighty of them as of today, so. When, the biggest eye-opener, if you'll talk to my counselors and admin team, was lunch duty for our seventh and eighth graders on Monday, where last year it was a nice quiet hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred kids supervising to now six-hundred-and-fifty kids supervising, so you really quickly got a feel for it during lunchtime, didn't you?
The break is over, the break is over.
But I tell you what, it's rewarding and it sure is nice and that's the vibe that we want at Big Horn Country, so thanks for having us.
That's awesome, how do you feel going into, I know you've been there, but your first year as principal?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's just talk about that a little bit, how, how excited are you, what are you looking forward to the most?
Yeah, um, very excited, I'm looking forward to uh, maintaining high expectations is what we say, is setting those high expectations for our school, providing rigorous instruction and just loving on the babies, welcoming them back to the school and letting them know that this is their place to belong. The staff is, is what I need to give my shout out to and praise to, the teachers have done a phenomenal job, classrooms are full right now, but they've done an absolute excellent job making those kids feel welcome and so I'm just looking forward to seeing where this journey takes us this year, not only at Billingshurst, but in Washoe County, I think we're headed in a great direction, thanks to all of the board and all of our teachers and all of our leaders.
Well, we appreciate that, Principal Matic, we certainly, I think I speak for all of us, and we recognize that the most important work that happens in this district happens in the classroom.
That's right.
And so you guys in the buildings, you guys are, you're, you're, you're doing the heavy lifting, you're doing the things that really matter and so we appreciate you, we appreciate the students like Mackenzie, that go in excited, right, meeting your teachers and ready to learn and open yourselves up and, and really keep forward, letting people know this is, this, this, this is how school is, this is how we do it and Billingshurst has a, you know, you have a culture there, you know that, right, and keeping that going, so we just appreciate you guys.
We really appreciate you, appreciate you coming to take, take a little time with us, that's your first couple of days. I'm going to put her on the spot, but Mackenzie also belongs to two of our programs at our school, one is Think Kindness, she's a Think Kindness Ambassador and I'd love for her to tell you a little bit about that, but she's also part of our GEMS program, which Billingshurst is a beacon school for the GEMS model for our district, where a lot of the other middle schools are modeling after what we got going there, so can you talk to them about Think Kindness a little bit?
Um, yeah, so Think Kindness is like part of school leadership, we promote like Big Horn Attitude, like kind, kindness, really just around the school and we help with assemblies, we do fun challenges every like few weeks or months kind of thing and we just have a lot of fun and like, these past two days, we've helped, like, we've done sixth grade tours around the school, we've done a lot of fun games with them, like out in the halls and I know all the teachers have had, have had so much fun watching and all the students have had so much fun just participating and then this is the shirt for Think Kindness.
I can see that. Very cool, very.
We like to rep our swag at Billingshurst.
Nothing wrong with that, that's awesome, and I think it's probably was really helpful for the sixth graders, right, they're new, so they needed you guys to help them out.
Yeah, and then the GEMS program is our GT gifted program where we also have integrated what we call grit students, where we're looking at academically advanced students and those that are showing up ready to work every day and really raising the rigor bar for them and so she's been a part of that all three years and she's in her eighth grade year, ready to get herself prepared for high school. And she did not bring a parent, but a shout out, she brought her Think Kindness teacher today, who's helping with transportation, because Mackenzie's mom actually works for the school district, so she was tied up at her building, so, yes, so.
What it means to what teachers do, that's what teachers do.
That's what we do at Billingshurst, we're all family and, and that's how we treat our kiddos, so thank you again for your time today, guys.
Thank you so much, have a great year, Mackenzie, I know you will, I already know you, I already know.
Thank you.
Next, from area five, we have Principal Daniel Kirk from Lemon Valley with students Drake, sorry, Drake Webster and Riley Williams.
All right, you're, you're going to go first, boys, how do you want to do it?
Let's have the students start first.
Okay, who's going first, guys? Give us your name.
Um, my name's Drake Webster and I'm a fourth grade student at Lemon Valley Elementary School. I liked about the first day, I liked meeting new friends and seeing my old friends and it's also cool to have a class in every building now and my teacher also played fun games to help us get to know each other. And I'm also excited about eating in the cafeteria again this year.
All right. That's awesome, Drake, Drake, what's, what's your favorite food in the cafeteria, Drake?
Burritos.
Oh, burritos, all right, all right, I love them too, awesome. Thank you so much, Riley, right?
My name is Riley Williams and I'm a fourth grade student in Lemon Valley Elementary. Um, my teacher is very nice and she helped us know each other by playing some fun games and doing some activities. And I'm excited about eating in the cafeteria too, because we all get to see each other again and we got to meet new friends, see our old friends and, yeah, that's it.
Okay, all right. That sounds like a very exciting year.
It is.
Yeah, no, I can tell. So what's your favorite food to eat in the cafeteria?
Burrito.
Oh, burrito, okay, that's, all right. Yeah, anybody get by Lemon Valley, you know, at lunchtime, you know what to get. Fantastic, sir.
Thank you, President and Dr. McNeil, our Lemon Valley community is a very close family, we even brought my son, who's a first grader at Lemon Valley, we've got Ms. Fenlessen's son, we are such a close community and family. We could not do this without our incredible staff that's at Lemon Valley that is very close and collaborative and just incredible to work with. Last year, they really pulled it together and did amazing things at Lemon Valley that I am just so proud to be their leader and part of their school community and it's just incredible to hear from these boys on, on how excited they are to be at school and be in person and get to experience the chaos of the lunchroom, for sure. And I totally feel the Billingshurst Middle School principals kind of feelings regarding that, you know, Lemon Valley is pretty high numbers this year, so we're running at six-hundred-and-twenty-nine students without our pre-K, so we still are waiting for our pre-K to come and finish some enrollment in our kindergarten, but it's really nice to see the kids excited to be there, back in the lunchroom, playing outside together and just really great learning going on at Lemon Valley. So super proud of the students and exceptionally proud of my staff and my team that I get to work with every day.
Well, thank you, thank you for taking the time and I'll ask you, not about the cafeteria.
Yes.
Right, because you already know it's burritos.
It's burritos.
As well established.
Yesterday was pizza.
Ooh.
Fifth graders got a special treat, because we had to kind of punt a little bit halfway through lunch, but it was good, it worked out and they had, fifth graders got to have pizzas.
Yeah, I heard about some of those, those food punting, but that's a good thing.
Yes, that's what we do, right?
Well, that's right, you guys figured it out, um, which, which are, what's the thing you're looking most forward to this year?
Um, our PLCs are really strong at Lemon Valley.
Explain that to people that may not know what that is.
So our professional learning communities, where our teachers get together and backwards plan, really align all of their work to the grade level standards and really determining where we want our students to be at the end of each unit or topic and really making adjustments and changes to their instruction to support their students in really powerful ways. Lemon Valley is in a really strong place with our professional learning communities and doing amazing work with all of that. Also, it was really exciting yesterday on day one, seeing the FAS science curriculum happening right in day one, doing experiments, hands-on learning, it was really incredible, so those are some things that I'm really looking forward to this school year, to make those gains and new learning experiences for our students.
That's awesome, I'm so glad you liked the FAS, this is the new science curriculum that's finally, well, way overdue.
Well overdue, yes, absolutely.
But it sounds like you've jumped right in, so that's awesome.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, boys, thank you so much for coming to spend some time with us, Superintendent McNeil?
Absolutely, well, I just want to, you know, tag on to what Principal Kirk said, I had a great visit there yesterday with you and you guys actually, you know, you ran out of food, scrambled a little round, you guys went out to Little Caesar's, little plug for Little Caesar's, you got the fifth grade pizza, it was awesome.
Yep.
And that's what principals do and your staff does and you know what, you all are going to have a tremendous year at Lemon Valley, it's going to be a great, great year, so thank you so very, very much for being here today and telling us about that. And I'll come out and eat burritos with you.
Yeah, no kidding.
We, they also have parents here too.
Oh, parents, we're the parents. All right, thank you so much, thank you so much for bringing them here, you did great, great young men, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us present, I hope that touched your heart and brought you joy, so thank you so much.
Oh, it did, thank you. And again, thank you to the parents for, for bringing your young ones out. This reminds us of why we do what we do, reminds us of the why. Absolutely. All right. Okay, we're going to go on to our next agenda item, this is about new principals, new principals, Agenda Item four point zero two. This is presentation and discussion, presentation, I'm sorry, and introduction of new principals in the Washoe County School District, I see them beginning to march in, again, we certainly recognize that the single most important thing that we do here in the school district happens in the building, so thank you so much for those of you keeping things organized and running and keeping people moving forward and keeping students engaged and excited like these students we just met, it all happens because of the work that you do, so please welcome, come on in. All right, Superintendent McNeil's going to start us off and then we'll go to Ann Marie.
Thank you very much, President Taylor and members of the board, so this is a very special time, we weren't able to do that this, this time last year and one of the most important jobs that I have as a superintendent is to make sure we have the right people in our buildings to do the good work of what they do every single day and what you're seeing right here is a direct example of that, these are superb principals leading our schools in our school district. And so I will turn it over to Ann Marie Dixon, Area Superintendent for Area One.
Thank you very much, good evening, President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, members of the board, I am happy to introduce the amazing principals for Area One, we're going to start with Mr. Josh Reddick, he is back to our district from out of, out of town, but first year at Pine Middle School, welcome Josh. In her second year at Incline Middle School, Ms. Carrie Michael.
Yes, thank you.
Year two at Vaughn Middle School, Ms. Mandy Lobkowitz. First year principal at Booth Elementary School, Mr. Joe Pizarro. Second year at Dodson Elementary School, Ms. Shannon Ramachati. Second year at Hidden Valley Elementary School, Ms. Amy Hicks. And second year at Veterans STEM Academy, Ms. Monique Madrid. All right, and I'm going to turn it over to the amazing Gina Curtis, Area Two.
All right, thank you so much to the principal, thank you. All right. Thank you so much to the principal. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for what you're gonna be getting into this year. Here we go.
Good evening. Nice to see everyone in person.
All right, good evening. If we can, can we do all these and we'll do all our applause at the end so we can kind of keep that?
Yes, we're gonna make it short and sweet because Area Two is short and sweet. Nice to see all of you this evening. We have three principals that are new to Area Two, actually David Kitchen from TMCC. He was a principal last year, but he wasn't introduced. And we have two new principals who were hired last week, so they jumped right in and met their staff the same day they started. So, I'm very proud of them. We have Anne Bray at Sepulveda Elementary School and Victor Sherbandi at Hall Elementary School.
All right, just get all three. We'll get all them at once. Thank you so much. Thank you for the two new ones. Victor's sort of new, right, for jumping right in and the train was moving and he jumped on anyway, so.
He sure did. All right, thank you so much. And now I'd like to pass it on to Area Three, Dr. Mike Poe. Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right. All right, Mike. Same thing. We'll have them all come. We'll do all our applause at the end, problem? Thank you.
Well, good evening, Dr. McNeil, President Taylor, Board of Trustees. I have three wonderful new principals in Area Three. So, Area Three principals, can you please stand up?
All right.
All right. So, in Area Three for our new principals, down on the end, we have Mr. Michael Bradley. He joins us as a veteran principal from Minneapolis this year for Washoe Inspire Academy. And then in the middle there, we have, I guess you could consider her in year one and a half at Roy Gom Elementary School. She started in the middle of last year, so Barbara Barker. And then here on the end, Mr. Chapin, who we just saw here. He is a second year at Natchez Elementary School. He joined us, a longstanding community member out in the Natchez area, coming from Pyramid Lake High School. So, he's a second year in Natchez Elementary School. And then this year also doing double duty with helping us out at the Gerlock K-12 School Principal at both schools this year. So, there's the Area Three principals. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And I'm going to turn it over to Area Four and Lauren Ford.
Okay. Area Four, All For Learning. Here comes my team.
Come on, Sharon.
All right, same thing, Lauren. We'll do our applause all at the end, problem. Thank you, ma'am.
And now, just kidding. And for Area Four, starting right over here, I have Jason Maddock, first year principal at Billingshurst Middle School. I have Conway, principal at Mitchell Elementary School. Rhonda Turnipseed is in her second year at Clayton Middle School. I have Heather Curtis, first year at Lincoln Park. And Chad Hicks has joined us again for coming back to us via Carson, and he is at Rizley Elementary School. Yay.
All right. All right. Thank you so much, everything. Chad, you saw the light and came back. Good to have you, man.
And now I'll introduce Ms. Jen Van Tress for Area Five.
Good afternoon, Superintendent McNeil, President Taylor, and Board. I would like to introduce to you, now listen, the 2020, 2021 new principals. They are already in their second year, but since we didn't get to do this last year, we're, I'm lucky enough to bring them to you today. So, at Pacolo, we have Mr. Matt Burek, who's doing a fabulous job. We've already had Mr. Dan Kirk with Lemon Valley. We have Jackie Maloney, from Stead Elementary, and Courtney Seago over at Silver Lake. So, we're very excited. They are veteran principals now, so they have it all down pat. If you have any questions, they can answer the questions now. So, thanks, you guys.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming back for year two and year whatever for Matt. You know, that's a repeat for him.
Oh, I know. It's a, yes, just like Chad. See, we take, they always come back.
They come back. And we welcome them.
We do.
We welcome them.
Because it's amazing.
Yes.
Thanks.
All right, so those are all of our new principals. All right, well, thank you very much to our wonderful area superintendents. Let's give one more just round of applause to the principals. These are not, they're not business items. They're introductions. And I think it's just a polite thing to do and especially if we talk about schools and the important work that they do there in the school. So, thank you, everybody, and thank you for all that came after the end of a long day and then the beginning of the school year. They're crazy busy, but they, some of them might even be going back to the office. I hope not. I hope they can go home, at least work from home. And at least work from home. So, thank you so much. Okay, so now we'll go down to Agenda Item. We did the task force. Okay, 4.04. This is discussion and possible action to review and provide direction on current COVID-19 mitigation measures. These are measures in effect for the 2122 school year, including facilities, management, transportation, staff and student exclusions, and face coverings for all district facilities and school sites based upon current federal, state, and local guidance. This is for possible action. So, after our presentation, we'll be happy to hear public comment. I know some of you may be here to make public comment. We'll be happy to hear it at that time. We're gonna turn it over. Dr. McNeil, you're gonna start us off and then you can introduce the staff that will be assisting.
Thank you very much, President Taylor, members of the board. So, I'll go ahead and kick this off and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Paula Mark, our Chief Strategies Officer, as well as Deputy Superintendent Byersdorf, who will walk through the presentation and then as needed, if additional staff is needed. So, JJ, would you advance the slide one for me? Thank you. So, just as a reminder, when we approved, you all approved the Response to Recovery Strategic Plan. These were the guiding principles that we hold our schools to as far as what we believe is the foundation of opening up our schools. So, we'll go to the next slide. So, back on July 27th, the Board of Trustees directed myself to adhere to Emergency Directive 047. And as you all remember at that board meeting, it was at that board meeting during the actual board meeting that Emergency Directive 04 came, 48 came out. So, we'll be speaking a little bit about that today as well, too. And then the board also approved, that's the reason why you have this agenda item on here today, for a standing item. So, that agenda item will roll from board meeting to board meeting as we move forward throughout the year. And then back on May 25th, the staff recommendations for opening of our schools, which we did yesterday. It was wonderful to include full in person. So, we don't have a hybrid anymore and North Star is our online school, which was the decision of the board back on January 26, 2021. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. La Marco.
Thank you very much, President Taylor, Dr. McNeil, members of the board. For the record, Paula Mark, our Chief Strategies Officer. So, Directive 48, as Dr. McNeil mentioned, was, I think finalized this past Wednesday. It may have been Thursday or guidance came out on Thursday. It was passed Wednesday night. It was essentially helped clarify some of what was in 047, which was passed during the last board meeting. It includes a number of things, but among those are face coverings and other mitigation strategies for K-12 education. Face coverings are required in county, school district, charter schools, and private school settings in counties with a population of 100,000 or greater. This applies to all K-12 students. So, this kind of corrected what previously had been an exemption for students that were nine and younger. Moving on, in all school settings, all school staff must wear face coverings while inside school buildings regardless of vaccination status. Unless expressly granted an exemption, all students and all school staff must wear face coverings on school buses. That's a federal requirement, not just a state requirement. Parents, vendors, volunteers, visitors, and guests who are unable to or unwilling to wear face coverings under any circumstance or exemption should not be allowed on school buses or inside school buildings. Continuing with this, students who are medically fragile, as documented per an existing individualized education plan or an IEP or a Health Related 504 Plan, or students or staff who can produce documentation from a qualified Nevada licensed medical professional are exempt from wearing the face mask. They are expected to wear a face shield as opposed to the face mask in those particular instances. So, we wanted to share with you a little bit of information just for some context around the community. I'm sure you've all been watching this, but we do want to share with the public. So, the COVID meter, the TMRPA COVID meter, which we've shared with you for the last, I think, since last September on a regular basis, it's in the very high region. It's in the red region. The score, and I'll show you that in a moment, is at a 10.0 today. It's been at a 10 for several days running now. It was at a nine and an eight just before that. So, the meter doesn't just go up and down every day. It has to stay for a period of time. If we were to see it tick down, it may take a few days before it was below the very high region. We have updated our dashboard. However, as you know, we had those beautiful presentations from our students and principals. We just started yesterday back into school. So, we don't have school-specific information on the dashboard, which I think was posted yesterday. We do, we did post the community-wide school age children data. That applies to all children in the community, not just Washoe County School District students. These numbers are much higher than they were the last time we shared this with you. But I did want to draw your attention to the kind of top bar. That is the 10.0 score. That should be a red, not a yellow coloring under the meter, but we just showed you that. Also, our average daily cases per 100,000 is at 30.59. This is a significant increase from where it was last time we shared this data. And our test positivity rate is at 15.4%. As you know, our state has kind of set a standard at 8%. However, the World Health Organization and CDC, they put it at 5%. That's what we're really striving for. I wanted to bring this graph back to you just again for some context. This is community-wide data. It's not Washoe County School District students, but it is all students within the community as well as people that are older than our student population. They're represented in the blue bar. The orange bar are high school age students. I believe the yellow bar is our youngest population and kind of that white bar in between is our, sort of our upper elementary age population through middle school. The point of bringing this to you is we are experiencing a surge. I mean, I know we all know that. But the rates, what's shown is the rate. The rates are higher now than since the third week in January. So, we have definitely seen an uptick. We're back in school. We have all kids in. We're hoping that the mitigation strategies will help stem that tide. Increased vaccinations hopefully will stem that tide. But unfortunately, as we can see from the slide, it's been steadily increasing over the last several weeks.
So, Deborah Byersdorf wanted to bring an update on North Star enrollment. And when this slide was submitted last week, there was approximately 870 students that were enrolled in North Star Online School. Remember, that is our only distance learning program. As of yesterday, there's approximately 950 students that have been enrolled. So, we wanted to give you an update on that.
Apologies. We continue to work with the Washoe County Health District. The Washoe County Health District is responsible for contact tracing. But of course, when we're contact tracing within our schools, principals are heavily involved. Other staff are heavily involved. Exclusions are a measure to help keep our schools open, help try and keep kids and staff safe. There are different illnesses. That's the second bullet's really getting at. We don't just exclude for COVID. There are some other illnesses that can require exclusions. Washoe County Health District directs that. Durations of exclusion for COVID are determined by the Washoe County Health District. So, to simplify a bit, and Jennifer Crane, our chief nurse, is here in case there are some follow-up questions. She'd probably be best able to answer those. In terms of exclusions, if a staff member or a student is in a close contact situation, but we are able to verify their vaccination status and they are not showing any symptoms, then they do not have to quarantine. But students who are unvaccinated do have to quarantine, and that's the 10-day quarantine that's from CDC guidance and Washoe County Health District is currently requiring.
So, if a student were to be quarantined or excluded from attending school, our schools, and this is a slide we showed to you at the last meeting, schools will work closely with the families of those students, of that student, to provide continuity of education. And synchronous, and it can take place via synchronous or asynchronous learning. And just to make sure that folks understand what we mean by that. So, synchronous learning is real-time learning. That would be a teacher maybe at the front of the classroom, working with students in the classroom. That's synchronous learning. And it could mean a student that's zooming into the classroom or coming in through Teams, which is a program that our district uses. So, real-time, it's happening right there, instruction. Asynchronous, examples of that would be maybe a teacher who has videoed a math lesson or hard copies of materials that a family might come pick up, or working with and/or working with that student when they return to school. So, asynchronous learning, it's not happening in real time, but still continuity of education is happening. Again, our schools will be able to and are encouraged to check out devices and connectivity hotspots to families that may need, may need those tools. And then also to really want to emphasize here, our schools are working very, very hard to keep detailed seating charts. Quick story about that. I was at Mitchell Elementary. You met our new principal earlier in the meeting. And I got there just at lunchtime and kids were being assigned to certain seats so that if we do have to do contact tracing, if there is a positive in the school, we know who was near that student, for example, at lunchtime.
So, just a quick segue there. So, Ms. Crane, if she was up here, what she would tell us is we have to have a seating chart of where you're seated right now. All of our professional development, virtually anything we do, and sometimes that's hard to do in advance. So, we're encouraging people to create charts as a meeting begins to take, you know, fold, take pictures. And that is so that we don't exclude the whole group if we're able to narrow it down to those that are just in close contact. It was great hearing from the students earlier. It's really exciting to hear how they're seeing their friends, all the smiles. We know how important school is, clearly academically, but to their social, emotional wellness. We also know how important activities and athletics are to students. We want them to become part of the greater, you know, school community. And so, we're really happy to know that hopefully we will have full slate of activities and athletics available to kids. We do have to bring to your attention, and I think you already are aware of this, that within Directive 048, there are a couple of sections that apply specifically to activities and to athletics. Section Six, and I'm just gonna summarize, basically is saying that for any activity, athletics or otherwise, such as a band activity, a performing arts activity, if the folks that are involved in that activity were to cross over county lines, they must be tested within the week prior to the event taking place. That applies to...
Sorry, will you say that one more time? I'm sorry. Dr. La Marco, would you mind going through that one more time, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, those that are involved in activities that take place in a different county. So, if they're coming from Washoe County and they're going to Lyon County, or they're coming from Washoe and they're going over to Truckee, they have to be tested within the week prior to the event taking place. And if they were to be involved in multiple events over multiple weeks, they've got to be tested once per week.
So, that, if I made, so that, just on that piece, and thanks, pardon me for the interruption. So, if a student Angie is a student in Washoe and is going to Carson for a student body officer meeting or track meet or whatever the case may be, I need to test here in Washoe a week before that track meet on Wednesday or whatever. Is that kind of where?
Yes, as long as Angie, and that's an important clarification, so I'm glad you actually pushed me on this, is unvaccinated.
Okay. Okay, so there's the difference there. Okay, but if Angie is vaccinated, Angie doesn't have to test.
She does not have to test. We have to be able to verify that, just as with the exclusions that I talked about a few minutes ago. And we do have access to vaccination records that enable us to do that quite efficiently. Now, you need to know that this applies to students, but also to all staff. Anyone, any of... Anyone, and a volunteer, anyone involved with the activity that's going out of county would have to meet this testing requirement if they're unvaccinated.
So that means if someone chooses not to get vaccinated, which is, they can still participate, right? Because that's the only thing, you don't want, so that someone doesn't get, they don't have, they aren't vaccinated, they don't get, they don't get to play, or attend the meeting or conference, or whatever, they have to do the testing protocol?
Right.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay.
So with athletics-
I'm sorry, Dr. Nicolet, I think you wanted to-
Thank you, yeah, thank you for that clarification. So the going out of county includes if Lyon students are coming to Washoe County, the same reciprocity there?
That's correct. In fact, they have to meet our requirements. So if they're coming here and we have particular requirements, such as face masks for spectators, they have to adhere to the requirements within the county that's hosting the event. But yes, there's reciprocity.
Thank you, that's a good question, too, I think.
So it's pretty much the same for athletics. However, with close contact, high-contact sports, their directive, section 7, requires that testing occur for unvaccinated athletes weekly. And this is regardless of whether we're leaving the county. So this applies to, if Hug High School is playing against McQueen High School, the unvaccinated students that are on those respective teams have to get tested. And we are working feverishly with the State Department of Education through some grant funding, in order to stand up the testing that will be, needed to be in place for students. That will also be open to faculty as well, employees who also need that testing.
So coaches and someone, if it's a football game between Hug and McQueen, as you said, the coaches on that team would follow the same protocol?
That's right. That's right. And we are trying to create it so that we have testing available at every comprehensive high school. It's a significant sort of undertaking, but we are working very hard to get this accomplished with, with, I don't want to say any luck, because I don't like to rely on luck. With incredible hard work, it is possible we'll be up early next week with this testing. And we are dependent, to an extent, on our state partners and our private partners who would be providing that testing. The Directive 7 also required that the NIAA create its own guidance document-
You mean section 7, not Directive 7?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Section 7 of Directive 048 requires the NIA to create its own sort of process for testing, its requirements regarding testing. I think there's some requirements regarding face coverings, and they're in the process of providing that, that guidance to us now, and we're in compliance. I would share that, that in addition to Directive 048, we did receive guidance from Department of Health and Human Services, which sort of fleshes out the directives. It's very restrictive. And so we are doing everything we can to adhere to all the state guidance around what is required so that we can continue with athletics. I'm personally very worried, because we are in the red region as a school district. And so what that means is the spread of the disease is very high.
Good evening again, Michelle Anderson, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer. As you can see, obviously, these directives are pretty comprehensive, and so we wanted to make sure that we provided accurate information to our families and to our community. So if you go to washoeschools.net/covid19, we have all of our COVID information there. You can also access that from the front page, where you can see our back-to-school information. And then we did a direct link to the Governor's Directive, so people can read for themselves where that is and what we are following by the letter. We sent out the information on, in our family newsletter, and then, as we mentioned earlier, the directive came out on August the 4th, and we made sure that evening that our families and our staff members received that information that night, and made sure that that went out immediately. Sharing the information again on social media, and then working with our media partners again to get the information out.
Thank you.
And so, as you all have seen, this is my recommendation to the board. I will always bring forth a recommendation, and it's obviously to follow the Governor's Directive of 048. As Dr. Lamarcus has stated, there is a severe high transmission, and I sent you all today the Nevada Health Response, and Washoe County still remains in very high transmission rates for COVID-19, as well as 13 of Nevada's 17 counties are now currently deemed as having substantial or high transmission. As you all know, our main objective for this year is to keep kids in person in school. And so having these mitigation efforts is a huge effort on staff's part, but it is for all the right reasons, and to keep our staff and our students safe. So with that, I will turn it over to President Taylor.
Thank you to the staff, all of you, and just stay close by. And I know our new head nurse now, right after, oh, there she is hanging over, okay, there you are, okay. You stepped into the fire, right into this, but thank you so much for, just for being here for questions that, that the trustees may have. I see a couple of lights, I see, I saw Trustee Smith first, and then Vice President Minneto, and I see you doing this, Dr. Nicolet, and my head is up, I'm looking for you too, Trustee Church, in case anyone has a lot of discussion. We'll have some discussion on this, and then I know there's plenty of public comment, I don't want to make people wait, so I want to make sure we get to public comment as well. Okay, so let's go ahead and start, Trustee Smith.
Thank you so much, President Taylor. Thank you so much for today's presentation. I was wondering if one of you could define how we consider close, close contact? What kind of feet range is that? What does that look like?
So close contact is being within six feet of a person who's positive for the virus for a cumulative period of 15 minutes in a day. So it doesn't, so what that means is, is I don't need to be sitting next, well, if I'm sick and Debbie's next to me, she doesn't have to be with me for 15 minutes, but if we had, straight, but if we had several interactions throughout the day that added up to 15 minutes, or she was exposed to multiple people, but each time it was three minutes and there were five of them, then that would constitute a close contact. Face masks do not change that. So face masks are designed to prevent me from spreading the virus to you. The primary-
Please, 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 no yell, please, no yelling out, please. Please, we'll have plenty of time, hang on, Dr. Minneto, please, we will have plenty of time for public comment, but please do not yell out, because I'm going to have to ask you to leave, and we don't want that. This is a really important conversation, and we want you to be a part of it. So please maintain some decorum, when we can have a business meeting, you'll absolutely have an opportunity to share your thoughts, absolutely, I promise. Please.
Let me suffice it to say that although face masks are required, they do not change close contact status.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Lamarcus, and then Vice President Minneto, and then Dr. Nicolet.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of questions. So the COVID that we're in, the very high, is it COVID big general, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, or is it just the original? I don't know why I'm-
Are you talking about the variant? Is that what you're trying to get to, please? Can that? Will that be?
I think Ms. Crane would be best to answer that.
And let's get a, let's get a microphone on and get you right into the fire. So, give us just the name for the record.
My name is Jennifer Crane, I'm Director of Student Health Services. At this point in time, the tests that are being done, the first test is done, it's for the regular COVID. Then it's sent to the state lab, and it is then decided at the state lab if, what variant it is.
But please, if, please, if you speak out again, I'm going to have to ask you to leave, please, please, we can absolutely, absolutely want to hear your public comments, but not in yelling out, Mary, this is a business meeting. Please, thank you very much. I know it's difficult, but please, thank you.
So what will happen is that if the person tests positive first, it'll be that they have COVID. Then when it's sent for further testing, then they determine if it is the variant or not. So at this time, I think it's a mix of both.
Interesting.
Okay, thank you very much, Trustee. You said you had several questions?
And the people, some of them have already been vaccinated that are getting this, is that true?
That is correct.
Okay. And I've heard, you know, you hear a lot of things, that people who have been vaccinated can spread it, too.
Correct.
Okay. And, so, and then I've heard that the test tests all kinds of flus and things. I don't know. Or is it specific for, is it specific for-
Okay, okay, one more time, and I'm going to have to ask you to leave. I'm sorry, I don't want to, but I'm going to have to ask you to leave one more time. Thank you.
Is it specifically for COVID, or do we know that?
So the test that the health department uses, and is, does test for the virus.
Okay.
So there are tests out there that cannot distinguish between COVID and the flu, and as of, and they were given emergency use. And as of December 31st of this year, those tests are no longer being able to be used for emergency use. So the test will become even more narrowed down to COVID.
Did that answer your question, Trustee Minneto? Okay, no, no, please, go ahead, because this is-
And I know that in the midst of all this, all the HIPAA laws seem to be kind of thrown out the window, and all with an okay somehow. But when we are testing kids, we get an okay from the parents? I mean, don't they have to sign that off?
The majority of the time, if a parent, if we receive a test result, the parent is sending it to us.
Okay.
Or we've asked them for it.
All right, so they know, yeah, they have to know.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think those, and we want, we want plenty of times-
May I clarify?
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Were you asking about testing for COVID for the athletes?
Microphone, microphone, sorry.
Or choirs, or bands that go to all-state, or whatever?
Yes, a parent would have to provide permission for that testing to occur, but we are informing all parents that if their child is unvaccinated and they would like them to participate, they do have to receive these weekly tests.
Okay, I've asked counsel just, could you ask the question about HIPAA? And if that question's come up, and the rules around sharing information, so I've asked counsel to weigh in on that.
Yeah, so, I don't, I'm not sure if this specifically answered your question, so if it doesn't, let me know, but Paul and I have been working on this recently, and we- Paul and I have been working on this recently, and we have determined by looking at the statute that we are entitled to see vaccination status, and that's not a HIPAA law issue. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, but that's what I thought you were referring to. So that's not a HIPAA issue.
Okay. All right, and we may come back around, so, okay, because this is, this is going to be quite a conversation, and that's okay. Dr. Nicolet?
I wasn't going to ask this, but so HIPAA, in essence, is really for the medical field. Does it apply to schools?
HIPAA is a, HIPAA is a, it's a medical law.
It is, for confidential information. Does it go across the board and apply to our students in our schools?
Hold on, hold on. So from a legal perspective, there are exceptions to HIPAA, it just depends on the circumstances. One such is the statute that we've been dealing with and looking at regarding vaccinations. So it's not a bright-line answer. I can't say yes, and I can't say no. I can say sometimes.
Okay.
It just depends on the circumstance.
Okay.
And, and, I mean, we could do this all night, you can give me one, and I can-
Sure, sure, sure.
You know, but I don't think it's your intent.
No.
The point is, is we just have to look at it as a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
I would say this, if I may, just to jump in on that. In terms of my understanding, according to what Dr. Lamarcus said, is that because the parents are involved in their students' testing, or in having gotten, having gotten their child vaccinated and sharing that information, then it is parental consent, because they have to actively be involved in saying, this is what's required for your student to participate and so on. Am I, did I repeat what you said correctly?
Yes, but let me clarify. So parents are involved in permitting their child to be tested, but right now, athletic directors for schools are providing rosters of students. That information, the school nurse, clinical aides only, have access to what's called Web IZ, web immunization. If someone has been immunized in Nevada, that record is part of Web IZ, unless a parent has actively opted out of that, which is not regular. Our nurses regularly, there are vaccination requirements to attend school in the school district, there are some exemptions that apply. But, so our nurses regularly access Web IZ to validate those records. COVID now, under this directive, is a required test under these circumstances, they have the authority to check that status. So then the school will contact a family and indicate to them, based on the records we have, your child is unvaccinated, and because of these rules, will have to test weekly in order to play. The parent at that point in time, let's say that they had their child vaccinated in California, it's just not Web IZ, they might be able to provide documentation that would demonstrate that the child is in fact vaccinated. But if the child has not been vaccinated, they would have that opportunity then to opt their child out, or allow their child to be tested in order for them to continue to participate.
Wow.
Okay, Dr. Nicolet?
Thank you. It just gets, I guess, deeper and more complicated every day, thank you for that. So there is a thought out there that children are not affected by COVID, and I actually had someone refer to CDC as stating that. Is that true?
That's not true. Children are affected, and they're seeing children, the number of cases of children going up.
Yes. Thank you. So the COVID testing for our athletes, or musicians, or whatever, I have to say that a weekly test, is there any, excuse me, is there any side effect to the solution that is put in the nose on a weekly basis? I'm just telling you, as a mom and a grandma, that worries me a little bit. Do we, any studies on that?
I'm not aware of any studies, but what I'm aware of is that it's a swab, and the swab is, is not chemically treated. It is put in, if it's a rapid test, it is put in, and then the swab, the solution is put on the swab.
After that?
After that.
Thank you. Okay, I'm glad I'm asking these questions. Sometimes you, I feel like I should know this stuff, but I don't. And so about the contact tracing, I'm looking at our friends in the audience, and, I'm opening up a can of worms, I'm sorry, Dr. Lamarcus. No, we, yeah, right, you're used to these worms. So we've got these colleagues and, you know, friends in the audience, sitting close together, and so contact tracing for our, our public that comes to share with us, do we have any thoughts about that in the event?
Dr. Lamarcus, I think it looks like you want to-
In reality, we would try to figure out who all the people in the audience are, and where they were sitting, but they are moving and leaving, so trying to determine those people, or how long they were there, would be hard. It's easier to look at all of you sitting up there and make a determination if you were close contacts or not, but when you have people moving in and out all the time, it's very hard.
Thank you.
The health district would also contact individuals, ask them who they've been with, who they were sitting with. They would then try to contact those individuals, they would try to do the best that they can, based on people sharing honestly, who's been in a setting in which they may have been a close contact. It's a really important question, because, because of safety issues, if you can't isolate it, then you're going to tend to exclude more conservatively, meaning more people.
I don't know if we should use the word conservative. That was a joke, I hope we're all laughing.
And the cam's been open for a year and a half.
For a long time, right, thank you. And I just want to say, I appreciate your expertise, and this is a moving target, and thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Nicolet. See, Trustee Rodriguez?
I appreciate what you guys are doing, I know there's, there's no easy answer to all this stuff, but I know we're trying to keep schools open, we're trying to keep things 100%, we're trying to return to some sort of normacy, also, you know, and we do have our directives, but with that being said, I know like with the face shields, a couple weeks ago, we kind of agreed that- that didn't necessarily need to provide medical documentation. We kind of trusted the parents that if a student needs to be wearing a face shield, that's where we're trusting the parents in that case. I believe that's what we agreed to a couple of weeks ago. And also trying to allow kids to play playground and sports and things like that. So are children, you know, K through 5, are they needing to be tested as well? Or is there, you know, I'm also hearing from one of the students that there was social distancing in, in the classrooms and I thought that was something that wasn't needed.
What, it's a very good question and one that confounds me in many ways. We are encouraging social distancing. We're encouraging the use of all mitigation strategies as often and as possible. Right now, the directives is written, allow for students to not be wearing their face masks when they're outside. If they're exerting, they're exerting themselves, they're involved in activities. It is difficult. Can you go back to the beginning of your question?
So like, you know, obviously with like high schools, so this is resorting to athletics.
Get a little closer to the mic, yeah, so everyone can hear you, thank you.
Resorting to athletics, bands, things like that. I'm obviously assuming older children. But we're not requiring this for K through 5. They're allowed to play out playgrounds, things like that, and have some sort of normacy. I remember mask breaks was another one that we discussed and I thought that was being put out.
Thank you. You also asked about, and so right now, we're following the directives regarding face masks. So children, when they're outside, they do not have to wear the mask. That applies to both vaccinated and unvaccinated students. You did talk about the verification of a medical exemption. And I agree with you. I was here and I listened to your dialogue and there was a lot of discussion. And in the end, I believe the board, and I think it's in the presentation, the board adopted Directive 047. So there's some confusing, confusing language in the directives and that's not an excuse. So Directive 024 is where medical exemptions were first allowed, based on my knowledge. In there, no documentation was required. Directive 028 changed that and required medical documentation. That's why we do have that indication that it's documented in IEP or a 504 plan or a medical professional has provided the documentation that a child or a staff member or a person from the public has this need to not wear one of these face masks. And in those instances, then they're encouraged to wear face covering or a face shield.
And if I'm correct, Dr. Lamarcus, that is now in Directive 048, the last directive that the governor put out, the recommendation?
Yes.
Did that clarify that for you? Because you're right, we spent a lot of time talking about that and, and the medical exemption and how does a, how does a family member show that or a parent or even a staff member, quite frankly? And it's because it certainly was unclear with Directive 047, which, you know, we saw it for 15 minutes, you know, because it came out over a meeting. So looking further into it, it looks like there was some clarification to at least assist with that. I mean, one thing I can tell you, one thing is really clear often is there, it's, there's still, I think there are always gonna be a lot of questions. I guess I've certainly landed on that, there's still gonna be, to be some questions. So I see trustee Church and I'll go back to you, vice president Minnella. Trustee Church?
Thank you. Let me start with a real simple question. Can the school nurse review a child's history to the best of their ability and make that determination on face shields versus a mask? Can they or should they?
We ask for clarification from the state and no, the school nurse cannot do that.
Okay, I think, did you, did you hear that trustee Church?
Did not.
Okay, yeah. I think that probably may have been in effect in 047, but 048, I think, provided that guidance.
Now, you said medical professional, I was wondering if that included the school nurse?
I see, I see, okay.
Alrighty, now let me get into some research and comments on the state website. And just a few minutes ago, I believe with superintendent McNeil, commented on the 13 counties that are in the high risk area. So my, my question or clarification, the governor's directive 048 only applies to Clark and Washoe, correct?
Counsel?
It applies to, to all counties. There are just different provisions that apply to us. So to the extent that those, those different provisions, yeah, that would be the answer. It applies to statewide, except for there are different provisions that apply to Washoe and Clark because we exceed the 100,000.
And you know, essentially, and I don't know if this has changed in the last day or so, but for example, Carson City is exempt from the all mask requirement indoors. And they, last I saw, opted not to require masks indoors. And so I looked at the state website just minutes ago and per capita, Washoe's at 566. So just remember, 566. Carson City with no masks, five corrections, 656. Minro County, 855, off the chart. Lyon County, 764. So it seems we're being treated in a disparate manner. And maybe my question for legal, but is that a legal issue? How come we have to wear masks when we're at 656 and all the other, 566 and all the others that are higher are exempt?
If I can ask, just ask legal perhaps, when you, what numbers are you, when you say 566, 66, what, what numbers are you?
It's a per capita, I believe it's per 100,000 and it's off the state.
Oh, the number of cases per 100,000, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so just assuming that I'm, my figures are correct.
I understand, I just wanted to make sure I was, I was tracking you. So you, so your question then is that, are we being treated desperately because we're larger? Is that basically, did I reword that correctly?
Yeah, legally, is there a legal issue that we're being treated in a disparate manner?
Well, yeah, I don't think so. The Nevada law recognizes the difference of 100,000 over and over. There are specific provisions that apply to Washoe, for example, regarding open meeting law, that doesn't apply to smaller counties. There's all kinds of provisions throughout the state of Nevada that, that have different specific provisions to counties of 100,000 and more. I guess arguably, if there was no standard or no reason for why the governor did what he did, then you could argue arbitrary and capricious. But he, at least his lawyers laid out why he did what he did and he signed it, so therefore it's his words, with all the whereas's. And he's making a distinction in the 100,000 because, as I understand it, and Paul, you and probably know this part better than I, but that he's worried about a rapid outbreak because of our size. And so therefore, that's the logic behind his decision. But I don't think there's, I wouldn't say there's a good case. I would also point out that to have a lawsuit, the case needs to not be moot. The case needs to, you need to have standing and there needs to be a justiciable case and controversy. It's not moot, but I don't think we have standing because we don't have.
What does that mean?
So standing means that you're the party that stands in the shoes and has the right to sue. And I don't think we have the right to sue on, based on this directive. I think we would have a hard time getting past standing. So, so my answer would be, it's a tough case for sure and I wouldn't, I would recommend against it.
That's the.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that answers the question. It's, he didn't say no, but yeah, a tough case. And we're getting so many emails from the public on why don't we stand up to the governor? So I appreciate that response and maybe there's individuals out there with standing that, that do or would. That said, I'll render my own opinion that the science does not support masks. I'm opposed to masks, but we have to follow the governor's directive and I accept that. But this entire policy seems ludicrous, ridiculous. I saw pictures today of the kids in school, in the hallways, packed in like sardines. I look at the video of the meeting room and the folks are shoulder to shoulder in this meeting room. And I'm gonna state my own opinion rather bluntly and I try to be very professional, but that could have been avoided by a larger venue. And maybe in the future, we might want to look at a larger venue. And I believe we can find a larger venue that wouldn't interfere with school activities. But there just seems to be a real Twilight Zone catch 22 on the way people are packed in like sardines, but yet have to wear masks, which are ineffective. So that's my opinion. You know, our email is running 99% opposed to the masks, but again, we've got the governor's directive. And, and really, I have to ask myself, the stats, you can play Fast and Furious with them. And I looked at the statewide stats and we're roughly where we were February. We're a third of what we were at the peak in December. We're third, but we are tracking upwards. So the people on the right that don't want masks, we are tracking upwards, but we have zero deaths. So again, you have stats with zero deaths, but we are tracking dramatically upwards. The last couple of days, we went down a little bit, but we're back to about February of last year. And they're almost, I hate to say it, there almost comes a question about, do we just shut down the schools again for a couple of weeks till this runs its course? But the mask thing is ridiculous, but we have to follow it. We're packed in like sardines, the stats, you can play with them any way you want, but we are tracking high compared to, again, back to February. So that's my rant. I hope I'm professional and come across that way, but. So many questions, so few answers, and one of them might be, at what point?
Uh, we, trustee Church, we missed the last end of that, that statement of yours. You said, at what point, what was that, sir?
At what point, at what point do we go, you know, we're not social distancing, the kids aren't wearing them on the playground like they shouldn't? Ridiculous mandate. At what point do we just maybe say, we gotta discuss at least shutting down the schools?
Okay, thank, thank you, I just, we lost that and I wanted to make sure your full comment was on. And if you're done, sir, if you wouldn't mind taking that hand down again so I don't go back to you if you don't need it. But you, but you put that thing up whenever you want to, okay? Okay, then vice president Minnella and then clerk Nicolet?
Thank you, Madam President. If people who are vaccinated can get it and spread it, then why are we only testing the children?
Everyone, if you would, please, please, please. We're almost, we're almost there, we're almost hanging there with me, we're almost there. Thank you. No, actually, no, I think all the questions are good, the comment, I think we're gonna get to the public comment in here, all of that certainly, but we just wanna maintain business to chrome, if you would, thank you. Go ahead, please.
And maybe this is a question for the governor. Why isn't all of the athletes, why aren't all the, because it seems almost like, because you can't tell me these kids aren't gonna know, these kids are getting tested. Not that the kids would necessarily care, but, so I don't know if you can answer that.
I, I don't want to punt the question, but I do think it is a question not for us. We are following the directives from the state and that is requiring us to do what we're doing with respect to that testing. And we are very concerned about any bullying or any kind of effect this could have on a child who isn't vaccinated and they've made that choice. But these are the rules of the game, so to speak.
Thank you, vice president Minnella. Clerk Nicolet?
I will say that I can't stand wearing these masks. I detest it and yet during the smoky, sooty air, I really appreciated having the masks go. So I gotta tell you, I'm conflicted, but I'll just be honest with you. Also, when I'm with my grandchildren and we're in public, like a discovery museum, wonderful place and we're wearing masks and kids are sneezing all around you, I kinda like the masks. Having said that, Nurse Crane, do you, in your expertise and your numbers and your qualitative and quantitative information, do you, did you, do you think there is a correlation between the mask wearing and less communicable diseases in our schools, period? I'm just curious. You don't know, I get it. I don't know is an okay answer.
I don't know.
Okay, alright, why don't we do this, why don't we have a pause for a moment and then hear the public comment? On this, looks like we kinda have a pause in our discussion, so it might be a good time to hear that. And then of course, JJ, in between time, you can read the names of those who sent in public comment. Thank you to all of you staff, don't go, don't go too far, we might need you.
Dr. Troy Ross.
Dr. Ross? Please, come on up, sir. You can use either, either microphone and. And let's just make sure we get, get you turned, get the mic turned on before, there we are, you're good to go. Thank you, sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name's Troy Ross and I'm a specialty trained preventive medicine physician. Probably one of two or maybe three in northern Nevada. I have expertise in pandemic planning, infection control, vaccine program development, public health policy. I've put those skills to use in my army career, all around the world, in combat settings. And I say that to let you know that what we're doing is causing harm. The pandemic mitigation directives that have been pushed on to all of us are doing a net harm. We can do it better and we owe it to our children to do it better. There are basic infection control measures tied to rational policies that keep us functioning and can improve health. And that's how we address this endemic virus. It's no longer a pandemic, it's endemic, it's in our population and it's here to stay. That changes the considerations of what we should be doing. So a couple of key pieces of information to keep in mind. The SARS virus is 300% smaller than the filtering capacity of the best N95 mask. 300%, 0.1 micron for that virus versus 0.3 microns for what the N95 can stop. There is not a cloth mask anywhere, no matter how many layers you make, that could even match what the N95 is capable of. Masks don't stop viruses. Cross contaminations happen when infectious particles get transferred to where they don't belong. Every time you touch a mask, every time you touch an item and then touch something else, you have cross contaminated. Every time, you can't avoid it. And here I go, because you don't even have a stupid mask that's proper. COVID vaccines do not stop the spread of infection. The EUAs that have specified their use are very specific to say that they need to lessen the impact of disease. There are studies published all around the world, published by the CDC, which show that this Delta variant that everyone is concerned about is actually spreading more in the vaccinated population. So what do your policies do? I'm running out of time. They don't stop the spread, but here's what they do. Anxiety, depression, self-harm, suicide, drug use, domestic and sexual abuse, they're all through the roof. I take care of police officers, firefighters, truck drivers, teachers, medical professionals and parents.
I'm sorry, sir, your time is up, sir.
Yep, and I see it through their eyes.
Thank you very much, your time is up, thank you. Once again, everyone, Dr. Ross, sir, thank you, your time is up. And again, I'm gonna ask you to please keep the applause down or we'll just have to start clearing the room. We just wanna get through. I understand it, it's okay, but we just have to not have the disruptions. On either side of either issue, it's okay. Right, it's, it's okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Joanna Paquod?
Paquod? Mr. Amicius?
Tessa Dresser?
Dresser. Dresser? Okay, just put the microphone down so we can make sure we hear you, okay? Welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Tessa and I am 12 years old. I'm here to speak about the mask mandate in Incline Village, as this is where I attend school. Incline Village is a very small town. We should not have to participate in Washoe County's mask mandate because we have a small population. Another reason why we should not have to wear masks is because masks have chemicals, including microplastics, carcinogens that cause cancer and carbon dioxide. That's not even the worst thing about masks. Masks are also creating pollution around the world, in the oceans, lakes, and even around towns. Top German scientists have found that wearing certain types of masks for long periods of time could result in potentially hazardous chemicals and harmful microplastics being inhaled deep into human lungs. They, the way they know this is because they conducted a study. way they know this is because they conducted a study where the levels of carbon dioxide that were deemed unacceptable were a level two. This is considered to be hazardous to one's health. During the research, they tested 10-year-olds, and after only three minutes of wearing the mask, carbon dioxide levels went to a range of seven. That's almost quadruples the level that are deemed unacceptable. This then puts kids in high danger of sickness, so instead of preventing COVID, they are damaging one's immune systems, making them vulnerable, and creating new sicknesses for people. I am encouraging you to make the right decision for the safety and health of all children in Washoe County, and reconsider the mask mandate, and specifically for Incline Village, where the population is much smaller and will not be affected like the bigger schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tessa. Thank you for coming down from Incline as well. Thank you so much.
Maureen Landren?
You said, you said Mandarin?
Lambertan.
Lambertan. Lambertan. Welcome, Ms. Lambertan. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. Dr. Maureen Lambertan, thank you so much for being here. We are from Incline Village, Nevada. We are a very small population. That's why, part of the reason why I'm here, to request that you exempt us from this mandate. I have a couple numbers for you. The rule that came out with our governor says that counties over 100,000. How you look at the population of inclined schools altogether, the elementary, middle school, and high school, don't even equate to 1,000 students. Incline Village population is a little under 9,000. If we compare that to Carson Schools, who are not requiring masks in session, in class, they're, just their high school is 2,200, 2,200. So if we compare that to inclined schools, that's a big difference. Carson City population is 55,916. I can go on. Douglas Schools, population, just the high school, is almost 2,000. So again, we're comparing 2,000 to 302 in Incline Village, but because we're connected to Washoe County, you guys are mandating our kids to wear masks. Does not make sense. Again, I could go on with other populations. Elko, for instance, 18,297 Elko population. High School, 1,262 kids, just in the high school. That is more kids than all of the schools in Incline. There's a lot of things that have happened over the years with kinda forgetting about Incline. Last year, my, my son went to the high school for first-year freshmen. He was not able to go to the initial welcoming party because you guys deemed the AQI of 60 in Incline as not reasonable, and you canceled it. In Reno, it was 180, but you canceled it. There was about a month that you guys canceled school because of smoke. And again, I think that you really need to look at these smaller populations within Washoe County and look at them separately. Now, on a completely separate note, I am a primary care practitioner in the state of Nevada. I do see a lot of patients. I've had a ton of patients that have been vaccinated. I've had stroke patients, high, high anxiety, acute depressive disorder, lots of high school kids that come to me. This is not helping our kids. On the sheet that you put up there, it said, do no harm. I don't see the decisions that you're making about these masks. And I understand that this is being rolled out by the governor, but you have the ability to make this change. There are lots of school districts across the nation that are standing up and saying, this is not okay. I'm not okay with this. Do no harm. Let's stand up for our kids. Going back to contact tracing, let me tell you about contact tracing. My son was contact traced last year during spring break. Apparently, he was near somebody in, during spring break, and he was kicked out of school for 10 days.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lambertan. Dr. Lambertan, thank you for coming down. I'm sorry, your time is up, but thank you for coming down.
Steve Dresser?
Again, if, when, when the applause gets to where we can't even hear the name, that's disruptive. Please, just work with me on this, please.
Spencer Armstrong?
Welcome, Mr. Armstrong. You go either way.
What?
I said, you could go either way.
Okay.
Welcome, Mr. Armstrong. You have three minutes, sir.
All right, thank you. Today at school, I got kicked out because I wouldn't wear my mask over my nose. But guess what? I have asthma that is very severe. I've been hospitalized multiple times due to it, and today, it was very smoky by McQueen, which is where I go to school. And the admin was trying to force me to wear it, even though I could barely breathe. The funny thing is, the smoke is what triggers my asthma, and I told them that, and all they said was, you're going to have to stay outside if I didn't wanna wear my mask over my nose. I, this is when I felt like I was discriminated over my medical conditions. They did not care about me at all, and the thing of it, the thing of it is, there was no one around me, so why should I have to wear my mask? Also, if you are all wearing masks, why should I have to wear it? Aren't you protected if you're wearing one and I'm not? If you said no in your head, then that just shows how these are useless, and no one should be forced upon these. At the end of the day, we live on the land of the free, so if I can't have my freedom and choose whether or not to wear a mask, um, oh wait, I should choose whether or not to wear them. We live in the battle-born state, Nevada, so let's start showing some freedom again, since our founding fathers fought for us to have freedom. So let's keep it that way. So please stand up with us, the people. If, and if you want to wear a mask, that's perfectly fine. Just please don't force it on the rest of us. And another thing is, COVID can get contracted, will get into your eyes, so these basically don't do anything. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong.
Janet Butcher?
Thank you. I'm, I'm getting a little confused about what when, but anyway, because of the way these agenda items are put together, it might be who, um, you two, if you're gonna have presentations, to put those presentations out by themselves, and then have the agenda items. So I think I'm speaking because I didn't get called for 4.1. So anyway, I'll just say what I have to say. So I'm kind of like confused a little bit. I'd like to say that, first of all, there are psychological oppression to, to singling out the kids as far as like, you're gonna get tested, you're not, that type of thing. I, I just don't see, see the need in that. I also kinda wanna talk a little bit about when we were talking about the, the parents, only parents, not grandparents, being able to be on this unnecessary task force.
I'm sorry, Ms. Butcher. You have to stay focused on, this is about the COVID item?
Well, I didn't, I didn't get to talk before, because they directed me outside to put 4.1 down, and...
Just pause their clock, JJ. I don't wanna take connection. Please, go ahead, ma'am. What were you saying?
So anyway...
No, no, no. What were you, what were you saying?
They directed me to put on my card 4.01 to speak, and then I was told that 4.01 was not a speakable agenda item. But I was directed outside to put 4.01 on my card.
Oh, I, I see. So, so you're...
That's why I'm saying, it's really confusing.
Yeah, I understand. So, but your comment about the task force is not 4.01. This is 4.03.
I know.
And we did have comments on 4.03. Anyway, you know what? Go ahead ahead. Just go ahead and make your comment. It's okay.
Yeah, because they told me to put 4.01.
No problem at all. We'll go, go ahead and do your comment. That's why we can make it clear.
Okay, I just, real quickly, wanna make a comment.
No, no, you're okay. You have time. Go ahead.
Wanna make a comment about, I think it's a little oppressive. There are grandparents out there that are very much involved. They may not be the guardian, but they are involved in the child, in the community, because maybe the, maybe it's a single mom or a single dad, and mom has to work two jobs, and so grandma or grandpa are helping take care of the kids. So I think it's a little oppressive to exclude a grandparent from being on this task force. So, and also, real quick, since I only have 54 seconds left, um...
Go ahead. I'll give you a little more. I interrupted you. So I'll give you a little more. Go ahead.
It's very interesting that there is some misinformation here, and I was so glad to hear the doctor speak, because I was going to suggest that perhaps the board might want to go out to America's frontline doctors. The, the doctor spoke about some of these issues, but you might wanna educate yourself on, on really and truly what's going on. Because the governor's issue is, I think, more about heavily populated areas because he can, he can control them more. Some of the other areas are constitutional counties, and they will not take his directive. It is not a law, it's a directive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butcher.
Casey Thielander?
Welcome back, Mr. Thielander.
Hello. So I'd like to start with actually correcting Governor Cicillak about his mandate when he spoke to the public, that it was ordered by...
I'm sorry, Mr. Thielander. I wanna make sure that's, that's distracting. You're okay? That's all right. You're good. Why don't you start, we'll start your clock over, start you over. Here we go.
So I'd just like to correct Governor Cicillak when he ordered, you know, made his mandate to the public and he spoke to us, that he said the CDC, based upon the orders of the CDC, there is no orders from the CDC. It's purely just recommendations from the CDC. So let's, I want the public to be clear, is that there was nothing that was ordered from CDC. These are all solely based recommendations. With that being said, I'm, I'm, we're supposed not to have social distancing, right? That's not supposed to be implemented in school because of the, you know, the population in school and whatnot, but our principal seems to be having our kids in pods and social distancing them outside while they're outside, and keeping them apart. And it's already causing emotional damage, as my son, uh, this morning, didn't even wanna play on a play structure because he felt like he couldn't, because there was kids already on it that are not in his pod, and he didn't wanna suffer ramifications. And I just don't see how this isn't gonna be so psychologically damaging to the elementary school population. Just from going back and forth and saying, okay, now you can social distance. Well, let's just, and he emailed me back, because I emailed him, and he said that we'll just check back in a few weeks. Well, so you're gonna only implement pods for a few weeks, and then tell the kids, oh, no, you're okay. To tell a second grader that, okay, now we don't have to social distance, you're okay, go ahead, go play. They're, they're so confused, but they don't understand that. And if you're gonna play these mind games with them, you should be removed from your job. And I've had it with that principal. Had, absolutely had it. And then also, in regards to the tests, heard from the horse's mouth today. I'm a really good, reliable source. These tests do not tell the difference between influenza and COVID. The, the test isn't even called COVID. It's a SARS test. They don't even have a direct test, and I'm talking about a medical distributor. They don't have a Delta test. There is no way to test for the Delta variant by a nasal swab or a mouth swab and give you a answer in 24 and 48 hours. They don't have it. They literally do not ship it. A month and a half ago, CDC recalled the PCR test because it couldn't tell the difference. So now, if we look back at last year and all of our, these numbers that are going out of control, was it influenza, or was it COVID? So are the numbers factual? Are they not factual? Now we're to the point where we don't know what last year's were. I, I know someone personally who got tested recently by one of the SARS tests and tested positive for influenza and positive for COVID. How is that possible? Because it can't tell the difference between the two. So if the governor wants to jump up the numbers, don't use an influenza test, use the SARS test, because we know they'll test positive for COVID, or, you know, whatever they might have. And then we can get our numbers up, so we can control the community. I mean, it's a mind game like crazy. God damn it.
Sorry, Mr. Thielander. Thank you, sir.
Maureen Vergara?
Ms. Navara?
Gavara.
Gavara? Oh, Ms. Gavara. Okay, I understand that name. No?
Kurt Baker?
Mr. Baker?
Thank you. So I came here tonight to, originally to speak, and I, I still am about the masks. We're hearing from a doctor that says that they work, and we had a doctor speak here a little bit ago, saying they didn't work. I'm not a doctor. I'm not a doctor at all, but you know what? I can read. Has anybody picked up a box of these masks in the store and read what it says on the box, "will not protect against bacteria or viruses"? So to me, this whole thing is actually a waste of time. I gotta tell you what, it was cool hearing all the kids here tonight, because that's what we're here. We're here for the kids. We're not here for our own agendas. We're here to protect the kids and represent the kids. So to me, I don't know where the science is coming from, or these masks work. You have medical masks, cloth masks, that don't do anything, and we're putting these kids in masks all day. I can tell you right now that I have pulled my own child out of school and will be homeschooling. I met with 10 other couples last night who are doing the same thing. I don't know if that concerns you or not. If it does, I'm not sure what it does to your numbers, your money, whatever. I don't understand that. But I know of a lot of people that are pulling their kids out, they're not gonna put their kids in a mask all day. I do understand that you have a directive from the governor, but I can tell you one thing, and I heard this just recently, I'll be really short, is that I don't think he's gonna be there much longer. America has a 100%, a 100% has always removed tyrants. So it's gonna change. I don't know why he's doing this. I don't know where he's getting his information, but it's not from any science that I've heard. So I would encourage you to actually go and check out the science of what these masks are all about. I'm not putting my child in a mask. A lot of people aren't. That's about it. You guys have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
John Appolito?
Welcome back, Mr. Appolito.
Thank you, President Taylor. My name is John Appolito. I have two kids left in the district, and I'm a former K-12 teacher. Something that trustee Church said was interesting, because that was exactly what I was thinking. There was a little while ago, when we had about maybe 30 kids out there in the lobby, and maybe 70 square feet. I think you guys are contributing to the problem by not holding this meeting in a venue that's large enough. In the open meeting law, 241.020, "the facilities for the meeting are large enough to accommodate the anticipated number of attendees," end quote. And you guys have not been doing that for months. You started us out over there by the freeway with the homeless lady. That's where we started, which is on the other side of the, the furthest from the building that we could be. That's not okay either. So put it in a venue that'll hold the people that are coming, or quit doing dumb things, and there won't be so many people coming.
Mr. Appolito, you know you need to bring this to the agenda item, sir.
The agenda item is the masks. So what we had tonight was two doctors. No, the agenda item is the safety of the kids, which you guys are blowing off by bringing all these kids in here that you can't accommodate. Then you stick them in a room upstairs, you stick them in a room downstairs, and you have way too many of us in here sitting right next to each other. That's the agenda item. Two doctors talked about the masks, and one 12-year-old. I know, you know, my kids would agree with the 12-year-old and both doctors, because they didn't have to do the research. They would just nod their heads. But we are different in Incline. We have a small community. I'm not quite sure why we even have to wear masks up there. HIPAA. Someone was talking about HIPAA. I think it was staff. My understanding that any data, medical data, that the school district, State Department of Ed collects, which would be sane or infinite campus, if it's not a healthcare provider, provider, HIPAA does not apply. Maybe I'm wrong, and if I am, maybe you guys will tell me. You can find 1,400 of us or 1,300 of us that protect Nevada children face, on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
James Benton?
Mr. Benton, I think it was Mr. Benton. Mr. Benton, I think it was Mr. Benton. Welcome back, Mr. Benton. Pull the mic down, sir, if you would, so we can-
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I have some documents. This one goes to Superintendent McNeil, and one for all the trustees and two others.
Good evening. For the record, James M. Benton. I'm a resident of Washtau County. Tonight, I am presenting my demand and notice for documents to Superintendent McNeil, the trustees, and two more staff members. I am a Washtau County taxpayer, and I'm a private, natural-born man. I'm demanding certified true copies of all documents regarding me and your authority, Superintendent McNeil, to issue health mandates to me. I remind you that you are not the Health Department. You are a school board. I'll also remind you that OSHA applies to employers and employees. On page two, it reads, "I, James M. Benton, hereby demand the following documents to support your claim, Superintendent McNeil, of COVID-19 being a health emergency and that James M. Benton is a public health risk. To date, there has been no tangible documented evidence produced by Superintendent McNeil or Governor Sisalak that COVID-19 has been isolated and identified. Further, you have not provided any tangible documented evidence that COVID-19 is real. Item four, provide true copies of the governor's authority under NRS 414, Governor's Emergencies Powers, that the governor's authority to interfere with the rights of natural-born men and women by executive order extends past 30 days. Item 12, provide certified true copies of all documents along with constitutional and statutory authorization as proof, Superintendent McNeil, that there is a real and substantial bearing upon the safety of the general public which entitles you to exercise administrative authority and some sort of administrative control over James M. Benton. 13, provide certified true copies of all documents along with constitutional and statutory authorization as proof, Superintendent McNeil, that there is a real and substantial bearing upon the welfare of the general public which entitles you to exercise administrative authority and some sort of administrative control over James M. Benton. 22, provide certified copies of all documents as proof that you, Superintendent McNeil, have the constitutional and statutory authority and are following Nevada revised statutes for the state of Nevada and the Washtau County School District. I'm thanking you in advance for your cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benton.
Shannon Coley.
Ms. Coley, welcome back.
Hi. I'm just here for Dr. Troy Ross. I wanted, if you want to know more information about him and his information on COVID and masks, he is at Paradox Health, P-A-R-A-D-O-X Health, H-E-L-T-H, at wordpress.com. It's a blog about the pandemic information.
Thank you, Ms. Coley.
Joanna Paquedwood. Steve Dresser.
He's not here.
Maureen Bergara. Those are all the cards I have for this item.
Okay.
The board received emails from-
Hang on just a second. Did you, ma'am in the back?
I've been trying to comment all day long, and I haven't.
Right. Well, you have to fill out a public comment card, ma'am.
I have twice.
Have you submitted? Have you turned them in?
Yes, I have.
Okay, do you have that, JJ?
Not for this item.
Okay, so is this the item you want to speak on, ma'am?
The first agenda was in the forums, and the second agenda is to achieve the public comment.
Okay, so would you like to speak on this item related to COVID?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so let's, we'll tell you what you, I say, we'll have you come forward. We'll make sure your comment card is correct after you speak, okay? You can do that.
Thank you.
I'm going to need you just to pull that mask up over your nose, if you would. I know it's a pain in the butt. I get it. Please, go ahead, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Okay.
And give us your name, please, for the record.
My name is Hope Bachman, and thank you for having me here today.
Thank you.
If I was up here smoking a cigarette right now and I blew it through this mask, you would see smoke. Smoke particles are larger than COVID-19 particulates. That means these masks do nothing but collect bacteria, such as, it's exactly the same as jock itch. Warm, moist environments create bacteria. Then you're forcing my child, Kristin. I specifically asked you not to put my child in school, and you forced me. Then you make these children breathe this bacteria into their lungs all day long and then tell them that they need to learn stuff. Meanwhile, they're getting bacterial pneumonia, going to the doctor and being told they have COVID-19. Yeah. And then you're like, "Oh, let's inject you with an experimental vaccine that's been on the market for six months." The shortest vaccine study ever created was for the influenza flu, and that vaccine took 12 years of study and testing before it was administered to the public. And you're suggesting that six months, something thrown together, that it's not a vaccine, it's gene therapy.
If you can put that mask over your nose, ma'am. Thank you.
The useless mask that does nothing. So gene therapy is why it's refrigerated at negative 78 degrees. Find me another vaccine that's frozen at negative 78 degrees and show it to me. I am asking that you resign because you don't know what you're doing. I am also asking for the public, citizens' arrest of our governor for lying to the public and hiding hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin from the public for six months. You can go on americafrontline doctors.org and order it for $90 on there. I also want to see evidence that you can isolate the COVID-19 virus, and if you cannot produce that, this mask mandate, everything is done, including your job, Kristin McNeil. You're not serving our children. I have no faith in you, that you care about our kids, and that's very upsetting that you're running this, okay? There's no scientific evidence of anything that you're suggesting kids should do to keep them safe. It's not your job. Your job is to make sure they get reading, writing, and arithmetic, not safety. That's our job. That's our job as parents to keep our kids safe. It's your job to make sure that they're literate by the time they graduate, and you are failing. That means you do not need to be here, Kristin McNeil. You need to resign. You are failing your job. We are 22nd in the world for education. That is unacceptable.
Thank you, Ms. Bachman.
Bachman.
I'm sorry, Bachman. I'm sorry, Bachman.
Bev Stenjen.
Welcome back, Ms. Stenjen. Wait, wait, wait. Your mic's not on. Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you. So we're talking about a virus that is 99.7% survivable. You guys all know that, correct? I don't understand why we're wearing these masks. Like everyone is saying, I follow the science. My science is different from your science. My science says that these masks are too, the particles of the virus are too tiny to be stopped by a mask. The virus particles go right through it. So we are doing more harm by forcing our kids to wear these masks. They breed bacteria. The kids drop them on the floor, they put them back on. The second point I want to make is that these vaccines, so-called vaccines, are experimental. They have not been FDA-approved officially. They've only been approved for emergency use. And there's the Nuremberg Code that was made after World War II to stop the Nazis from making experiments on people, medical experiments. And so the Nuremberg Code is supposed to protect us from you people forcing vaccines on kids. And if, what about kids that have already had COVID? Don't they have antibodies? Why are we segregating kids that don't have the vaccine? They've already been, they've already had the COVID virus. They have natural immunity, but nobody's talking about that. That's been completely swept under the carpet because all you guys can think of is forcing an experimental shot on people. People that have had COVID have natural antibodies that are stronger than what the vaccine can give you. So to have two camps of people, I can't believe these people here that are advocating to say, "We'll put the kids that have not been vaccinated in a group and we'll quarantine them." I mean, that is horrible. I can't believe that you would advocate to treat children like that or anybody else. So we're becoming like China. Show me your papers. Is that okay with you? Is that the kind of country you guys want to live in? We won't be able to travel. We won't be able to get a job. We won't be able to go to a restaurant or buy groceries unless we show you our vaccination papers, even if we've been, if we've had COVID and we have a natural immunity. Do you guys really want to live in a country like that? I can't believe it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Stenjen. I'm sorry, Stenjen.
Victoria Meyer.
Welcome back, Ms. Meyer.
So a lot of what you guys have heard is good information, a lot of it. I just once again urge you to look at the science of this disease, this virus. These masks don't work. Everybody, I think, knows that. Most people. So why are we masking our kids? Why are we doing this? You guys do have the authority. Someone pointed out that across the nation, school boards are going, using their authority to, you know, and using common sense on this issue and defying these supposed mandates. Mandate is not a law. The governor has clearly overstepped his bounds. Many have. Emergency powers are not indefinite. We all know what we're dealing with now after a year and a half. And how come nobody's talking about, if you watch the news on this and the droning on about a pandemic, which it's not, it's an endemic, how come nobody's talking about prophylaxis, you know, preventative? It's been around long enough now. There's doctors, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of doctors around the globe that are treating COVID, preventing it, early treatment. There's lots of treatment. You never hear it talked about. We need to start looking at it that way, dispense with these really nasty bacterial environment things and psychological damage we're doing to our children. It is very arbitrary and capricious, what's going on. Show me the studies that say that they work. Last time I was up here, a couple weeks ago, we talked about 47 studies that say they don't work. Show me the ones that say they work. Where are they? Where are the studies that show masks work? Got one? Please post it if you have them. Do you have one? Do you have any studies that show they work? Nobody has any. Interestingly, all the studies that prove that they don't work are pre-COVID. There's only one study that they've done specifically with COVID in the last year and a half over in Europe, in Italy, and it shows it doesn't work. It doesn't prevent COVID. So stop masking our children. Stop damaging them psychologically and emotionally. You have the power and authority. Please use it. Ultimately, the power rests with us. Let's remember that, ultimately.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
Those are all the cards I have. The board received emails from Russ Gronert, Stephen Trumbull, Wrangler, Allison Raymond, Marika Moore, Mary Beth Collins, Cher Daniels, Elizabeth Eisenhower, Kristen Russo, Kathy Julian, Krista Rossi, Tarina Dutton, Carolyn Sullivan, Paul Milo, Heather Stroffus, Matt Stroffus, and Stephanie Harness.
Thank you, JJ. I will just as reminders to all of you in the audience and the vast majority of you, even though you aren't supportive of the mask mandate, I appreciate that you're wearing your masks and that you're wearing them correctly. There are a couple that are not. If you would, please put your mask on and please wear them correctly. I'd really appreciate that.
So we just study they work.
Okay, let's bring it back to the board table. Here for, this is, and this is for action. This is, this is an item that is, this is an action item. I would say we've gotten all the public comment, and a couple more have come in since we've had our meeting. And JJ did read the names of those, but if you haven't had a chance to read those comments, then please go ahead and do so. Just a few have come in since we started this conversation, but we want those, we want those comments to be known as well. So I see you. I'll start with you first, Trustee Church. Once again, going first?
Once again, going first, and I'm all congested, so it's a good thing I'm not there. I think there might be some discussion regarding, at a minimum, and I, just for discussion, but I think I'm feeling some of the board opinion, that we at least ask the governor to reconsider his directive. It's not consistent with the other counties, and we're under that, and it should be a decision, tough as it is, that we make. It's a school board, not the governor. It's so contradictory involving indoor/outdoor masks versus shields versus medical versus no social distancing. So I'd just like to open that up for some discussion as whether that would be on the table.
Trustee Church, Diane here. Can you reframe that? I'm not exactly sure where you're wanting to go with this.
Certainly. I'm not ready to make a motion. I just want to discuss it, but I think we should ask the governor, we as a board, direct the superintendent to write a letter to the governor, asking that he rescind 048 and grant us more discretion in how we administer our mask policy consistent with the other counties.
I will share this comment, and the superintendent shared this with us. This was actually before the school year began, and I believe before Directive 047 came out. You may have spoken about it at the last meeting. Actually, there was a request to the governor for local control before the last two directives came out from, I think, each of the counties together, and that is not something the governor chose to do. So I can share that information. I don't know why or anything like that, but I do know that that request has been made to the governor from all the counties, from our local, all the school districts for our local control, and that is not something that he chose to do. Okay, other considerations. Again, there is a motion on the floor. Oh, no, there's not a motion on the floor. There's action to be taken. There was not a directive. It was Directive 047. Now we're at the Directive 048, so it doesn't require action, but that's the recommendation of the superintendent, and so it's for us as a board to make a decision on what we're going to do. I see, okay, your hand is still up, and I see you waving, so, okay, Trustee Church?
Thank you. Thank you very much. That having fallen flat, I hate to be logical, well, I don't hate to be logical, but we are back where we were according to Dr. Lamarcov of January and statewide February. And what happened in January and February? Schools were closed. I mean, if we really care, if this is really as bad as we're being told, and I'm told today we have an outbreak at hers in my district, and kids are now quarantined, if this is that bad, we have to have a discussion about closing the schools. Personally, I'm not wearing my mask. I'm home, but I'd like to see no mask. That's my preference, no mask. If you don't like it, don't send your kid to school. But since that's not possible, if it's as bad as we say, we have an obligation to have a discussion on that because just having the masks is ineffective.
Okay, commentary? Any comments on that, anybody?
I want you to know, it's not that I don't have anything to say. I'm just- I want you to know, it's not that I don't have anything to say, I'm just really deep diving my thinking.
Okay. But thank you, trustee Nicolet. But Vice President Mineteau?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I think at all costs, we have to keep schools open for the sake of the children, emotionally and not just their learning, just their emotional. You saw these kids. They need to be in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Mineteau. I will also add, I was confirming something with the superintendent, the other mitigation efforts in the buildings are also in place. HVAC, social distancing when you can, hand washing, so those, those other mitigation efforts are also, are also in place. So it isn't just a mask in terms of school. There are other things within the school environment that, that add to it. So I think there's, I think it's a little further consideration than that, and I will, I will, I'm going to concur with Vice President Mineteau. I, I think it is really important for us to do everything that we can to keep, keep schools open. I do, I do, I think though, if there's anything that we can, then I think it's critically important that we do that. Superintendent McNeil, I think Dr. Lamarcas, you said you had, okay, so Superintendent McNeil?
No, absolutely. Thank you very much, President Taylor. And I'll just say, you know, this, this district has gone to an enormous efforts to keep our schools open and to keep kids and teachers and support staff safe. We've expended quite a few resources as far as federal dollars in order to do this. We stood up vaccination clinics last year, if you all remember. Approximately 80% of our staff is vaccinated, which is an extremely high vaccination rate. So I will just say that, you know, our district has, has done a tremendous job on making sure that schools are able to be open. Buses and, you know, everything is, is happening. I get it, it's absolutely, you know, a very difficult time, but as superintendent, I can't support moving our schools to district, or to district, distance learning.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just go to our, to our student trustee, Victoria, for your, your comments, and then I'll go to you, Dr. Lamarcas, then I'm bringing it back to the board for some kind of action.
Thank you, Madam President. I would say that, as we've said, we need to keep schools open because of the fact that it's day two and we haven't seen how students have responded. Even with masks, last year, we, it was hybrid, it was distance learning, or people were fully in person, but that messed with their mental health. That was a key factor messing with their mental health. So now, even though we have masks, we can see that there's gonna be an increase in students' mental health because we're back at school, because we're back in that daily life, and there's gonna be a cycle of going back to school. And if we get that taken away, we'll see that increase in mental illnesses again.
Thank you, student trustee Victoria. Dr. Lamarcas?
President Taylor, I just wanted to clarify. The Board of Trustees acted, I believe it was the first week of November, when we spiked around Halloween, to go to full distance after the Thanksgiving break. The Board of Trustees also voted, because the cases actually started coming down during winter break, to return students to hybrid and in-person following winter break. So trustee Church is right, and I believe the data showed that, that the cases are as bad as they were the last week in January, but we had already returned back to in-person learning.
Thank you, Dr. Lamarcas. I was gonna say something similar in that case numbers were higher and we were still going to school, because, because of the commitment and understanding, it's important to keep schools open. I think as a board, that's, that's a position that we held as much as we could, and so all year. I mean, we were one of the largest school districts in the country, when there were so many more unknowns, if we can believe that, right? So many more unknowns, but one of the largest school districts in the company that had in-person instruction all year long, all year long. And I think that spoke to, just as a board, the commitment to keeping kids, continuing to give kids an opportunity, students an opportunity to, to be in in-person instruction. I just think that, I just, I continue to think that that's important. Okay? Okay, to, to the board. Well, what I'm gonna ask the board to consider then is the superintendent's recommendation that we adhere to Emergency Directive 048, and that, back to what we said before, staff continue to be encouraged to, to look for ways to allow mask breaks throughout the day as much as possible, understanding that it's not an easy place for us to be. There's no decision that we can make that will make everybody happy at all. We've been in this place for the last year, right? I hate that we're back in this place again, but there's just no possible way we can do something that's gonna make everybody happy. And, and I also ask for really, really, to be, just to be very careful. I certainly understand trustee Church's concern, but just to be very careful when it comes down to closing the schools at this point. Dr. Nicolet?
I'm not quite ready to move on. I have another question that's probably impossible to answer, but I need to ask it. And so I mentioned this last, at the last meeting, so if mask wearing was a choice, in your estimation, what are the major problems with that?
I think short of a governor's directive, I think the recommendation would be for choice, meaning any, and in fact, this was what we had already talked about at the beginning of the summer, I believe, that any child, any family that wanted to wear a mask should wear a mask, and they, they would be allowed to do that. So without the directives requiring this, that was the practice that we had recommended to you.
And I would just add, with the vaccination status, I think that's a little bit different now versus when it was last time. So part of the issue is, is if you're vaccinated, how, how do you know if I'm vaccinated? And the management issue on our teachers, in order to say who is vaccinated and who is not vaccinated, and to be able to have a mask for those students that are at that age, would be a tremendous management burden on our teachers. That was part of the discussion.
Okay, and thank you, thank you to you both. Trustee Smith?
Thank you so much, President Taylor. This is a really, this is a really weighty discussion and topic. What I keep coming back to is that I really look forward to a day when we can have a conversation about masks as being optional, whether that's because transmission rates are down, positivity rates are down. At some point, I believe we're going to get there. I also believe personally that a big turning point in this conversation will be when the vaccine is available for children younger than, than 12, and for families who choose to pursue that path. So I do see in the future that there will be opportunities for us to discuss and maybe change the approach. But the logic that stands here today is that the board did adopt the superintendent's recommendation based on the governor's emergency directive. It is still in place right now, and so although I really look forward to having a future conversation when matters have changed, the logic is still in place for why we voted for this two weeks ago, and it's still in place today. But I really want to make clear to everyone here that I look forward to a time when perhaps the emergency directive is not in place, or other matters have changed within Washoe County, or vaccine availability, and I look forward to having that conversation in the future. So anyways, that's the point I'm really making, is that the logic is still in place from the vote from two weeks ago. And, and I do feel that following the governor's directive is, is still the right choice at this time, but I look forward to that different conversation in the future.
Thank you, trustee Smith. Trustee Rodriguez?
I, I get the, this is all frustrating, and I understand, and I know we could probably go to the city sparks and city of Reno and Washington County Commissioners and say we don't want masks in the counties and cities, so we hope we're not the only board that's being here in this. But we go back to two weeks ago, that if we go against the governor's directive, that there's possible legal, actually, they'll be taking against the board. Is that correct?
I could turn your, turn your mic on, sir.
There could be issues for the district, not necessarily from the state, but the issue would be for those who, for example, when you look at negligence, there's a standard of care. And so the standard of care has been set out that we're gonna have people do masks. So if a child were to get sick, or employee, staff member were to get ill, and they could somehow link it to the district, that would be negligent and that would be liability. The other side, again, is always, we are, we are not a home rule state, which I think that kind of needs to be cleared up. We don't have authority to act outside of, unless the state tells us, we can act. So in this realm, it's very sticky that we have any authority to ignore the governor's directives, which I think furthers the possibility of liability. So a home rule state means that local government can do whatever it wants, where what's called a Dillon's Rule state, which is unless the state gives us the authority, we can't do it. The state has dedicated this authority to the governor, which is concerning when he tries, if he tries to say, and he didn't, but if he tries to say, you handle it, right? We don't have that authority. So that's, that's a real problem with this entire situation.
So I just want to kind of keep this like black and white, simple, you know, all's army, so I wasn't Air Force. So let's get that. So basically, if we were not, if we went against the governor legally, if someone got sick, or COVID, or heaven forbid, got really sick or passed, we as a board and as a district could be held liable.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustee Rodriguez. And counsel? Other comments? Otherwise, I'm looking to see if we're moving toward a, a motion of some sort. I see you, trustee Church.
Thank you. I just couldn't resist a couple of final comments. I looked at the stats, when we, when basically the state and the government, and the country shut down, we were averaging 16 COVID cases a day. Today, we're at 950 in Washoe County. September 11th, I picked that kind of random date, we were at 328. So we're almost triple, 328. And again, I'm a no-masker, but if we're gonna be logical, the logic is we have a standard of care, we'd shut down. But that being said, I made my point. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Church. Anybody moving towards the motion? Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion. We'll see if there's any interest in a second. I moved that the Board of Trustees directs the superintendent to adhere to Emergency Directive 048, and staff to continue to be encouraged to find innovative ways to allow mask breaks throughout the day for all students. There's a motion on the floor from, from myself, and there's a second from Clerk Nicolet? I was, yeah, sorry, Mineteau came to mind, but yeah, no. Clerk Nicolet, we've, we've had plenty of discussion, I'm not seeing more, so we will take a vote, understanding that it's a, it's a difficult vote. As I said before, there's so much information on, on so many sides of the issues, and a lot of things for us to consider as we make this. So here we go with the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye. Any opposition?
No.
Aye.
Okay, I believe it's five to two. Did I miss any opposition? No? Okay, the motion carries, a vote of five to two. Okay, motion carries. Let the record show us, five to two. Okay, we're gonna move on to our reports, and one thing I will say, I want to say this on the record as well, beginning with our next board meeting, board reports will return to the agenda. But it will begin, it will be at our next agenda meeting, our next meeting, I should say. So 5.01, student reps report. I know we just started, so I don't know if you've had anything going on, but let's see. Student representative, Victoria.
Thank you, Madam President. With Student Advisory Council, we met with our, so I'm the president, Ivy Botmil is the vice president, and Michelle Hammond, we met over summer to continue planning how we want the structure of the Student Advisory Council to look over this upcoming year. We're looking forward to putting a video out there in the upcoming week to get more recruitment from all the schools in the district with middle school and high school. And we are gonna be trying to implement a, a program at every school, every high school and middle school, that will be able to have their own student voice program in their school, and will come back to us as the Student Advisory Council. And we will get back to you on more information about that. But I just wanted to say, specifically the Worcester High School, yesterday was like a great day for our first day of school. Announcements were great. It was just very motivating to all be back, and it was a great opportunity, because we, like lunch was my favorite, if I'm being...
Burritos? Oh, sorry, we can't, we can't deliberate, sorry, sorry, sorry.
No, you're good. Lunch was my favorite, being able to see everyone, there was music in the quad, and we're selling shirts again to get, get that spirit out Worcester again, and just knowing that we all in a group said we get to see each other again tomorrow was like a great thing to be able to say. So yeah, that's my update.
That's good. Thank you, student trustee Victoria. That statement, to say, I see you tomorrow, because you didn't get to do that last year, it was every other day at best, so that, that's very meaningful. That's very meaningful. Thank you so much. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you very much, President Taylor. So obviously, we had our first day yesterday. I think you all heard some amazing tales and stories of where our students were. I also want to do a shout out to our staff for holding the Family Expo this weekend, Saturday at the Meadowwood Mall. It was tremendous. We had, I would say, over 300 families. They came, and we were able to register. They found out nutrition services, transportation. We had a lot of swag. We know next year, we're gonna need more swag to hand out to families. So that was wonderful. I want to do a shout out to Nevada Department of Transportation. As you're driving down the freeway, please notice those signs. They have placed a reminder for traffic safety zones. So I really appreciate that, just getting the word out that schools are open and to slow down in those school zones. And then this week, I'm excited, I'll be visiting our schools with our state superintendent. So Joan Ebert will be coming, and we'll be visiting some schools there. And then I always like to do a shout out to, to our employees, obviously, and a special group that I'd like to focus on, especially during our first day. If you were in our schools that first day, there's a lot of traffic, and I don't mean cars, I mean foot traffic as far as registering students and having parents find answers. And so I really want to do a shout out to our front office staff. That's a first impression, that's the first, that's the first place where, other than our bus drivers, but the first place where, where families get to meet the school, and you can definitely see the, the culture and climate. And then I looked over at chief, because I also want to do a shout out to school police. As always, as you can imagine, with 62,000 little ones, sometimes they're gonna get on the wrong bus, some, sometimes they just decide to get on a bus, and they don't really need to be on a bus. But our school police handled it tremendously well, as well as transportation, so thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent McNeil. Okay, and then once again, just as a, as a, just in terms of an announcement, we'll have an additional agenda item. Board reports will return to the agenda during our next meeting. And now we're on agenda item 6.01, public comments. Comments from the public are invited at this time on topics not specifically addressed elsewhere in the agenda. So really important, topics not specifically addressed elsewhere in the agenda. I won't read the rest of it, because everybody knows. Just fill out the card, and we will be here as long as you have comments you would like to make. And then JJ, if there are others that came in during the time, I know you read those words as well, read those names for us as well.
James Benton?
Welcome back, Mr. Benton.
Well, I wanted to discuss some COVID issues.
These are for, these are for items not specifically on the agenda, sir.
Okay, so, so you're saying no COVID?
Well, it's, it's, it's public comment. Comments from the public are invited at this time on topics not specifically addressed elsewhere in the agenda. That's on this. I tell you what, I tell you what, Mr. Benton, some people have waited, so for tonight, for tonight only, we will allow that to happen, but just know as we go forward...
Oh, that's okay, I'll wait.
No, 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 go ahead. Okay, there won't be another time. This is, this is, this is agenda item 6.01, so this, if you wait, then we'll fee in two weeks.
Okay. I, I just want to mention a couple of things about experimental vaccines, that this was authorized for emergency use only when there is no treatment. But obviously, I, I think we're learning that there are positive treatments for COVID-19, and this information was suppressed. Hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin are two examples. Herd immunity is achieved by antibodies, not the quote-quote vaccines. So if we want to achieve a herd immunity and protect people, we would encourage people to take positive treatments as early as possible to prevent the... people to, uh, take positive treatments as early as possible to prevent the, um, infe- infection and increased, uh, uh, effects from, uh, COVID that would eventually increase, cause hospitalizations. So that's what I wanted to talk about. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Benton.
Valerie Fianaca.
It's okay, welcome, Miss Fianaca. Got your shoes on, so we're good.
This has been a rousing meeting. This is probably the rowdiest one I've ever been at, and I've been in a lot of them. And I'm sorry about that. But, um, I'm gonna raise an issue that we probably don't want to talk about. I hope it didn't get rowdier. I'd like to address Mr. Thigpen's letter that he wrote to Mrs. Reno. First, I have empathy for this man on a very personal level that none of you understand. I'd be happy to explain why to any of you in private, but not here in person, anytime, anyplace. Comparing parents and community members who have taken time off work to show up and express concerns to capital insurrectionists is shocking and offensive. It may be his truth, but it is a distorted sense of reality. Even though this meeting has gotten a little out of control, it's still not like a capital insurrection. I've been present in these meetings. The parents, grandparents, and community members have a right to express their opinions, even if it's different from yours. Diversity of opinion should be expected and encouraged. That's a good thing. We all have different opinions, and that's really good thing. I've never seen anyone threatened at a meeting. I'm not saying you haven't been on emails or other things, and I hope that's not the case. I really hope that's not the case for any of you. Conversely, showing up to a board meeting to find six officers is somewhat intimidating. Not you. Not you at all. I like you. If, if any of you feel threatened by people who do not agree with your curriculum or your agenda and are vocal about it, perhaps this isn't the job for you. The intent of these people is to get your attention, not to make you fearful. This was obviously an attempt to smear many people who want you to hear them. Unfortunately, he did, he, he did you who remain behind no favors. He painted you all with a broad brush. Once again, my prayers are with you daily, all of you. I pray that we can all agree on the basic fact that we must give our children an exemplary education, free of indoctrination. And I think we should bring those little kiddos back to more meetings because they were the greatest joy in this meeting. And they're the reason we're all here, really.
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca.
Catherine Snedeker.
I'm sorry, say the last name again? Snedeker. Welcome, Ms. Snedeker. And just as you begin, I'm gonna ask you if you would mind pulling the mask up over your nose.
Do you mind if I can breathe? Is it okay if I breathe?
Yeah, I, I...
Okay. I want to tell you, and you especially, you know that the directive from the governor only implies to the internal workings of the government. It does not apply to the public at large. You know that.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to ask you if you wear your mask correctly. I'd be consistent across the board if you were. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Do you have, do you have a medical issue, ma'am, seriously?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, then, then keep it as it is. Next time you come, we'll get your mask, uh, get you a shield, okay?
No, thanks. I don't want anything. As I was saying, the, the governor's directives do not apply to the public at large. They apply only to governmental entities, which you are one. And a governmental entity does not have the authority to tell anybody to do anything for their health. Wear a mask, get the bioweapon jab, whatever. You don't have that authority because you're a governmental entity. And that's why Sicilac went around and told all the businesses, "You better make sure those customers are wearing a mask or OSHA's coming after you." So let them. He has no authority to dictate to the people. None. And wearing this mask doesn't help anything, and you know it. And if you can be liable because somebody didn't wear a mask and somebody got sick, then you can be equally as liable to somebody who's wearing a mask and got sick because of the mask. You can be equally liable to that. You don't get to tell little kids, "Put on a mask." This stupid non-COVID con that's going on affects the ACE2 receptors. Little kids don't have ACE2 receptors yet. You are causing neurological damage to them by making them wear a mask. You're cutting the oxygen to their brains. They're gonna have neurological problems, all because you people who are the trustees, do you even know what that means? Do you know who you're the trustee to? Do you have any idea? Because I don't think you do. You have a fiduciary obligation and responsibility to the public, not to yourselves and the governor. And yet you sit there and act like you're my boss. You know what? I have a letter from Washoe County, and I asked him if I'd ever been an employee. And it says, "Washoe County has no employment records for Ms. Snedeker." That means directive doesn't apply to me. He also, they also said, "Washoe County has no documentation that established Ms. Snedeker presently have COVID and is not a, uh, is not creating a health, safety, or welfare problem." So...
Thank you, Ms. Snedeker.
Spencer Armstrong.
Ms. Snedeker, you know, you know, I'm gonna ask you if you wouldn't mind putting your mask back on. I'm trying to work with you.
Amen to you, by the way.
Excuse me, excuse me. If you wouldn't, thank you. No, actually, you're absolutely right, I'm not. I'm not, but if you wouldn't mind putting the mask on, I would appreciate it.
She has a medical condition, so I thought she didn't have to wear one.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna be on, we're gonna be on the recess until people will wear their mask. All right, everybody, thank you very much. We want to go right back to, sorry, there was a student who was up and gonna make your public comment, sir, we'd like to go right back to you. Can we call his name again, please?
Spencer Armstrong.
Armstrong, Mr. Armstrong, uh, thank you for your patience. Thank you for being here. Welcome back.
Thank you. Um, my first day of school was yesterday. It went fine just because I was able to socialize with kids my age again, since last year you took that all away from us. Other than that, it was shocking because my US History 1 teacher said, "No Civil War, no Constitution, no American Revolution will be taught." She is gonna teach us about Black Lives Matter and LGBTQ. She also said, "If you were born male but are female now, and if you have parents that are against you being that way and won't let you be that way, you can be that way in this class, and make sure to talk to me, so I don't bring it up to your parents over the phone." One thing about me is I don't lie to my dad, and that's why I'm here today. Teachers are wanting kids to lie to parents so they can teach them evilness and brainwash them. She also had us write our names on index cards and asked us what our pronouns are. Kidding me? I go to school to learn history and about our country, and our great country, not about politics. You also think kids back to school is all great and all happy, but for the most part, it really isn't. And now teenagers are scared to talk to each other because there's muzzles on their faces, and they don't remember how to act. So if you're all about the schools and the health of kids, take the masks off, and then kids can have a choice for themselves. And for the most part, they'd all take them off, so please just do the right thing. I have now been enrolled from a Queen High School, thankfully, so I can now pursue my own learning career the right way, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong.
Beth Stenjen.
Welcome back, Ms. Stenjen.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if you heard what Spencer just said, but he un-enrolled himself today. He's going to be homeschooled. And I'm, I think you're gonna be seeing lots more parents un-enrolling their kids because of the policies that you are setting here. The board has proven us right today. Many of us spoke up that we wanted trustee Church to be one of the members on either VP or clerk. Many of us spoke in his support. He was not elected or appointed by you. You just disregarded everything we said. I didn't hear anybody else from the community standing here advocating or supporting any other board member. So you guys totally disregarded what we said, and we speak for thousands of people. So I'm really disappointed about that. And trustee Rodriguez, I so, I saluted you when you nominated trustee Church, but then you let us down when you didn't even vote for your own nomination. Are you just going to be another yes man? I hope that you will stand up for your beliefs and not cave in to what the others on the board say. We need individual voices on this board. Eighty-four percent opposed the critical race theory, and yet you're still going ahead with the task force, again proving our point that you are not listening to the community. We want you to teach kindness and respect and anti-bullying, but you don't need to teach social justice and make social justice warriors out of our kids. I understand that trustee Calvert talked to someone and was quoted as saying that all she really cares about is equity. She doesn't care about any other issue. I don't know if that's true or not. But I do know that recently, Clark County has implemented new grading system for equity purposes, meaning that kids are no longer going to be graded on their assignments, on their participation, or attendance. How does that help them in the real world? Where everybody gets a trophy here at school? America's strength is based on the American dream. Work hard and succeed. So more and more parents are pulling their kids out of school, and I think you're gonna see a, a trend for that.
Thank you, Ms. Stenjen.
Victoria Meyer.
I think that's Ms. Meyer. Okay, yeah. Welcome back, go ahead.
It's late, everybody's tired. Thank you for continuing here. Legal issues were brought up earlier regarding bucking the governor. And, uh, you know, we pay you to do your jobs. We pay you as an attorney to defend our board, to defend our people, and so do your job. Stand up to the governor. You're gonna get lawsuits, all right? You're gonna get lawsuits because this is provable. When there's health issues, this is provable. Not wearing a mask, who can prove? You're an attorney, you know this. Who can prove how you got COVID? Contact tracing? You can't, it's not really provable. So you're hiding behind something on this. We're asking you to please, uh, stand up to this. I guess that's it, you know, it's just time and again, show us the studies that show that they work. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
Cindy Sassenrath.
Ms. Sassenrath, thank you.
Um, I just want to say that I hope you don't judge all of us by the few people who misbehave in these meetings. It really, it really bothers me because I do think that it is impolite and, and bad for them to be disrupting the meetings. That said, um, I hope you are, you were as appalled as I was at Spencer's story, that his history teacher would come out and say, "We're not teaching history, we're teaching this other stuff." I hope you're gonna follow up on that, because that, that just can't, can't go on. We talked about the diversity task force already, but something just hit me that I had to make a comment about. Applications are not due until, what, the 27th of August, and yet you've already identified the two students that are gonna be on it? Well, how does that, does that mean the rest of the students don't get to apply? I mean, that, that, that seems like, uh, the impression, that gives me the impression that this is a task, this task force is really a task farce. The for, the task force seems like just a way to justify the CRT materials. I'll be watching the task force notes on the website. You said they'll be available, and I hope that it's gonna prove me wrong, that it's not just a rubber stamp of this thing that all of us are saying we don't want. It's kind of like the election that held earlier. How can you do a vote for, when there's three nominees, and do a voice vote? I, I just don't get it. That's, that, it's like, it seems like it was a preordained, rubber stamped of the chosen ones, and it's, it, it makes you look kind of silly, actually. I mean, why bother having an election you were gonna, if you were gonna do that, if you had people that you're gonna appoint to those positions, I don't know why you bothered to have an election. Lastly, masks hurt children. You know, this vaccine, it's actually not a vaccine. Anybody who can look up the definition of a vaccine, it's not a vaccine. It's like they, they made Kleenex generic for tissues, they're making vaccines generic for whatever they want to stick in your arm. I'm a firm believer of vaccines. I've been, all my children were vaccinated on the dot, and I would take any vaccine that was a real vaccine, but th- this isn't a vaccine. I have natural immunity. I was lucky enough to survive that incredible 0.003% or something that could, that didn't survive. I'm, I'm very grateful that I survived it. You know, the CDC changes its mind every other week about what's going on and, and what they, what they want us to do. I do not understand how, if you give people the option to wear a mask, it's their responsibility as to whether they wear a mask or not. If they get sick and they're not wearing a mask, or they get sick and they are wearing mask, I think you're covered. If you give them the option. So masks should be optional, and, uh, I just hope that the board will reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sassenrath.
Roger Edwards.
Mr. Edwards, is he still here? I, I don't see him.
Janet Butcher.
Welcome back, Ms. Butcher. When, when you get up here, if you will, pull the, the mic down a little bit so we can hear you clearly. All right.
How is that?
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh my gosh, I have so many things to talk about. First off, um, I want to make a quick, uh, comment about vaccines. Do you know how children will be affected in the years to come with an experimental vaccine? Has there been a study? Do you know? Um, I'm all for experimental. I have a friend who actually had her life saved from an experimental drug, from cancer. However, it was her choice. Wasn't mandated to her, it wasn't dictated to her. This is dictatorial. This is, this is just beyond belief. In 1957 and 1958, there was an H2N2 virus, and it's actually was, um, more deadly with a broader reach for severe outcomes than the COVID-19 is. I survived. I was the only person in my family that had it. Nobody was made to wear masks back then. Things weren't shut down, and we managed to get through it. Also, in 1918, with the Spanish flu, I never remember of my grandmother talking about the Spanish flu. Never. And she was definitely, she was probably well into her 25, 30s area range. And it was not a one-size-fits-all, because it, it doesn't work. It just doesn't work. You can't blanket do everything. So anyway, I was kind of, kind of curious about the, the, um, concern about being sued. So about two years ago, one of the schools had to be shut down in, in the area because there was an influenza breakout. So were they under perhaps a possibility of being sued? Were you guys under possibility of being sued? Also too, real quick, I, I want, I want to say something about, everything's gotten so complicated anymore. everything's gotten so complicated anymore. I come from the IT environment, and we have a thing called KISS, Keep It Simple, Stupid. So I don't know why things have gotten so complicated. August 22nd, downtown, there will be a no-mask rally. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butcher.
Mindy Lillyquest.
I think Ms. Lillyquest left. Let's get your microphone on. Mr. Meeks, welcome, sir. You have three minutes.
There's a song when I grew up. It said, "I believe that children are the future. Teach them well, let them lead the way. Show them all the beauty they possess inside. Give them a sense of pride and make it easier. Let the children's laughter remind us how we should be." Everybody, all sides, this is about the children. I wasn't planning on saying anything at all today. I was just going to come and listen and get a feel for the environment that I was sending my children into. I have four children in Washoe County School District between kindergarten and junior and high school. You guys have the title of trustees. That is a significant title. And what I've experienced here tonight, this is more of a board of untrustees. What I've heard, what I've seen, what I've felt from you guys. I've lost all faith in this school system here, and I will be pulling my children, all four of them, out of school. And I encourage anyone who's watching this, anyone, stand up for your children. They're yours. They're your responsibility, not theirs. No one's going to do this for your kids but you. Invest in your children because when you send them off, they come back with horror stories. Absolute, bone-chilling, gut-wrenching, sickening horror stories of the things that they are being taught. To send my six-year-old son to school and have him be told that he is the cause of the problem in all things in the world because of the color of his skin, because of white privilege, whatever that may be, that's unacceptable on every level and should be to everyone. I refuse to send my children into the devil's den, to be ridiculed, to be put down, and to be taught that he is a lesser human being simply because he was born. The masks are one thing, COVID is one thing, but to teach our children that they are lesser human beings is unacceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Your time is up, sir. Thank you very much.
I thank you for your time. It's the most important thing we all have, and you guys have had a rough night. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks.
Maureen Lambertan.
I'm sorry, help me once again, we need you to listen, Dr.?
Dr. Maureen Lambertan.
Lambertan. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you again for being here. You know, I truly believe that most of you guys are here. This is a hard job, I can see. I can't get down here most time because I'm treating patients at 2:00. Doesn't work for me. I just happen to have this day off. I believe that most of you want to do well by our kids. I can see it with some of the questions that you've asked. Specifically, Vice President Minetto, you asked some very good questions of this doctor that was sitting here about the vaccines and what that looks like for people who've been vaccinated versus, or kids who've been vaccinated versus unvaccinated. And what we're hearing, right? The data is out that, that kids are, kids and adults are still getting COVID regardless if they're vaccinated or not. Seventy-four percent of the 900 people in Massachusetts, which started this whole thing with masks, seventy-four percent of them were vaccinated. So my issue here is discrimination. You're going to discriminate against my kid because I choose not to vaccinate my child with a authorized experimental medication, that so-called vaccine, mRNA technology, yet you're not going to test the vaccinated kids? How is that right? How is that not discrimination? And that would be a question for you, Mr. Rombardo. How is that not discrimination against the kids vaccinated versus unvaccinated? I would really like you guys to think about that because I, I think that that could end you, end up, you know, you guys in a court of law. And if you're concerned about these masks, all of these issues, I know Joe Gilbert has worked with you guys. I know he would be on your side to make the right decision for the good of the kids in Washoe County. Contact tracing, I was talking about earlier. My son last year was contact traced two different times. He had to be kicked out of school two different times. He didn't get sick either time. One of them was when we were on spring break. Somehow, he was in school near some kid during spring break, and he got kicked out for 10 days. And there was no nurse. We couldn't contact anybody. So he was out of school for 10 days. He missed midterms. Guess what his grades were? He was failing. He's a high honor student. Your system does not work. You have a lot of computer glitches. That's something that needs to be looked at. Last year, Incline was closed from Thanksgiving to January based on one positive COVID case two months before. One positive case. So again, I ask you to reevaluate your exemption of Incline Village with a small population. In 2008, Fauci himself, Fauci, Dr. Fauci himself, did a peer-reviewed study of the Spanish Flu, found that the majority of those people died from bacterial pneumonia. Guess why? Wearing a mask. These do not protect from viruses. They were intended to protect from bacteria. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lambertan.
Troy Ross.
Dr. Ross, welcome back, sir.
Thank you. I didn't budget my time well the first time. I'm going to take a, do a little cleanup. So the topic I would like to address is the health of our children. President Taylor, you mentioned earlier that you're not going to make everyone happy. I would suggest to you that that is not the right perspective. It's not about anybody being happy. It's about keeping our children healthy, safe, and in a good learning environment. The things that are going on right now are absolutely separating them from all of that. Health is not the absence of disease. Health is a community that's engaged and interactive. In the schools, they need to be playful. They need to be free to express themselves. This thing restricts them from that. The two-tiered societies that you're setting up, masks or vaccinated, non-vaccinated, you are creating such conflict in these children. Kids that are going to let their masks drop a little bit, and the teacher has to harangue them to get it back up in place. What kind of environment are you setting up? Don't do it. You don't have to do this. To the issue of standard error and liability, standard of care is medical. It's obviously adjudicated in law eventually, but when we have a community spread of an infectious disease, there is no way to establish liability in one location where someone may have become sick but maybe not infected there. You know that, counselor. You know that. Finally, to the parents. The only one who masks your kids, who restricts them from living life properly, is you. All of you out there watching. The parents are responsible for the kids being masked. If you send your kids back into this environment created by these trustees, by that superintendent, you are the one responsible, not them.
Thank you, Dr. Ross. Welcome back, Mr. Appolito.
Thank you, President Taylor. My name is John Appolito. It really was nice seeing the kids here earlier. I know that's why we all do this, and I understand that, and I know the board means well. I really hope that the last student who had to wait almost six hours to speak from McQueen High School, I really hope you guys heard what he had to say and what's going on in these schools. And you should be shocked. Here's what happened at Clayton Middle School the same day. One of the moms posted this on our Facebook page, Protect Nevada Children. Quote, "My son's teacher passed out sheets of paper with questions for the students to answer. The first question was what pronouns they wanted to be called, and the next question was what they wanted to be called in front of their parents." End quote. These things that are happening in school, Kristin, that is probably because that's the environment you've set up. If it's okay for teachers and principals, and you did it yourself on January 6th when you sent out that letter after the insurrection at the Capitol, it's not okay, and over half of the community does not support that. It would be nice if you saw that. Hopefully, the board can help her with that. A month ago, the Reno Gazette-Journal posted Angie's article about the public comments about why we have to wait almost six and a half hours to speak. It, first sentence, "We welcome input from the public." Is that supposed to be a joke? We've been here over six hours. You don't welcome anything, and you interrupt us many times. So I wrote a response to that article, and the Reno Gazette-Journal published it on Sunday. And you can find that on our Facebook page, Protect Nevada Children. Let's see. Yeah, a lot of kids are leaving the district. I went to the meeting up at the Spirit-filled Church a few weeks ago. They were about alternatives to public education. They were expecting 50 people. I think about 250 people showed up. It's because you guys aren't doing what you should be doing. The Infinite Campus, so we all know by now that that's the most massive database ever created on children, and somebody corrected me. It's on anybody in human history. And those secret tabs that don't have parent, that parents don't have access to, this Washoe County School District counselor that got arrested. I know you guys don't want to hear about this, but it happened. Somehow, he got into the district. And when I spoke with the detective today, the detective told me that no one from the district ever told him about Infinite Campus and that this counselor had access to that private counseling tab in Infinite Campus. Shame on you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome.
Those are all the cards I have. The board received emails from Joe Morbido, Christine Johnson, Beverly Stausland, Casey Anunzio, Pablo Nava Duran, and Marika Moore.
Oh, did you have a card, Ms. Kohli?
Yeah.
Okay, we can, we can get it filled in later, won't you? Come on up. And then just make sure we get the, we track that down, okay?
Okay, sorry.
It's all good. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing the children today was a wonderful reminder for why I'm here, what I will keep fighting for. They were absolutely adorable, full of love and optimism, and I would love to bottle the enthusiasm of those principals. It was over-the-top amazing. I wish they could be here for every meeting. I would like to tell you a little about me. I do not belong to any group here. I've been coming here by myself since February. I don't belong to any of these groups. But now, onto the adult yucky stuff. There is a serious mistrust of this board, and there are good reasons for it. Number one, the community does not believe they are being heard. Week after week, we come here presenting our concerns and nothing in reply. When a lopsided community survey did not comport with your desired outcomes, you simply chose to ignore it. Number two, when the board or the superintendent do deign to speak to the public, it is misinformation or lies, such as when Superintendent McNeil said, denied that in the social justice curriculum, they use the words oppressed and white male privilege. Those words are used over and over. I mean, we don't hear from you ever, and that's what we heard. The only time. And the only remedy for this is to have a town hall discussion. As Dr. Alsberry says in his Balanced Governance Solutions, which you are supposed to be following. In order to have a successful board, you must engage, have dialogue, and reciprocate with the community stakeholders. Right? You all know this governance balance. I know you do. And as stakeholders, we will be contacting Dr. Alsberry and giving him our review of the board and superintendent. It's not being followed, and it's, it's not good. And really, that young man scared me while we are here. Teachers doing that to that boy and saying, "I'm not going to teach the Constitution, Civil War, or anything. I'm going to focus on Black Lives Matter and LGBTQ." This is what we're afraid of. She said it straight out. And it is, we've seen it on several different social justice, social media, that this has happened several times in the last two days, that teachers are doing this. They're saying, "We are going to teach what we want to teach in social justice." And, and they're not going to learn what they need to learn to be successful human beings. Please, please listen to us. Please have a town hall meeting. And we'd like to hear from you. We honestly would love to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kohli. Okay, that's it. We'll make sure you get your cards treated, okay? Okay, did you get all the, she found it? Okay, good. Thank you, JJ. Did you get all the names in for those? And then just again, for the, for the record, someone asked us about this before in an email. The public comments are posted after the meeting when the minister there saw the public comments. I mean, emailed in public comments. All the emailed in public comments will be coming apart once the official record is there. So it doesn't happen tomorrow, but it takes a little bit for JJ to get through everything and get it posted. But they're there, they're always there. Okay, so that being said, the meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting is two weeks from today, August 24th, 2:00 p.m. Thank you very much. And thanks all of you, for all of you who came and stayed and gave public comment.